Good morning, everyone. Welcome to Sacramento County Board of Supervisors. Today's meeting date is July 13, 2021, and this meeting is hereby called to order. And at this time, I'll ask our clerk if you'd mind reading the roll call and establishing quorum.
Yes. Good morning, Supervisors Desmond, Kennedy, Natoli, Serna, Frost.
Here.
And you have a quorum. This meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the Local Government Affairs Channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications, and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and is webcast at SACMetroCable.TV. Today's meeting will be repeated Friday, July 16 at 6:00 p.m. on Channel 14.
Thank you very much. And at this time, I'm going to ask my esteemed colleague Supervisor Natoli if he would mind leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I don't know about the esteemed colleague, but I'll be glad to do that. Right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we just stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sounds pretty good with the crowd.
I know. It's good to be back, everyone. So this morning, it's wonderful to see everyone. I know we, the board members, had a wonderful summer recess, and I'm hoping that all of my board colleagues had a great vacation, and I hope everyone who's at the county had a great vacation without us being here. Sometimes they say that's the truth. I know for me, I did a lot of catching up on reading. I still have about six or eight books in line. I'm trying to decide which one to start with first, and I enjoyed my garden so much in the warm weather. And I spent quite a bit of time in my community, and it was hard for me to get back on task, to be honest. This morning, it's hard to get back on task, but I'm here, and I'm going to try and do my best. We're living in unprecedented time, and we have some really important milestones before us, and I'm excited about it. We're coming to the end of our emergency order. We're putting our children back in school and getting back to normal, and so I'm excited about that, and I'm optimistic about our future, and I look forward to the months to come. So with that being said, I'll go ahead and read my meeting announcement. The Board of Supervisors encourages public participation during the meeting in person, telephonically, or in writing, in compliance with the directives of the County, State, and Centers for Disease Control and Prevention CDC. This meeting is broadcast live and open to in-person attendance. The county is requiring face coverings for unvaccinated attendees while inside chambers and is recommending social distancing. Meeting procedures are subject to change based on the recommended public health and safety guidelines. Public comments will be taken in the following order: in-person comments and then comments by phone. If you're making a public comment in person, a face covering is required if you're not vaccinated, and social distancing is recommended while inside the chambers. If you're unable to wear a face covering, you may sit in an overflow room and make a comment at the podium in the designated area. Seating is limited and available on a first-come, first-served basis whether you are sitting inside the chambers or an overflow room. If there are no seats available inside the chambers or overflow room, please form a line in the designated area to wait for your turn and make a public comment. Standing inside the chambers or an overflow room in lieu of sitting is not permitted due to limited seating capacity. Please complete a speaker request form and give it to the clerk staff. A separate speaker request form is required for each agenda item or topic that is not on the posted agenda. When I open the public comments, I will call three names at a time. When you hear your name, please start walking towards the podium inside the chambers or overflow room and wait for your turn to make your comment. If there's a need for an accommodation pursuant to Americans with Disabilities Act or medical reasons or other reasons, please see our clerk staff for assistance. If you're making a public comment by phone, dial 916-875-2500, and follow the prompts to be placed in the queue for a specific agenda item or off-agenda matter. Please refer to the agenda and/or watch the meeting to follow along and determine when is the best time to call and be placed in the queue to make your public comment. You may be on hold for up to an extended period of time, and your patience is appreciated. I will ask the clerk to transfer calls into the meeting accordingly. Each agenda item queue will remain open until the public comment period is closed for that specific item. Members of the public are limited to making one public comment per agenda item or off-agenda matter. Please be mindful of the public comment procedures to avoid being interrupted or disconnected when making more than one public comment on a single agenda item or off-agenda matter. Thank you in advance for your courtesy and understanding. You may send written comments by email to boardclerk@saccounty.net. Your comment will be routed to the board and filed in the record. Thank you again for your understanding and your patience. So, at this time, I want to acknowledge a couple of items that are on consent. I'm very excited to announce that we will be appointing Dalen Frederickson, Director of Child Support Services. And is Dalen here in the audience today? Yeah, oh, Dalen, hi. And I just wanted to say the county conducted a nationwide executive search, and there were a lot of highly qualified individuals who had submitted their application for this position. Mr. Frederickson comes to us with 30 years of experience working in the field of child support services. He began serving as an Assistant Director for the County Department of Child Support Services in October 2015. As an Assistant Director, he was enthusiastically promoted and directed a wide variety of child support programs and department goals and initiatives. And prior to serving with the County of Sacramento, Mr. Frederickson worked in the industry, as an industry consultant, and in various executive-level positions, and private child support corporations and state agencies. Mr. Frederickson has obtained his Juris Doctorate and is licensed in the practice of law in the state of California. He also possesses a Master's of Business Administration and Bachelor of Science and Business Administration. In addition to his experience in education, he too has extensive experience in representing child's, County's Child Support Services, Department of State, State of California Department of Child Support Services, and the Child Support Directors Association. So, Mr. Frederickson, it gives all of us great pleasure to congratulate you on your position, well-earned position, it looks like, and would you like to say a couple of words?
Just a couple. Thank you so very much, and good morning. It's an honor to work with the outstanding, dedicated staff at the Department of Child Support Services, and we will absolutely do our best to make sure that the customers in Sacramento County receive exemplary service. Thank you so very much.
It's a very important position, so those children need someone to watch over and make sure they're doing well, and so thank you very much, and we look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I could, just to note, too, just in addition certainly to the children a benefit, it's very important from the standpoint of collections, and I know Anne can speak to this, but for, you know, single parents in many cases, or there's shared custody, and there's responsibilities through, you know, judicial action to see to it that folks receive the support, both the children, but certainly the families, the parents, it can be either, you know, mother or father. And this department obviously has a very important role. I know there are many thousands of certainly children, but parents and families depend upon the services that are provided through, you know, what the department, that Dalen's going to be heading up. And I would just say that under his predecessor's leadership, Terry Porter, who obviously left the position to take another position in L.A. County, and Dalen, you worked with her for a number of years, but I've been with the county long enough to know there were times when that department struggled to, not so much meet its obligations, but to, you know, again, from the standpoint of collections and, you know, the myriad of things that were put upon that department and are responsible at the department. And again, we used to feel the number of complaints about folks' inability to get through on the phone lines and so forth. That's not been the case for many years, and again, it is a credit to your colleagues and the folks that, you know, you work as part of your team, and I thank folks, and I know it's received the support certainly through the Executive's Office and this board over the years to assure, you know, proper staffing, but certainly, you know, the accommodations for, you know, maintaining files and keeping records straight. And so that's a, you know, high compliment certainly to Dalen, to, you know, the department you're going to lead, but certainly to the work that goes on in that department. And as the chair has said, it's very important to children, but it's important to families, and I know that you work very hard to see to it that folks, you know, meet their obligations, but also that our families are supported in this county, so thank you so much. Maybe you could just tell us how many thousands of folks, you know, are dependent, or how many individual cases your offices handle currently?
We have just under 70,000 cases, and that amounts to just under 100,000 children in the department. Last year, the department collected $146 million, most of which was sent home to families.
Very good. Thanks.
And you're absolutely right. We're standing on the shoulders of the great achievements of the previous administration, and we'll continue the great work that was done with Terry and serve not only the custodial parents, but the non-custodial parents with compassion and dignity and getting done what needs to be done.
Yeah. No, I know you're a leader in this state, probably nationally as it relates to the work that you do, and again, as you said, both custodial and non-custodial parents. And for those and my colleagues, if you ever have a chance to visit your offices, I remember a time when we didn't have digital copies of a lot of stuff, and it was paper, and they probably stole a lot of paper, but, and there were boxes and boxes, and required staff retrieving, you know, a lot of paper, and I'm sure that's been streamlined under, you know, the work that you and others have done. But it is very important, the timely, you know, certainly receipt of those funds and for support of families and children. So again, thank you so much, and, you know, I was just gonna say, if you haven't had a chance to visit, I haven't been out for a number of years, but I know it's, you know, those phones are busy, and you're doing certainly a lot of stuff digitally now. Obviously, we've had to in the last, you know, year and a half, but even prior to that, I think, you know, upgrading our system so that you can, you know, process that and get answers to folks and find out where payments are and, you know, when they could expect to receive disbursement of funds and so forth. That's all very, very important to daily life for, as you said, for, you know, 100,000 children and their families in this county, so thanks again, Dalen. Congratulations to you, too.
And thank you. Any of you or your staff members are more than welcome to visit the department. We'd love to have you come.
I'm probably due for a visit, so maybe I'll, I will follow you, follow up on that, so thanks for the invitation.
Thank you so much.
Supervisor Natoli, I always appreciate your perspective, having been here over time and knowing people and functions in the county, and it's almost like getting a history lesson every time he talks, so thank you for that. And I wanted to ask, is it Dalen or Dalen?
Dalen.
Okay, Dalen, I apologize if I pronounced it wrong. I have a feeling I'm going to do the next one wrong, too, if it's any consolation, so thank you very much. Congratulations, sir.
Thank you. Thank you so very much.
It's nice to be able to be here, see smiling faces, and be able to celebrate together, so that's a happy day for all of us. At this time, I also wanted to point out item number 12 on our consent calendar, which is the appointment of Emily Halson. Did I say it properly, or Halken? Halken, okay. I know Emily's been around and working with our county for quite some time, and this morning, we're going to be adopting a resolution authorizing our interim county executive to appoint Emily Halken as our Sacramento County's Director of Homeless Initiatives, a big position in Sacramento County. And it will be effective July 18, and Ms. Halken has had, has, like I said, been working with us. She has over 15 years of experience in directing and leading homeless initiative programs related to ending homelessness, currently working with Sacramento County as a homeless initiatives consultant. In her current contractor role, she works directly with county leaders and across departments, providing guidance regarding the best approach to delivering key homeless programs, as well as integration of countywide homeless programs and services. And I know that coordination is complex, especially when you add in funding, you know, funding opportunities and trying to maximize what we can get to the county. Ms. Halken is, has functioned as a core member of our COVID-19 homeless response team, including supporting the county's efforts to optimize FEMA reimbursements, extend project room key, motel shelters, and increase rehousing efforts across the multiple county programs. Prior to this position, Ms. Halken spent six years as the homeless service manager for the city of Sacramento. Sorry, Sacramento, but we got her now. In that capacity, she coordinated and led a variety of programs and initiatives, including working with, as a project manager over the state's only city-led whole-person care initiative program. Before working with the Sacramento County, City of Sacramento, Ms. Halken worked in various positions that support homelessness and housing program services, including working as a consultant for the Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Agency. She's incredibly passionate and an advocate for the county initiatives to improve the lives of people experiencing homelessness, and she too has extensive experience in working collaboratively with community stakeholders and representing homeless initiatives and advisory groups. She possesses a Master's of Science in Community Development and a Bachelor of Arts in Sociology with a minor in Spanish. Welcome, Emily Halken. Sacramento County is very fortunate to have you with us. Your position is eminently important to all of us who, you know, are, have been and are seeking solutions in the homeless arena, so we're, I know your predecessor did an amazing job for the county, and it's, she's a hard act to follow, but we are very excited to have you here, and would you like to say a couple of words?
Just a couple. Thank you so much, Chair Frost, and members of the board, and I want to thank Anne and Bruce as well, and as you said, definitely want to thank Cindy Kavanaugh, who has been leading this effort for the last five years of the county. Cindy and I go way back. We've been friends and colleagues for almost 20 years, and I do recognize the effort she's made and the shoes I have to fill that she has, she's established. I also want to recognize that I do know that this is one of the most challenging issues that we face as a community, certainly you as a board struggle with this, the community at large, and most importantly, those folks experiencing homelessness in Sacramento. And so I do take this very, very seriously, and I take this responsibility seriously, and I am committed to doing as much as I can to further the efforts of the county. As you said, for the past six months, I've been here in a consulting business, and it's given me such appreciation of the depth and breadth of how this issue touches all departments throughout the county, but also the passion of all the departments, how much they see this as a challenge for their business and how much they want to participate in solutions. And so I'm hoping that I can be a support to them, to our community, to folks experiencing homelessness, and certainly to you and your offices, and I really look forward to working with all of you. I've gotten a chance to work with some of you in this role, certainly in my past roles, and look forward to working closer with each of you, so thank you.
Thank you, Emily, and I know we have a couple of supervisors who wanted to say a couple of words. Supervisor Kennedy.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to, you know, as somebody who represents half of the city of Sacramento, I've had the privilege of working with Emily for years, and I gotta tell you, you know, you said, "Sorry, city of Sacramento." No, I don't feel that way. I say, "Suck it, Sacramento," because we stole a good one, and so I'm really looking forward to working with you. I have found you to be extremely approachable, knowledgeable, and able to articulate our positions as a county, and so congratulations, and thank you for taking the jump over, because we appreciate it.
Thank you for having me. It's an honor.
Thank you, Supervisor Kennedy. Supervisor Desmond.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and Emily, I just want to congratulate you as well. Yes, you have a Herculean task in front of you, no more complex issue confronting local government than homelessness and all the different implications, all the different nuances and complexities, but from everything I've heard and seen, you are certainly up to the task, and I just really look forward to working with you. I mean, the county, I mean, all of my colleagues and I are all very engaged on this issue, and I think the county does some great things, but we need to be doing a lot more, obviously. We have some great models to expand upon, but I would also really challenge you to think about different things we could do, ways we could approach this challenge that might show some headway in improving people's lives and improving the impact it's having on our community, but just very much look forward to working with you, and congratulations.
Thank you very much.
We're looking forward to working with you, Emily. Welcome aboard.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Thank you for your leadership.
I believe that you did say that you were going to solve the homeless problem within six months, right?
I don't think so. I'll go back and listen to the tape and see if I did.
Well, from history, we've learned, we don't make big statements about that, right? Okay, at this time, our clerk has some announcements.
Okay, for your consent matters, items 1 through 52. For item 22, you are introducing an ordinance to revise Section 2.56.220 of the Sacramento County Code relating to the terms of contracts. You waived full reading, you're waiving full reading and continuing to July 27 for adoption. And for item 45, you're also introducing an ordinance establishing a fee for the management of groundwater in the Sacramento County Groundwater Sustainability Agency, San Joaquin Casumnes Groundwater Subbasin, setting a public hearing on July 27. And you will be continuing this as well, I believe, to adopt on the 27th. I'll actually confirm that and clear the record by the time you guys are finished with consent.
Thank you.
And that concludes my notes.
Okay, thank you, Flo. At this time, I'll be asking the board members if they have any questions or comments on consent, and Supervisor Natoli would like to speak.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do want to speak to item 45 in a moment, but first, I'd like to speak to item 5 on the agenda, the consent calendar, please.
Excuse me, item 5 was to approve a property tax revenue exchange agreement with the City of Galt for the annexation of the Summerfield at Twin Cities project area.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. Just by way of background, and I want to thank certainly Anne Edwards and Tasha Drain for some follow-on over the last 24 hours. This item is before as a part of several projects that the City of Galt are moving forward on annexing into the city, and this one in particular, and I've had a chance to talk with the developer proponent representatives, both the engineer as well as the attorney representing the property ownership group, and had a chance to speak with the city manager in the City of Galt this morning. And again, as I mentioned, talked with our county executive and governmental relations person yesterday, and it's not directly connected to the property tax exchange agreement, but this is an item where the city will be moving forward to LAFGO and once it leaves here for the final completion of the annexation of 58 acres north of Twin Cities Road and about a mile and a half, two miles east of the Highway 99 along the Twin Cities corridor. This actually is the first time that the city within its sphere is moving to the north side of Twin Cities, at least in this general area where Marengo Road comes in, T intersection there at Twin Cities. I point it out because it's an area that's largely rural residential, agricultural in nature, and this annexation of 58 acres is basically wedged in between existing two-acre development, as well as five-acre development to the east, and the concern that was expressed to me as the representative of the area going back a year ago, and I know they've communicated with the City of Galt as they talked about their pre-zoning and land use activities for this annexation, was the interface between those properties with this county, as I'm sure my board colleagues are aware, is our right to farm county, rural residential allows for animal husbandry, and there are actually 20-acre zoning to the north. So with that being said, I've spoken, as I said, with the city managers this morning and with the representative for those that are seeking to annex to the city. It's a 200-plus-lot subdivision, largely suburban, and it's a makeup with some open space area to the north. I put this all by way of background because my concern, and I express this to the city representative and have shared this, is that just putting a wood fence between rural residential and agricultural operations and then expecting that that, along with whatever field fencing would go with adjacent properties, and there are probably about 15, I think, by my count. I believe pretty strongly, and I've shared this, that there needs to be a more substantial, more durable separation between those uses. I don't see in the incorporated areas, certainly where folks are on well and septic, that there's going to be any change in that interface. Folks have largely developed the properties, except to the north, with, as I said, they're, you know, estate lots and have animals in some cases. So I've asked that the city, and they've indicated a willingness, at least the manager, to consider installation of some sort of masonry fencing, you know, again, that would be, obviously, the city is the one that's going to ultimately condition the project, but I think to improve the interface, to hopefully address some of the concerns that neighboring property owners have expressed, both to the city but to me as a representative. And again, we certainly aren't dictating that with this agreement, but I wanted for the record, Madam Chair, to make it known, and certainly, I'm hopeful that, one, they'll be considered to that request, and I have an understanding that the developer did not, representative as anyway, didn't have a problem with pursuing that. At the city, the city obviously will consider that in the ultimate conditioning of the development itself, and I wanted to put it on the record again, I will, I support the agreement along with the item 6, which is, it was another portion of the city that's annexing in the Semahorn-Bosso Road, east of 99 area, but again, I felt it was appropriate. I've been tracking this for some time, and again, appreciate the staff work that was done on this yesterday, and I take it on good faith that the city and the development partners will pursue that and have an appropriate interface that will be long-lasting and durable for the benefit of new residents that will occupy those lots and homes at some point, but also for existing uses and existing residents and property owners that are adjacent that are in, that will remain in the, on the corporate area probably for a good time to come, so I did want to note that. And then, if I could, then on item 45 would be the other item. I just wanted to comment on, Madam Chair.
I'll read that back into the record.
Please, thanks.
And also want to confirm that it will be continued to the 27th for adoption. This is the introduction of an ordinance establishing a fee for the management of groundwater in the Sacramento County Groundwater Sustainability Agency, San Joaquin Casumnes Groundwater Subbasin, and it also sets the public hearing on July 27.
And as you'll note in the staff reports, I won't be redundant, but this has been an ongoing effort. This report, this board has heard several updates over the course of the past few years as relates to work to meet obligations that come with state law, to actually have a sustainability plan, to organize ourselves in a way, both the county but also groundwater sustainability agencies, some of them being water districts and resource conservation districts. Been a lot of work done in the southern part of the county as relates to, you know, planning and ultimately, obviously, the monitoring and implementation of those plans, and we'll see the result of that work in a few months. But for today's purposes, this is proposing to, I guess, utilizing, as I understand, Proposition 26 guidelines, and maybe council could clarify that if necessary, to put in place a fee. This is the ordinance would allow us to do that for certain parcels that are within the county's jurisdiction, and as I understand it from my conversation with the water resources staff yesterday afternoon, there's just a few more than 100 parcels in this, in the county's portion, but with, in the seven GSAs, there are... the seven GSAs, there are several thousand parcels, and I know that each district is working to move forward with this early implementation of a fee. And there are some hearings going on with some of the other special districts, the irrigation districts, water districts, and resource conservation districts. And I wanted to note again for the record that we are going to, as I understand it from our staff, reach out to folks between today and the 27th when it comes back before us to let folks know what that charge would be on irrigated acres. This is the first step in that process. There was a community meeting about three and a half weeks ago, well-attended, probably 150 to 175 people in the Harold Firehouse and a number of questions, but our staff has been very good in responding. But I think we need to specifically tell folks what it is that we believe their estimated charge would be, because this is going to, if we take this action, and we'll go on the tax bill next year. And there'll be a second phase of this that will probably require a 218 vote for parcels that are not covered under this, under this particular ordinance or action. So I wanted to highlight that. I know that there is concern, anytime, obviously, any fee is considered, this would be a new fee, and it would be attached to irrigated acres, largely agricultural parcels, but as I understand it, there may be some parcels that have largely domestic use that, if they aren't picked up this time around, will be a part of the discussion going forward. So this is in concert with a number of other agencies, and I don't know if Rick has anything you wanted to add, but we are doing this via ordinance, but any longstanding fee would require a 218 vote, as I understand that. Is that, is that accurate? And I didn't have a chance to chat with you before about this, but...
I believe that is accurate.
Okay. I don't see anybody jumping up to contest it, so is that, that's correct?
We think so, but we want to confirm that.
Okay, so I think for purposes of coming back, again, we're introducing this today, I'm supportive of introducing it, but I know that was a question that was posed at the community meeting, and obviously, Mr. Hayer and others weren't in attendance, but that was my understanding that it would require a 218 vote to, for the second phase of this. But this is the first step. So anyway, Madam Chair, again, I support the introduction of the ordinance, and I know that, well, I had a commitment from staff yesterday that they will do a notice that will actually be more specific. We sent out a general notice to property owners that are within the county's portion of this coordinated effort, but I think it needs to be more specific so people know if it's going to be $10 an acre for this first year, it's going to show up in the tax bill, what the estimated cost is for, because we have some folks who have several hundred acres and others who may have a much smaller portion. But I don't think it's a task that's undoable, and again, I appreciate Kerry Schmitz and Linda Dorn and their work, because they've spent a lot of work leading up to this and spent a lot of time. So anyway, that's my comments, and thank you for bearing with me.
No problem. Thank you Supervisor Natoli. While we're on number 45, we do have one public comment on 45. I have two other supervisors in the queue to speak. I wonder if you're speaking about 45, we could take those comments and then do public, that public comment while we're at it, and I see no nods, so let's go ahead and take Tiffany, is it Tiffany Noyan? Yes, please approach the podium, and you'll have two minutes for your public comment.
Thank you, Board. My name is Tiffany Noya. I'm a resident of Sacramento County. And this is an article that I found, "Is California Draining California Reservoirs on Purpose?" You're looking at our largest reservoirs less than two years ago. They were absolutely teeming with water from 107% to 145% of average, Deener says. Our reservoirs held enough water for everyone who relies on them for their water supply for seven years. We are barely into our second dry year. Where did it go? To save fish. You heard that right. The Water Board has said that they want to experimentally see if, over time, they can bring back about 1,000 salmon, but it is such an extreme idea that some residents could be limited to as little as seven gallons of water per person per day during back-to-back dry years, essentially making these regions uninhabitable. It's almost like Newsom wants to declare yet another emergency. And also, there is perfluorotonic acid, or PFOA, in our water, and we should not be paying for water that, you know, is contaminated with a toxic chemical. It's an industrial surficant in chemical processes and is used as a material feedstock. It's a product of health concern and subject to regulatory action and voluntary industrial phase-outs. PFOA is considered a surficant due to its chemical structure, which consists of a tail group and head group. The head group can be described as hydrophilic, while the fluorocarbon tail is both hydrophobic and lipophobic. I'm simply reading the Wikipedia page for fluorotonic acid, if you'd like to look it So we don't consent to water fees. Thank you.
Thank you Tiffany.
Madam Chair.
Yes Supervisor Natoli.
Yeah, if I could, thank Tiffany Serna for her comments, but again, under statute approved by the legislature back in 2015, we are required to monitor and manage our groundwater, and if we don't do it locally, then it's going to be done by the state. And so again, certainly, our groundwater as well, our surface water is a very precious resource, and obviously, in a year, a very dry year where we're in drought conditions, I think it becomes even more of a focus and highlight. But what we're talking about here is, you know, local entities, not just this board, but working with locally-elected irrigation, water districts, and resource conservation districts to develop a plan and to hopefully avoid a long-term drawdown on our groundwater resources, which are, again, very precious and important to daily life, whether it be in our homes and in our businesses, but certainly to agriculture and to the environment. And the purpose for this, obviously, is to hopefully address the issues that are required under law to be dealt with as relates to planning and to managing and to monitoring and to avoid stricter, more restrictive actions that the state, under the statute, has the authority to impose. And so the idea is to figure this out locally to the best of our ability and to do it in a way, obviously, that takes into account people's concerns about, not just fees, but certainly about implementation of which measures that could be much more restrictive if we aren't able to accomplish the plan in a way that meets the requirements the states set forth under the law. And they do have the authority under the law to step in and actually manage the groundwater basins and to impose fees that are of a much higher number, and that's a part of the background. And again, that's all available on our website if people wanted to see that. Thanks.
Thank you Supervisor Natoli, and that's the big effort, is to maintain local control.
Absolutely.
Okay, at this time, we have Supervisor Kennedy.
Thank you Chair. Could the clerk please call 26?
Yes, and we also had one person on the phone for item 45.
I'll wait for that.
Do you mind if we...
Yes, I thought you meant the public comment I had, I'm sorry.
Okay, no problem.
Thanks for bringing that up.
Please transfer the caller. And thank you Supervisor Kennedy, sorry about that. Hi caller, please start with your comments, you have two minutes.
Hi there, this is Austin Miller with the Blue House Resource Conservation District. We are one of the groundwater sustainability agencies, working alongside the county and the Casumnes Sub Basin. I just wanted to take a moment to thank county staff and the entire board of supervisors for your collaboration on this effort. The local special districts working on this could not have been as successful as we are without the support, and specifically wanting to thank Kerry Schmitz and Linda Dorn, just as Supervisor Natoli had mentioned, have been instrumental in getting us to where we are and putting together the fee study, and just wanted to, again, call in and say thank you for the support and that we look forward to continue working with you all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and that concludes your public comments for item 45.
Thank you, and Supervisor Kennedy.
Chair, number 26, please.
Okay, item 26 is the retroactive authority to apply for and accept a two-year grant in the amount of $7,016,680 for the term of June 1, 2021 through June 1, 2023, funded by the Centers for Disease Control for COVID-19 Health Disparities among populations at high risk and undeserved.
Thank you very much. I just want to thank staff for taking the initiative to go out and find these resources. You know, we all, all five of us have zip codes that have been very difficult to reach for the whole vaccination effort as well as testing and other efforts related to COVID. District 2 has consistently had the highest numbers that have been hard to reach, and so this is going to go a long way toward really helping the people who need the help the most, who have been, you know, working throughout the COVID-19 pandemic because they had no other choice but to work. And so I just want to really just give my kudos to staff for going out and taking that initiative to see to it that we're serving those that are the hardest to serve, so thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Kennedy.
Number 32, please.
We do have a public comment on number 26, so maybe we'll take that.
There we go.
And that would be Tiffany Noyan. Is it Noya? I should know it by now. I know we've been through this before, but I'm a senior, that's my first problem.
Thank you Chair, and thanks for representing my district. My name is Tiffany Noya, and I'm going to be reading 12 Facts You Need to Know About the Vaccine Before You Decide to Take It by Dr. Shelley Cole, M.D. It is not a vaccine, it does not contribute to herd immunity. Vaccines are a specialized medicine given to healthy people to stop them from getting a virus. Vaccines are given to prevent transmission of viruses. The current COVID-19 vaccines available have not been proven to prevent transmissions of SARS-CoV-2. The COVID-19 vaccine does not stop you from getting the virus. It is not a vaccine. Many are considering getting the vaccine because they want to protect high-risk people in the community. Maybe you have heard experts say we need 90% of the population vaccinated. Taking the vaccine will not help protect others from contracting SARS-CoV-2, the virus. The experimental vaccine does not prevent transmission of the virus, it does not aid in achieving herd immunity. The experimental vaccine only lessens symptoms. The effective rates reported of 90% or above refer to minimizing the symptoms of COVID-19, not immunizing you against the virus, SARS-CoV-2. That is why the CDC is still recommending wearing the mask after you take the vaccine. You are still at risk of getting the virus. You do not need to be vaccinated if you have already contracted COVID-19. After you have COVID-19, there is one silver lining: you don't need to be vaccinated. You already have the most robust immune response possible, your natural, God-given immune system. There may be those who argue that you could contract COVID-19 again. Yet, if we look back over science, we find that there is nothing better than the body's own defenses. You can always support the immune system with vitamin D and vitamin C and zinc. The new vaccine was purposely studied on those who had not contracted SARS-CoV-2, that is expected. So for those who had exposure to SARS-CoV-2, the virus, with or without symptoms, taking the vaccine is exposing you to a risk that has not been studied. We do not know how the immune system will respond. Thank you.
At this time, I think you were still...
Yes, number 32, please.
Item 32 is the authority to accept grant funding awards in the amount of $25,000 from Centene Corporation and $25,000 from Molina Healthcare, authority to amend and increase personal services agreements by a combined total amount of $50,326 for lactation consultant services in the Women, Infants, and Children Program, and authority to execute a personal services agreement with Diana Castro in the amount of $11,776 for lactation consultant services in the WIC program.
Great, thank you very much. I called this as much as anything so that Flo could get back into the rhythm of reading long descriptions. I just want to, you know, our consent calendar for those things that are non-controversial, which obviously this is, but they're not for things necessarily that are not important. And we have a $6 billion budget, this is a small amount of money, I recognize, but it's, again, does not diminish its importance. And so I want to thank Centene Corporation and Molina Healthcare publicly for, you know, working with the county on such an important issue, and I just thought that it needed to be elevated beyond just consent to do that publicly. So thank you very much.
Thank you Supervisor Kennedy. Supervisor Serna.
Thank you. Can you please read item 41 to the record?
Sure. Let me write that one for you. Okay, item 41 is the annual review and report to the Board of Supervisors on the Cordova Hills Development Agreement for the year 2020.
Great, thank you. I just want the record to show that I'll be abstaining on this matter to stay consistent with my previous disposition on the development. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you Supervisor Serna. And we do have some other public comment on different consent items, and so I will do it in order of the item. I'll call the first three, and that would be Tiffany Noya for item number four, and Tiffany Noya for item number eight, and Tiffany Noya for item number 14. I guess Tiffany, it's you. Two minutes for each item.
May I do four and, what were the three again?
Four and eight and 14.
May I do four and 14 together?
And you're also in here for 33 and 47, so, which, you can start with whichever one you want.
I'll start with number eight.
Okay.
Child Support Services. The 2014 documentary film Divorce Court designated the Family Law Division of Sacramento Superior Court as the most corrupt in the United States. The William Ridgeway Family Courthouse houses the Family Law Division. Court whistleblowers have documented that the family court operates as a RICO racketeering enterprise involving collusion and kickbacks between judges and divorce attorneys who also work as part-time judges. For complete details, Google Sacramento Superior Court racketeering. In high-conflict divorce cases, children are bought and sold to the highest bidder, and community assets and retirement accounts accumulated during a marriage are converted to attorney's fees until the parties are blood dry. As reported by Sacramento Family Court News, an online nonprofit journalism organization, the racketeering scheme was set up in 1991 by Judges Peter McBrien and Vance Ray, now Court of Appeal Judge, and a judge, a group of Judge Pro Tem attorneys. For complete details, Google Sacramento Judge Pro Tem Racketeering. Sacramento Superior Court can't retain a court executive officer because when a new CEO eventually discovers the systematic corruption, they move on, knowing that they could be held liable when the house of cards eventually collapses. The Sacramento Family Court Criminal Enterprise receives protection from Third District Court of Appeal Judges Vance Ray, George Nicholson, Harry Hull Jr., and Ronald Robbie, all of whom previously worked in Sacramento Superior Court. For complete details, Google Third District Court of Appeal Conflicts of Interest. The racketeering organization also is protected by Supreme Court Chief Justice Tani Kantil Sekou, who began her career as a judge in Sacramento County. The corruption began before and continued during Kantil Sekou's stint in the Family Law Division in Sacramento. Knowing about the corruption and not reporting it, it is itself a federal crime called misprison of felony, 18 U.S.C. 4. Court employees, you have been warned. Again, for complete details, simple, simply Google Sacramento Superior Court Racketeering. Thank you.
Thank you Tiffany. What number was that?
That was number eight.
Great.
Okay. And you may be in.
Okay, I'll do number four and 14 together. Continuing reading Dr. Shelley Cole's statement, "The experimental vaccine uses new technology. No other vaccine currently available is like it. All current and past vaccines use antigens, something the body detects as foreign to us. Some of the COVID-19 vaccines use modified RNA to..." Some of the COVID-19 vaccines use modified RNA to program our cells to make an antigen. Then after our cells make the antigen, our immune system fights against it. For the first time, the immune system is trying to attack something our bodies have made. Will the body consider itself foreign? This needs to be studied in great measure before subjecting the public to it. The ramifications of autoimmune disease could be great. Understand, you are agreeing to be in a study when you take the COVID-19 vaccine. The previous trials did not include people of all age groups. During the Phase III trials, healthy individuals were studied, so we do not know how these medications will affect the young, old, or those with medical conditions. The vaccine may make you sicker than if you hadn't taken it, especially the elderly. The vaccine may cause a paradoxical reaction called ADE, antibody-dependent enhancement. One type of antibodies, non-neutralizing or enhanced antibodies, actually aid entry of virus into the cell. It is like a Trojan horse escorting the virus into the cell and increasing the viral load inside the cell. If the person is infected later with the virus, they can have a more serious reaction than if they hadn't taken the vaccine altogether. Studies show that the elderly may be even more prone to ADE. The previous unsuccessful attempts to create a vaccine against SARS-CoV-1, MERS-CoV, and RSV, all coronaviruses, raise similar concerns of antibody-dependent enhancement, or ADE.
You have 15 seconds.
Inflammation at the placenta of pregnant women who received the vaccine have been reported. Caution if you desire future pregnancies. The vaccine is designed to create antibodies to attack the viral S protein.
Can you please wrap up?
Yeah, and can I start my comments on 14?
Yes.
It is very similar genetically to the proteins made by the placenta. Some reported cases of inflammation have been made. I urge extreme caution for those of you that desire future pregnancies. This reaction could affect future childbearing, we just do not know. The vaccine has not been studied thoroughly in pregnant women. There are safe, effective, affordable prevention and treatment medications for COVID-19. During the pandemic, well over 230 studies have shown that hydroxychloroquine is a safe, effective, affordable medication to prevent and treat COVID-19. Additional supplements, including vitamin D, vitamin C, and zinc, have all been found to be beneficial in the treatment of COVID-19. For the cost of over-the-counter supplements and a generic medication, usually less than $25, the majority of people can be treated. Doesn't it make sense to take something previously approved by the FDA for other purposes than use an experimental new technology during a pandemic? The rest of the world knows about hydroxychloroquine, and they have the lower death rates to prove Deaths due to COVID-19 do not justify the approval of an experimental vaccine. We now know the death rate for COVID-19 in all ages in the U.S. The death rate is less than 1% for those younger than 70 years of age. 80% of deaths are over the age of 70 with additional diseases associated. We know that 90%, 4% of reported COVID-19 deaths in the U.S. have two or more medical conditions. Thus, most of the reported COVID-19 deaths die with COVID-19, not from it. The death rate is very low for most people, similar to the seasonal flu, which is great news. Would you be willing to take the measure you currently are taking for COVID-19 for the flu? We should focus on the high-risk groups for deaths from COVID-19, those 70 years or older with multiple diseases. And this is from Shelley G. Cole, M.D. Thank you.
Thank you Tiffany. Does that, does that include your comments for 33 and 47?
Um, I can keep going for 33.
Okay. That's very creative, I want to tell you. That's really good.
Okay.
Proceed.
Um, all right, so this is my comment for 33. Allowing low-risk groups to get the virus lowers the spread ultimately of the virus in the community. Those who have already had the disease are no longer susceptible to getting the virus or spreading it. We need to focus on preventing the disease in high-risk groups and allow those not at risk to get the virus. We are told that vaccine herd immunity is necessary to stop the spread of the virus, and natural herd immunity should be avoided? How could a vaccinated herd immunity be better than natural herd immunity? Why do you think boosters are necessary? The COVID-19 vaccinations have not been studied and proven to decrease transmission of the virus. Natural herd immunity decreases the risk of exposure for those at high risk. Some may believe that vaccinations were the primary cause of lower deaths from infections during the 20th century. In truth, a 90% decline in deaths due to infections had already occurred prior to the majority of vaccines in the 1960s. The known risks of vaccines can be serious. Vaccines currently available have reported known risks, including neurological diseases such as transverse myelitis, Bell's palsy, multiple sclerosis, autism, and Guillain-Barre. And as a side, these are my own personal words. My mother was a victim of the swine flu vaccine in the 1970s. She was paralyzed for a month with Guillain-Barre syndrome. There are already reported cases of Bell's palsy and transverse myelitis, and even death associated with the COVID-19 vaccine. The FDA limited the Phase III trials and shortened the traditional trial periods to study the new vaccines. Now, we are subject to the study. We are administering the vaccine often to people at low risk of death. These risks need to be known and weighed before someone decides to take the vaccine. How fully informed can someone be of the risks when we are part of the study? Thank you very much.
Thank you Tiffany. Okay, I believe that, I don't know if there's anyone on the phone.
We do not have anyone on the phone. We do have an off-agenda, but not for consent.
Yes, so at this time, we can entertain a motion to approve consent.
Move consent.
So we have a motion by Supervisor Kennedy and a second by Supervisor Desmond. Please vote. Oh, that went faster than we...
Oh, sorry.
We weren't quick enough on the draw.
And that's a unanimous vote, and let the record reflect that Supervisor Serna abstained from item 41.
Thank you. And at this time, we do have one public comment from Ryan Harris.
Oh, before we take that comment, it looks like one person did get into the queue for item 12. I apologize, there's a process when they go through the voicemail. So would you like to take that one caller? Okay, let them do that, and then we'll take, we'll take Mr. Ryan after that. Hi caller, could you, could you mute the meeting in the background and then...
Hello?
Can you hear me?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, I'm sorry, there was noise in the background. So go ahead and start with your public comments, you have two minutes.
Greetings, my name is Jeff Tardagia, and I've worked with Emily before and both Cindy, so appreciate you addressing this, and please make public funds available for your point-in-time count for your homeless. We'll try and do this next January. Again, Jeffrey Tardagia, I appreciate this, and please continue working on homelessness. Thank you. Bye.
Thank you Jeffrey.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Ryan Harris.
All right. Hello, how are y'all doing?
Good morning.
Good morning, good evening, good day. My name is Ryan Harris, and these first three minutes, probably just going to get to let you guys know me. I've been up here before. I've requested for you guys to be my mentor, haven't heard back, so I'd like to request again. Will you please be my mentor? One of you, any of you? I believe Rich, I'm in your district, Arden, so Rich, will you be my mentor? But I got to ask all of you. Patrick, will you be my mentor? Sue, will you be my mentor? Phil, will you be my mentor? Don, will you be my mentor? Nonetheless, this information here, I got like three more at home. This is the information I'm going to be going over anytime you guys have a meeting, until it does get fixed. It may take several meetings, because it is three minutes that I'm allowed to do, but until I get comfortable up here. Reason I'm dressed like this today, I got an email that said, "If I show up and talk at this meeting, you're about to lose your job. Do you want to lose your life too? So if I die, I don't want to be in a suit and tie." So that's why I'm up here today dressed like this. Nonetheless, something happens, here's my smiling face. But with that said, again, this, this three minutes, just get to know me. The things that are going on in this department is pretty crazy. I know this lady right here, she used to be the director of our department. I'll get to the emails in here somewhere. She did discipline me for doing things that I was instructed to do, and when I gave her that information, I was still disregarded. My supervisor sent her an email, which it's in here somewhere too, and we'll begin to all this, and in my supervisor's email, she said that I shouldn't have been disciplined for that, and I was still disciplined. And it's very hard when you're taking away 24 and 40 hours of pay during a pandemic. It's just, the things that are going on in this department is crazy. I know it's on, on this agenda right here, I don't know if I could get...
You have 15 seconds, sir.
Okay, well, I'll be back. On this agenda, it says that there's authorization number 11 to the appointment of Ethan Dai. I got an email right here from Mr. Ethan Dai, which I'll be reading in the 2 o'clock hour. I get another, I get another two minutes if I address a topic, so I'll just split it up.
No, actually, you're, yes, thank you, sir. I do want to clarify just a couple of things. On off-agenda matters, we are not allowed to respond. We cannot take up a conversation on something that was not agendized, and so...
Right.
The lack of response that you see from, from us up here is because we're not technically authorized to respond to something that's not been on our agenda. Additionally, on top of that, on matters that relate to personnel, it, we are not authorized to, to insert ourselves in those matters. Those are private matters that need to be taken up with the Department of Personnel Services.
Yeah, last time I came here, now I got another pending investigation for my last time coming here, too, so...
Yes, I mean, last time you were here, that was, I think we referred you back to the Department of Personnel. It's not that we don't care, that's just how the laws are, that's how we do it in our society, and so...
Like I said, I got death threats, so I would hope ethically some laws could be changed, because I know they changed some of our department procedures to discipline me, so I would hope that you guys could change some procedures to help me as well.
What, what I do want to do is refer you back to Personnel Services. I don't know if we can, you know, make sure that you have those connections, I'm sure you've already talked to them, but that is the path forward, is through personnel.
I got a pending investigation with Personnel, can, can you just let them know to bring that up?
No, I, I'm not authorized to insert myself in your business. That's why I'm saying you're, you're in the wrong place regarding something that's really important to you, so I'm trying to get you to the right place that can manage your issue. So you should refer directly to Department of Personnel Services with this.
Okay. And, and I have actually, I requested to meet with you guys in 2017, and I believe you guys just got me a date in October. Yeah, I still have it.
Now we're getting dangerously into a back-and-forth conversation, which we're not allowed to do, so I'm going to ask you to refer to DPS for that.
Have a contact for me?
We do. Our county, our acting county executive, our acting county executive will provide that for you.
Right now? Or when?
Someone will provide that, and, okay, thank you, sir.
Madam Chair, I just, I just wanted a clarification, this is not to get in the back-and-forth, but Mr. Harris, Ryan, you said on the record just a moment ago with your comment, said you received an email that said if you appear before the board today, you lose your job, and that you were going to lose your life.
Correct. I did. I did, and that's not the first time that I've been threatened.
So you received that from a county staff member?
What was that?
You received that from, from a county employee?
I'm not sure, it was just sent to my email because of, because of what Mr. Ethan Dai, I'm assuming, had said in his email about me.
Okay.
The person who you guys want to authorize me to live in for.
I would suggest if you received that email, again, maybe, I don't know if it came over your, your office email or through your own personal email, again, I'm not trying to probe this too deeply, but that's a serious matter if someone says their life was threatened.
I totally agree. That's why I'm hoping you guys could bend the rules to help, instead of bend the rules to harm.
Again, if, if you're going to reach out to Department Personnel, I would suggest that, that email be shared if you choose to do so, because again, that's, I take that seriously when anyone's, you know, if you, you made, you made the statement on the record here in public that your life has been threatened, and I don't know, I don't know if you know who the author was of that, but I do think that's a matter, maybe even for law enforcement, Ryan.
Couldn't agree with you more.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you for your wisdom Supervisor Natoli. Thank you, Mr. Harris.
Madam Chair, we have one caller on the line.
Thank you.
Okay, please transfer the caller.
Go now?
Yes, I'm sorry, can you hear me?
Yes, okay, I'm ready.
Yes, you have two minutes, so you can start with your comments.
On June 8, Supervisor Kennedy berated the people in chambers without a mask if they were breaking the law. I submitted some emails to him asking what law was being broken with no response. I then submitted a public information request asking, "What law requires members of the public to wear a mask in public building regardless of their medical status? Or even if they do not have a medical condition and simply refuse, what does the law state? I would like to be educated so I don't put myself at risk of arrest for following CBTH guidelines that list a mask exemption." The response I received from legal counsel was, "Please see California Health and Safety Code, Section 1210140." It reads, "Upon being informed by a health officer of any contagious, infectious, or communicable disease, the department may take measures as are necessary to understand the nature of the disease and prevent its spread. To that end, the department needs, it considers it proper, take possession or control of the body of any living person or the corpse of any deceased person." My first reaction was, that sound like our bodies belong to the state and the direction of a health officer, an appointed official with no due process or warrant. That right there is repugnant to the United States Constitution under the Fourth Amendment. Second thought was, I'm legislating to pass that, and this board is standing by it, though all of the above said oaths to uphold the Constitution. Third thought was, let us see if this code was valid, and it still does not answer how the members of the public not wearing a mask due to medical exemption per CBTH guidance are breaking the law. Thus, my original question was not answered. I submitted a follow-up in yesterday, a reply came back from Rick Hare, Supervisor Deputy County Council, stating that "The California Records of Smash Act does not require governmental entities to answer questions or provide legal advice or interpretation. The county does not have any documents responsive to your request, and the county cannot provide you legal advice." My interpretation, we have no lawful authority to enforce a mask but will not publicly say so. Just in case I am wrong, I am checking. May I remind this board that any law repugnant to the Constitution is null and void. You took an oath to preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution from all enemies, foreign and domestic, even if they are sitting to your right or left. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and we have one more off-agenda comment by Chris Wagner.
Hi, I'm Chris Wagner, I live in Fair Oaks, and did you know that you can't multitask? That the brain can't multitask? I've noticed they're looking at their computers while people are talking, these are your constituents that are here. They're talking about life and death, death matters with the COVID vaccine. They're talking about sovereignty and their civil rights, and their rights as an American through the Constitution. So if you don't have the wherewithal to look them in the eye, she's the only one that looks at people when they talk. You cannot be on the computer and look and listen to your constituents at the same time, so I ask you to respect us and to look at us and to pay attention to what we're saying, because we're serious about what we're saying. And we want you to take it seriously and not just throw us away, well, we're going to do whatever we want anyway. No, you need to listen to us. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, that concludes our public comment. And I want to thank the public for the, you know, it's apparent that you are all working really hard and reading and studying. And it's really important to be civically engaged. We count on it in order to understand how you feel out in the communities. And so I just wanted to acknowledge your professionalism in the way you're delivering your message to us because it's affected, more effective when we do that. And so you've done a great job this morning, so thank you for your public comments. And at this time, I believe we have no more public comments.
Yes, public comments are closed. We do not have anyone else in the queue for off-agenda as well via the phone.
Okay, and so we will move on to the next item, please.
Yes, Item 53 is the Presentation of Resolution Recognizing July 18th through the 24th as Probation Supervision Week for Sacramento County.
And this is where I get to do something that we haven't really done for, I think, about a year and a half. I get to acknowledge our probation officers. So I'm going to come down there because I think it'll be more fun. More normal, even with my mask. Or maybe not, I don't know. I guess the rules are kind of. This morning, we have our acting chief, Marlin Wayans, here to accept this prestigious acknowledgement of the important activities that go on with our Sacramento County probation. And so I'm going to go ahead and read this resolution because there's so much that they do. And it's with great appreciation that we present this acknowledgement. And so recognizing July 18th through 24, 2021, as Probation Supervision Week for Sacramento County, whereas communities across the United States of America recognize probation officers for providing vital law enforcement services in their communities and have designated the week of July 18th through 24, 2021, as a time to formally express their appreciation. And Sacramento County probation has highly skilled, multidisciplinary workforce devoted to changing lives of the clients in which they serve and using innovative strategies to support positive change. And works with all youth within juvenile justice system for the County of Sacramento and ensures the utmost care for the youth housed in the youth detention facility while providing positive programs to assist them and their families in their transition back to the community. The Sacramento County probation officers apply evidence-based practices to address the criminogenic needs of juveniles placed under probation supervision and high-risk adults placed under mandatory supervision, probation supervision, and post-release community supervision to encourage client rehabilitation, accountability, and public safety. And enforces orders of the court while providing clients with the assessment treatment, the supervision needed to prevent reoffending and resulting in safer community. The Sacramento County probation officers conduct assessments on adults booked into custody and monitor individuals released in pre-trial by the Superior Court at no cost to the client and investigate and submit thousands of detailed pre-sentence reports and social study reports, which include critical information and recommendations for Superior Court judges. And whereas the Sacramento County probation officers fulfill their responsibilities with dignity and humility while fostering collaborations with other law enforcement and community agencies while supporting the security of families and victims and communities within the Sacramento County. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Sacramento, the County of Sacramento, State of California hereby proclaims July 18th through 24, 2021, as Probation Supervision Week for Sacramento County to honor these professionals and recognize their contributions in the community. I just want to say that, oh, I'm beginning my second term at the county. And I've had the privilege of touring the juvenile facility and working in different, having different opportunities to see some of the things that probation does. And it's broad, there's a broad range of things. These are the gun-toting officers with a heart who have a four-year degree in sociology or whatever. I mean, they're more than an officer. They're, they have the training and the skills to maybe take advantage of those, help someone take advantage of those second chances. And they've done some amazing things with the juvenile population in helping them work their way through that second chance. As far, you know, from, you know, they have a library and they have a garden at the facility and they have work training programs. And there's all kinds of things that they do to try to reach, get to the heart of these individuals and give them hope for tomorrow. And Chief, I want you to know that it's something that the entire board appreciates. We are proud of our Sacramento County probation. And it's with a great pleasure and an honor to give you the respect and honor today for a week, but hopefully throughout the year because you guys are the probation. Sacramento County probation is the best. So, and that comes from my heart. I appreciate everything you do, Chief. And would you like to say a couple of words? Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, interim county exec Edwards and deputy county exec Waxstaff. Just on behalf of the department, you know, thank you for the support over the years as well as, you know, this year and obviously next week with Probation Services Week. You know, probation, we're often the unsung heroes. We don't always get the attention. And, you know, we've led, as I've mentioned before, all sorts of reform efforts. And even when, you know, the storm is all around us, we continue to sort of, you know, stand up and raise our hand and say we'll continue to work at balancing both accountability and opportunity. You know, our clientele need that, and I think the community deserves that. So that is really our message.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry, I had to wear my mask.
It's quite all right. Thank you so much.
Okay.
Okay, Item 54 is the Carmichael Property and Business Improvement District. Public hearing to renew the district and levy assessments continue to July 13th, 2021, at 2:00 PM to tabulate the assessment ballots and take final actions to renew the district and levy assessments for fiscal year 2021-22, and the environmental determination is exempt. So just to clarify the record, this will be continued to 2:00 PM later today where we will tabulate the ballots and take the final actions.
Thank you.
Good morning, thank you. Good morning, members of the board, Dorothy Codani with the County Engineering Division, and welcome back from summer recess. Property and Business Improvement Districts, also shortened as P-Bids, provide services which enhance the economic vitality of the properties within the district. The county currently administers five P-Bids, which also will be the topic of another item presented to the board later this morning. The Carmichael P-Bid was formed on December 6th, 2016, with 437 properties which are generally located along Fair Oaks Boulevard and Manzanita Avenue. The five-year, initial five-year term of the Carmichael P-Bid expires on July 31st. On May 4th, a resolution of intention to renew the Carmichael P-Bid for a 10-year term was adopted. The Carmichael Improvement District, which is the owners' association with the district, analyzed the service call data from these past five years and an assessment methodology was revised to better balance assessments and services provided. The proposed boundaries have been expanded northerly and southerly so that the proposed district now includes 533 properties. And the estimated total budget for the first year of the renewal is $548,000. At this time, I'd like to thank Supervisor Desmond for voicing his support during different steps of this endeavor. And also in support of this effort and to answer any questions that may arise, we have in today's audience the Executive Director of the P-Bid, Rachel Taylor, the Board Chair, Nick Bloys, the Board Director, Gary Hirsch, and Kelly Rankin with the consulting firm Civitas. On May 24th, 315 ballots were mailed and approximately 118 have been returned. And so at this time, if there are no questions from your board, we ask that the board open the public hearing, close the public hearing, and adopt the first two recommended actions, which is to recognize the exempt status of the project. And as Ms. Evans has already stated, that we staff will then conduct a ballot tabulation and return back with the results of that ballot tabulation at 2:00 and take any final actions at that time.
Okay, thank you. At this time, Supervisor Desmond has a comment.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for being here and your comments. And I really look forward to hearing the public testimony, both from the members of the P-Bid or the management of the P-Bid and others. Question for you, how many new properties are proposed to be included in the expansion?
It looks approximately 100 new properties. And was that your question?
Yes, yes. And how many, how many new property owners do you know?
Ooh, that I'll have to check back and I'll.
Okay, I appreciate it. And just before we, and we'll probably be having some additional discussion, but I have been heavily involved in supporting the Carmichael P-Bid. I think, I think P-Bids in general do a wonderful job keeping the communities, the business corridors clean and safe. I know we have another representative executive director from the Fulton Avenue Association here as well. I have three P-Bids in my district. And certainly in the unincorporated area, they do such an important job, kind of filling a vacuum that exists just by virtue of being in the unincorporated area. And just watching Carmichael P-Bid in action, like the other P-Bids, and the amount of effort they put into bringing the business community, the church community, nonprofit communities, together with local government has been just a great recipe for success and improvement in these areas. So just appreciate all the work you do and all the work everybody does at Carmichael P-Bid. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Desmond. And at this time, I'll open the public hearing. And we do have a couple of public comments. I know there's one person on the line from the previous item, which was the probation resolution. And I apologize, that's my fault. I didn't ask for public comment. But after this item, we'll take, I hope that caller's listening, that they don't feel forgotten. But at this time, we will take public comment, starting with Bill Course and followed by Michael Hansen.
Madam Chair, we also have a public comment via the phone, a couple of comments via the phone.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, good morning, my name is Bill Course. I wanted to see if we could do that in reverse order with Michael Hansen.
Oh, sure, yes. We'll start with Michael Hansen and followed by Bill Course.
At any rate, thank you, Madam Chair, supervisors. And Rich Desmond, I appreciate you taking over Susan's run, Susan Peterson. I worked with her with the Arcade Creek Parks on that, and will probably be working again. This one, though, however, deals with the Improvement District. And from that standpoint, Carmichael Elks wants to be removed, the property there. We did not ask to join. The map was drawn without consulting us to be part of it. We are down Cypress a large chunk. We are not on the business loop there with Manzanita and Fair Oaks. So as such, we've requested to be removed. We have asked in the past, and we're told that the five-year plan, no, we were there. And we've asked for the second time, and we were not dropped as part of the 10-year plan. We really don't want to be a part of this. We know that we're not part of the business district. We are not a business. We're off the street. We are essentially a fraternal organization. That's a 501(c)(8). We're nonprofit and prefer to, we're not open to the business, we're not open to the public. Granted, we do hold bingo, and that is a public thing, but that's the only thing that's open to the public. The costs versus benefits. When we look at it, we don't see a benefit for belonging. Bill here can go on a significant amount related to, we manage our grounds, we have our own security. We call the sheriff as easily as the California Protective Services can. So, and essentially, we keep our area clean. We've had no real benefit. The lodge needs to vote to engage in contracts, and essentially, this is a contract. We're joining a group. We did not have that opportunity. By our own bylaws, that's not, it's not for people just to latch on to you. We have requested to be removed. We found ourselves still in CID with this term. We are a wart on their map. We're off over there. With that, actually, though, in point, I have no issues with the CID. We just don't see a benefit to it. On point of fact, Gary is working with us on a 501(c)(3) that we are putting together. So it's not an issue of personality, et cetera. There's just no benefit to us. I turn.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Let me get over here, I guess this one. Hi, my name is Bill Course. I volunteered and have taken over in the RV. We have an RV section, and our property is approximately eight acres. So we have five acres of parking lot, and we have five acres of, let's call it backyard. We've got pools and outbuildings. We, when I first started volunteering there and staying there, we would probably get 15, 20 people per day, or not per day, per week, whether it be homeless, whether people trying to break in, burglary, et cetera. Since that period of time, we've dropped down, we have very little now. But I've had quite a bit of experience in dealing and calling the CSP or CID security, which is the main portion of our $7,000 annual fee that we're charged for this assessment. The other portion is there's somebody that's supposed to be cleaning up, but we pay full-time groundskeepers since we have 10 acres, or have eight acres to manage. So when I first found out we had this security available to us, we found out they're only available seven in the morning till seven at night. Ninety-five, ninety, ninety-five percent of all our instances, burglaries, car sleepers, creepers, people coming in, drug dealers, whatever it may be, they come in after 10 o'clock at night. So this fee that we're being charged, we're already covering with myself and a couple other people that are there, available 24 hours a day. As well, when we do call the CSP, we don't know if they're going to come. Or if they are going to come, how long it's going to take to be there. An example, a year ago, we had a person who was just released from prison. Four days earlier, he came out to our pool. We've got a very large pool, there were families, there were women, children. He decided to take his clothes off and go hop in the pool and swim. I called the California Service Patrol, took them over 20 minutes to get there. Then when they got there.
You have 10 seconds, sir.
Oh, sorry. Anyway, when they got there, they called the sheriff's department. It's the same thing that we're doing now. So since that period of time, we've been just calling the sheriff's department. We don't need to pay the $7,000 a year because we're doing the same thing. But better because we're on the property. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, do you want to take the phone call?
Yes, please.
Okay, please transfer the caller. After the caller and. After the caller and all the public comments are finished, then you would close the public comments.
Thank you. Close the public hearing?
Hearing, correct.
What would I do about you?
Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
Start now?
Yes, you can start now.
All right, thank you. Thank you. My name is Stephen Fishbein, and I'm calling on behalf of Stevenson Equity and also Steve Soboroff in the property, the southwest corner of Fair Oaks Boulevard in El Camino, 5949 Fair Oaks Boulevard. You may recall, that was J.C. Penney's, was in operation there for about 25 years. It was their former National Catalog Customer Service Center. We have another operator there now. We want to offer some comments, and hopefully, this is going to be constructive and some practical observations we've had. We haven't been in this assessment district before. We were out of it. We've watched it for five years. We really haven't seen any special benefits. We're literally on the border just south of El Camino, around the new line they put us in here with a pretty substantial increase. It's a tough time with this COVID, and businesses are having a difficult time, and, you know, just more and more on these tenants and businesses, and they just don't stay. Penny's left, moved out of state, that's an example. It took 400 employees. We have somebody there now with a lot less employees, and we just want to maintain it. So we just haven't seen any special benefit. We also don't see this report that they accounted for the general benefit of any general increases in property valuation under Prop 218 either. In any event, we first learned of this proposal when we received a letter on October 17th, and then there was a Zoom meeting. I think I, maybe one other person attended that. It was right in the middle of COVID. I think you could see by the nature of the participation, there's very little understanding or even acknowledgement or notice of this. Minimal notice, in fact. We requested a list of the properties back in October by email and by telephone. We felt, we never received that at all. We were told it would arrive in March, never came. We wanted, you know, talk to some other people, see what was going on. We also reported some very, very serious defamatory graffiti on a building that was there forever in that district, and nobody responded. We went through all their procedures, and finally got, I emailed them, and they said, whoops, it slipped through the cracks. So it was like 30 feet of graffiti accusing somebody of a horrible sexual crime on a building, very apparent. So their patrol people, they aren't, they aren't observing, but that was up there for, I think, months. And finally, after calling again and again, it got done. It wasn't a very good job, it was just white paint. In any event, we take care of our own issues, like some of the other speakers said. We have secured our building. I don't see we have any benefit for this. We do work with the Sheriff's Department if there's a homeless or vandalism issue, which we've been fortunate, we've had pretty good luck with our property, and we found the Sheriff's Department to be extremely...
You have 10 seconds, sir.
We found the Sheriff's Department to be extremely professional and helped us quite a bit on all these issues. And I think that's what people rely on, because they're uniquely qualified to handle these situations, not calling a number. And there's, you know, it's very limited staff, and they don't have the wherewithal to handle these things. So we really aren't really interested. I hope it's constructive. There was no audit, we found, that was required under the Government Code, Section 26909. It's supposed to have an annual or biannual audit. We didn't locate that, maybe it's around.
Can you please wrap up your comments, sir?
But anyway, I'm going, I'm giving a lot of issues. I hope this is good food for thought, and understand that businesses have to go. So if we don't, if they want to vote, existing people could vote. It's not a raw vote, it's a weighted vote, and other people are voting to put us in it. We don't have a vote here. So if you want to just expand, continue it, but don't expand it, I guess if people want to do that, it's up to them. So thank you very much. I appreciate the, the time and the consideration and all your hard work, and we've been impressed generally with the other county services on our property. Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes your public comments.
All right, and so at this time...
Madam Chair, can I ask a question? I don't know if the...
Would you like me to close the public hearing or leave it open?
Well, before you do, I'm wondering, because we have not heard from, we have representatives from the P bid here, both the board and their executive director. Were they, were they planning to come and speak? Because I, frankly, this is an opportunity to address some of these concerns that we've just heard. Yes, right? I mean, is that, Madam Chair?
That's great.
As part of the public?
Yes, thank you. I did not have them signed up to speak, so that's perfect. Do they need to fill out a speaker card or...
We'll fill it, we'll fill it out.
Okay.
Hello.
Hello. My name is Rachel Taylor. I am the Executive Director of the Carmichael Improvement District. I have been in my position for over two years at this time. As you heard, we obviously are right in the midst of our renewal. It is a 10-year renewal. Addressing some of the concerns that have come forward today, obviously, these have also been discussed with us before this, this meeting. So I have, Gary and I have met with the Elks Lodge before, and we have discussed various things with the caller that was just on the phone as well. So, you know, what I really, what I really heard from, from most folks is, what is the most visible benefit and service that we provide, which is our security? And a little bit of our maintenance, that's our clean and safe program. That is the most visible thing that we provide. However, it's not all that the CID does, and it's not all that a P bid does. It does happen to be the biggest topic of conversation. And as time has gone on, and we see a large influx of homelessness, crime, vandalism occurring in our, in our communities, the role of the P bid has become larger. And that has become then a more visible benefit that is being serviced. So I would like to point out all of the other things that the CID provides, namely, that is the one thing really in Carmichael that binds all of the, all of the agencies and the community together. We work very closely with the Sheriff's Department as well as CHP POP team. We work very closely with the District Attorney's Office, code enforcement, obviously, with our Supervisor Desmond's office. And, you know, what we do is we really work to be that problem solver that does not exist in some of the unincorporated parts of the county. We have other P bids here today as well, and they, they really do the same kind of function that we do. And that is bringing together the community and making sure that there's somebody there to kind of bind all those ties together. In hearing the Elks Lodge talk today, you know, they really do feel that they are not receiving the same benefits that everyone else does. They are not the only, you know, nonprofit or parcel in the district that is not open to the public. The way that the law works is that all properties that are not residential or agricultural are assessed. We did this go around with our P bid. We adjusted our rates in order to reflect services to specific types of parcels and properties, as well as adjusting rates for the boulevards that get more, so like Fair Oaks Boulevard, Marconi, Manzanita, Winding Way, properties that frontage on those main avenues have a little bit higher of a rate than those that do not, because we, we know and have recognized through years upon years of data collection and research that we want to be fair in how each of these properties are assessed. So the benefits, you know, although can be hard to seek, can be short-sighted at times, the benefit of having the P bid is, you know, paramount to Carmichael. And it's important that, you know, this, this district remains in place and continues to serve the community in the vital function that it has for the last five years.
Supervisor Desmond, do you want, wish to speak?
I'm sorry, I'll wait until public comment's over, and then we, when we have our discussion.
Okay.
Could I ask a question of the Speaker then?
Sure. Supervisor Nottoli.
Yeah. Thank you, Rachel, for being here today and for the work that the P bid does. I guess I'm curious, it wasn't clear in the staff report, it showed the expanded area. So the expansion area, which is to add the additional properties, as Ms. Codani pointed out, how was it decided to take it further north, further south? And I guess there's a couple parcels, both to the east and to the west, that have been added as well. So obviously, the district's been in place now for several years. You're seeking the tenure extension, as you noted. But what was the determination that you should expand? Again, not that the services may not be warranted, but I think, obviously, as we heard from at least one of the speakers that you've spoken with. So can you just provide a little background as to how that was determined?
Yeah. You know, the, the discussion of expansion started many years ago. As soon as the P bid was formed, it became apparent that other properties outside of our boundaries were interested in being a part of the P bid, were expressing to us how much they wanted to be included in the P bid. The nature of P bids means that we can't, we can't just service, you know, somebody right outside our boundary. It's very much specific to the boundaries that exist. So in taking a lot of feedback from properties that were in those areas that we are now expanding to, as well as using data from the Sheriff's Department, and, and even doing some surveys and polls, we were able to determine what would be appropriate. P bids have to include, they have to be contiguous as far as boundaries go, and they have to include all commercial properties within those contiguous boundaries. So we took a look at what made the most sense and what felt the best for the flow of the P bid. The largest part of the expansion is occurring on our north end, just, so currently, we end at Jan Drive. So there's a large smud, smud substation up there. That's pretty much our last property currently in the, in the current existing P bid. We're going all the way further north to include the Crestview Shopping Center area, as well as what used to be like an old bowling alley up there, and a couple of other commercial restaurants and things like that that are right around Winding Way. There is a little bit of expansion occurring on the south side. The caller, as you, as you heard, his property is just to the south of our current border. We're going just a little bit further than that, because we have had many property owners in that area over the years tell us that they would like to be included in the services. They were very interested in that. And then to the east and west, just a few parcels that, that didn't make sense why they weren't in the P bid to begin with, so we, we made that choice as well.
Could you clarify then, the caller made reference to the awaited vote. So in order to expand that too is awaited vote, that if you, just for example, again, I trust it's not the case, but if all the properties that are currently in the expansion area voted to not, you know, participate, would they still be outvoted by, if everybody participated in the existing area?
It's really a math, a math type situation. When you, when you do a renewal of a P bid, you are essentially starting from square one again. And so in choosing to expand our boundaries, every single parcel is, is, that is within the expansion boundaries, as well as what is our current district, is actually all now one giant pot. And then, like he mentioned, they are weighted based on how much they would pay into the district. Not necessarily how large they are, but how much they would pay in.
Right, frontage and, and, and other elements that you, that are part of the, the background. Just one other question then. So typically, we've seen the five-year renewals. Has the law changed? It seems to be going way back when, when we've, some early iterations of the, and again, those folks are here today with their annual reports, that five-year was the maximum. Now, does the law provide for up to 10, or does it, is it actually longer than that?
It is, it's five when you're a brand-new P bid. So when you first form a P bid, five is the maximum, which is what, what we were in, in 2017.
Right, it's 2016, yeah.
And then after that, when you go to seek your first renewal, you can renew up to 10 years. We chose the maximum of 10 years because of the cost of renewal is very expensive for P bids. There is a consulting firm that we have to hire, there's a engineer's report, the actual, the work that goes into it is astronomical, as I stand here before you today. And so the decision was made to renew for, for full 10 years so that we can continue the, the good work that we've been doing as well. You know, five years is really just, just a small stuff in the dirt. Like, we've, we've got so much more to do, so.
And there was a reference made to the availability or accessibility of audit reports. Are those available on a website, or they...
And I'm not totally clear what he was talking there about an audit report. What we do is an annual report every single year that we work with the county and submit to the county, which you will get today, is our, is when we're also presenting our 2020 report. We are, you know, we're, we're a public nonprofit, so we're public records and all kinds of good stuff, so.
Okay, so again, I think it's important that if, if there are requirements, and maybe there's not, but I think certainly that transparency, you know, is a well-used word, but I think that's important for folks who, whether they, you know, are 100% behind, or, you know, the, you know, the, the district or have questions, that information is, is important. And I trust you would agree with that. One last question then. There was a reference made to, you know, graffiti removal. Is that something that's regularly performed by the district? And if so, is there a process that, you know, has been tightened up so that...
Yeah.
It gets taken care of, or is that a private property under responsibility?
The way, the, the current district, and, and actually, and I might expand here in a second on something. The current district, we, for the first couple of years, we only covered graffiti if it was within about four feet of the public right of way, which is what we do for maintenance as well. Now, with the renewal, our budget will be larger, and so we will be expanding our maintenance services. In April, the board actually voted to allocate funds to allow for graffiti coverage, no matter where it was. We were having a huge influx of graffiti in the district. As the caller mentioned, it was very offensive. We had one particular graffiti artist that was pretty prolific in the, in the, in the district, and, I mean, all over the place. And so, you know, we didn't want it up, and we certainly didn't, you know, it's, it's always the responsibility of the property owner to cover that, but we didn't want that to be, you know, it, it was clearly becoming a burden to most folks. So we just covered it. And of course, you know, we don't have a perfect match for, the building that he was talking about is vacant and abandoned essentially, so we did what we had to do.
All right, thank you very much. Thanks, Spencer.
I just, I know Supervisor Desmond wanted to speak, but I have a quick question. There's a vicinity map. Is, is it possible to, to put the map on the projector and see where those, where the Elks Lodge and that other business that was referred to on the phone, where they lie in this big picture of the P bid? And then I'm going to have a question after that. Mr. Hanson or Course had a, a comment regarding 501, 508(c) something, the, the type of organization they have...
501(c)(8).
501(c)(8).
For charm.
And their bylaws and how they have to, there, there are specific requirements in their organizations to vote, and I'm assuming they're a national or a world, I don't know, organization. I wanted to ask County Council to comment on the legality of including them in a P bid if they don't want to be, and if they haven't had the chance to vote on it.
Well, the property owners that may be assessed for a P bid, their due process is the voting process itself. And if the voting process leans in favor of not forming or renewing the P bid, then that, it doesn't get created or renewed. If it does pass on the voting procedure, then they are included in that P bid. And it would be, I would analogize it to a mellow ruse, that if your property is in it, you're going to be assessed.
Okay. And then my other question was, where, where are those two entities on that map? And the reason I ask that is because we had, when we were working on the Antelope P bid, the parks didn't want to be in it. I believe they were at the very end, and it just worked out that we were able to exclude them from it, because they didn't want to be in it. So I was wondering if there's a way to work with those people.
So is, is this a mic that I can use?
You, I believe, I believe so, yes.
So this is the Elks Lodge property right here on Cypress. The other property that called in is this yellow parcel here in the expansion, this square right here. So, okay. So the way the law works is the boundaries must be contiguous. And I, I know what you're saying, you know, when the parks said that they didn't want to be a part of Antelope, and, and it made sense to, you know, disclude them. There's a couple of important points to note here. There's a lot, there's probably a few property owners in here that just don't want to do it, don't want to be a part of it. But that's not really how this, this works, you know? It's, it's a, it's a majority that wants to create this, this P bid and, and be a part of it. And so, you know, when, when that kind of thing happens, it's, you know, it's compulsory. Once the P bid is formed, they're in it, they pay it. Regarding the Elks Lodge...
The Elks Lodge is already in it.
Right, they are already in it.
They were in it in the past.
And they were in the past. That's, blue here is, is the current P bid, and then you can see the, the, you know, we kind of zoned it out in colors here as far as the additional... kind of zoned it out in colors here as far as the additional expansions. Removing the Elks Lodge out of the district would potentially not allow the district to be formed at all. Because we're at a point where changing something to the plan and the way it is and the way that this law works would mean that we would have to redo our entire plan and then also redo an engineer's report as well. We, we have been told by the county that we do not have time to do that kind of thing in order for this district to renew in time to continue service. So that's, that's a huge concern for us because if it cannot be renewed, even if it's a year that, you know, that we're not funded, that's a year then that the P bid is not funded. So, and I, I don't know if the county wants to comment on that as, as a possibility, but right now that's, that's what we have been told.
So I just also want to say that the P bids are amazing. They have, you know, the P bids that we've done in my district have reduced crime by 30% the first, first year and it's, it's been an amazing asset to the community. I get that. I don't know if Bob wants to, Mr. Davidson wants to have, make a comment regarding that. But then my next, my final question would be, is there a way to, if, if they are written into this, because I understand the process, is there a way to work with them to ensure that there's, that there's an understanding that they're going to get out what they put in, that they're going to have, have the benefit so that they're happy to be part of it and they?
Absolutely. And I, I, I do not know enough about zoning to really know for sure the answer to this, but they are currently being assessed at a commercial rate. Although, as you heard, they are a nonprofit. We do have a tax-exempt rate, which is lower than the commercial rate. Now we can only go by what is.
Why are they assessed at a commercial rate then?
Because they are a commercial property. They are at the, on the assessor's level at Sacramento County, they are coded as commercial.
Okay.
Maybe I, I should speak now because I want to make a few clarifying comments on some of the items being discussed right now. So first of all, the question came up about, is it possible to exclude them from the district at, at this time? And I know Ms. Taylor said that, that, that she heard from county staff that that would restart the process and would be, be a long time. And that's, I, I can understand the, how maybe that was determined, but that's not exactly what we conveyed. So I'll, first I'll clarify what could happen at this point because the board received a management district plan and an engineer's report and adopted a resolution of intention to renew this district and, and set this public hearing and we're here today. So, you know, at this time, yes, to restart the process, to redo the engineer's report, that would be expensive. You wouldn't get on the tax roll this year and so that, that would be untenable. But I do want to point out that the law does say that at the public hearing, the county may only make changes to and from the boundaries of the proposed property and business district that will exclude territory that will not benefit from the proposed improvements, maintenance activities. So it would be possible at the public hearing to exclude a property if the board felt that the property did not benefit from the services from the district. So just want to make that point, that that could happen today at the hearing. True, the management district plan and the engineer's report would have to be revised based on that board's determination, but it's not a restart of the whole process. Another point.
So essentially it would just make a difference in the annual amount that they receive for their budget?
It, it would exclude those properties and certainly the, the assessments that those properties would pay, would no longer be paid. Another point, because we heard there's categorization of the Elks property as commercial. That being the case, there's an appeal process. If they are in fact a nonprofit, they wouldn't be able to use this to exclude themselves from the district, but the manager of special districts can hear appeals and if they're miscategorized or if they believe that they fit in a category better than the category that they're currently paying, they can appeal to the manager of special districts and their assessment could be revised. And in this case, the, the nonprofit ta, I mean, I'm sorry, the tax-exempt category is about 33% lower than the commercial category.
At this time, I'll, how do you say it, relinquish the floor? I'll stop and let Supervisor Desmond talk.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And thanks for covering a few items I was going to bring up and, and follow up on. And since you're there, Rachel, I mean, I know you may be in a position to answer some of these questions or, or Bob, again, I was going to ask about some of the process and the implications if we, if we make changes now. A question I had for you on, on process, Bob, is there's some comments were made about the outreach and the percentage of property owners who actually voted for this. Can you, can you tell me a little bit about those efforts and what the, the vote result was?
Well, the, Ms. Taylor might be able to talk about the outreach better because the, the district along with civitas did, did the outreach. But in order for the resolution of intention to even be before the board, we had to receive petitions from over 50% of the property owners based by assessment amount weighted, as we discussed earlier, because the, the vote also is, is weighted that way. So we did receive petitions of over 50% of the property owners weighted by assessment to be here. I understand there were many meetings with property owners and, and there was outreach, but probably Ms. Taylor can describe that better than I can.
Rachel. Thank you, Bob.
I believe we began outreach in probably summer of 2020. The best data we have for outreach is the data that we get from the county assessor's office. So with over 300 different property owners, the only data that, that is available to us is the mailing addresses of who owns the property. So we started with that and then from there, we began to really have to do our own research and outreach to either individual property owners or decision-makers, depending on what kind of property it was, who holds it, where it's really, you know, there's, there's a lot of complications with some of these larger properties, out-of-state owners, that kind of stuff. In the petition process, we were able to actually outreach and speak to, I believe, over 85% of the property owners that we were able to get a hold of and, and speak to. We, obviously we, we were able to get that 50% signed. And then, and, you know, we've gotten, the ballots are back, but as you mentioned, or you asked, they have not been counted yet. That's something that will happen later today and when we come back at 2:00, we'll have the results of that ballot count. So as far as outreach goes, there was a lot of mailings and then as we moved into the early phases of 2021, we started doing a lot of phone calls and outreach. Some of my board members and directors who are here today, you know, really it was a probably two-month-long process of tracking down and reaching out and speaking to people. Because of COVID, we did not do a lot of in-person type meetings. As you heard Steve mention on the phone, we did a couple of Zoom webinars and that kind of thing. And there was a lot of email outreach to, you know, give me a call, come in and talk about it, whatever you're comfortable doing. So that's where we were at with outreach efforts.
Okay, I, I appreciate that. And, and I know you've, you've spoken to both Mr. Fishbein, who spoke via, over the phone, and the representatives from the, from the Elks Lodge here. I mean, I have a letter dated May 18th from the Elks, but I, I was not contacted directly by, by either party. So I, I think it might be worthwhile, Rachel, if maybe you talk a little bit about your specific interactions with, with both the Elks and Mr. Fishbein about their concerns with the renewal.
So Gary and I met with the two gentlemen that are here today, as well as several other members with the Elks Lodge in the summer of 2020. And we discussed the renewal with them. We talked about what, what it looked like, where we were at. A lot of decisions as far as the renewal went had not been made yet, so there wasn't a lot to go off of, but we did have kind of a preliminary layout of what they may potentially pay. I believe it was within about the range of where, where it is now. At that time, they may, they might have verbally expressed that they did not want to be a part of the district, but there was no written request and there certainly was no, I'm sorry, we do not want to do this. It was a, let's talk about this later. And as months went on, there really was no back and forth until May 18th, when we received the same letter that you received.
Okay. Thank you, Rachel. And one last question. If, as Bob mentioned, properties who appeal, and, and to County Council's point, I mean, absolutely right, the due process is the vote in and of itself, but it's also this discussion, this hearing here today, that's part of the due process as well. If properties were taken out this late in the game, can you describe what you, I mean, would you have to go back and recalculate all the assessments for all the remaining property owners?
No, and I think, I think what Bob clarified that, the only thing it'll affect is our, is our final budget. We, we would not go to seek our total budget and then, and then try to acquire that from everybody else to, to meet that need. It would just remove that amount from our total budget. My only concern was that if that happens, does it, does it push us past the point of concern for being on the tax roll for 2021? So, or 2022, sorry. So if, if that's fine, I mean, that alleviates a lot of my concerns. The only thing that then, you know, I just want to be clear is that removing a parcel from a district is, is not something to be taken lightly. And it's not something that every property in this district could potentially be able to do. In the case of the Elks Lodge, there is, you know, they, they clearly are on the edges of a boundary and, you know, that, that is sort of a special case for them, but, you know, we don't, I, I just don't want the habit to be, we don't want to be in it, so we're going to be removed.
And I agree with you.
And that's, that's not the way P bids work and, you know, that's just, that's just not the way our, our, you know, society works really, so.
And I'm, I'm glad just, you know, logistically, as far as the assessment goes, we answered that, that one question. But I guess, then I guess the, for the, the consideration of this body here is, and maybe you can speak to this, address specifically the Elks' concerns that they have not been getting the bang for their buck with this P bid. So maybe you can talk a little bit about some specific benefits that they have received, just kind of in, in response to that.
Well, as I mentioned, the most visible benefit and, and the one that, that we've all been sort of talking about is our security program. Once we, once we take security and maintenance and the entire program, which includes a monthly committee meeting and a lot of my efforts and outreach and communication with various agencies, that ends up being just over 50% of our, of our current budget.
And, but, I'm sorry, can you, and I know you talked about this generally, but specifically as it relates to the Elks and that property.
Exactly, so.
Do you have some, yeah.
So the Elks are, first of all, they're, they are receiving the same benefits, benefits that every other property gets. So security and maintenance. And then on top of that, we also, we also have the, the advocacy side of it, which is really me as, as a person and our board in how we advocate for all of our property owners, both with the county and other agencies. We also fund economic development program, programs where we are looking to fill vacancies in, in the district and build up the community of Carmichael as a place to live and work and shop and all of those kinds of things. And then on top of all of that, it's, it's, you know, our sort of, sort of, you know, marketing aspect and, you know, administrative aspect of the staff person that stands in front of you today. I also wanted to address that with our budget being larger in the renewal, our plans are to mostly expand our security. So you heard some grievances about our hours that we provide for security, their response times, various things like that. That's all, that's all a budget issue and it's because we don't have the funds currently to provide the service that is needed. And so with the renewal, we will be able to provide more security. The goal is overnight as well. Now they do respond to calls overnight currently, but they have to be called to, to, to respond to that. And they're not coming from Carmichael because they're not actively out here on patrol or out there on patrol. And so with the expansion of the budget, we will be able to provide more security, more officers, so their response times are lower. We'll also be providing more maintenance, onsite maintenance, graffiti program expanded, that kind of thing, so. And hopefully maybe an additional staff person because as you heard Mr. Fishbein say, you know, that's, clearly it's just me and there does need to be somebody to help me out, you know, with, with the expansion of a district as well, so.
Okay, thank you. And I'm sorry, I apologize to my colleagues, last, last question. If you're able, and, and me first, County Council, that, that issue on the assessment value assessing at either commercial or nonprofit, is that something that they would be able, would they be able to recalculate that assessment based on a nonprofit status? Because I, I think the assessment is about $6,500 a year for the Elks currently.
So if they have a valid complaint about being assessed to the wrong category, there's an appeal process. It would be to Dorothy Cadani, the manager of special districts. Staff would review and given compelling evidence that they have in the wrong category, well, I, I can't make that determination, the manager of special districts would, but certainly with that information, an appeal process likely could be successful.
Is there any way we could do that process before 2:00 this afternoon and make that determination? Because I think that's crucial. I mean, because if we're making a decision whether or not to grant their request to be taken out, we should know if there's a way to, to allow them to stay in at a lower assessed rate.
We, we can review that and, and we'll come back and report back into whether we were, would be able to conduct that today while we're doing the count.
Okay. Thank you. Those are all the questions. I have all some comments after.
Thank you, Supervisor Natoli. Yeah, and just to the last point, I, I wanted to make another comment, but, you know, that's delegated authority and we don't see this matter regularly, but it is up for renewal. We are going through this process. It would seem to me that, certainly to what Bob said, I trust Council could weigh in on this, but matters properly before us and if it's relative to the categories that have outlined or if there's an appeal process, that's been delegated, but we're here today and to your point, Mr. Desmond, I, I would suggest that we take a hard look at it and that, you know, this board and its full consideration of what's before us, obviously we have to honor what, what the balloting process is. It would seem to me that there, that authority, at least as this matters before us today, should be something we could consider if we wanted to make that adjustment and do, and do it appropriately, you know, looking at the information that's on the record already. I mean, it's clearly the Elks have been out there for decades and they are a fraternal organization and have certain tax status and, and such through IRS code, but, you know, and just the simple zoning of a property, a commercial versus residential doesn't always tell the, the whole story. That's an, that's an assessment, you know, matter that, you know, assigns certain values. So I would, again, maybe Rick, during the next couple of hours here, we have the ability to look at it and if we can make that adjustment here today, based upon evidence in the record or whatever we need to have, it might make it streamline the process and not to take Dorothy or Bob out of the process by any means, but I just, again, this is a circumstance where the whole matter is before us right now, so. But I wanted to just ask a, a, a clarifying point here that the, or actually just make a point, that to the point that people don't get any, don't get a direct benefit, that the idea behind P bids, certainly in improvement districts, is that it's supplemental, that it doesn't displace or supplant law enforcement services or department transportation services or other maintenance activities and/or responsibilities, code enforcement and so forth that go with, you know, the county, you know, authorities and responsibilities. But then recognizing it's a big county, that the, I think the ability and willingness of property owners to come together, certainly maybe not in, in, in total unanimity, but that basically to have the supplemental services and that goes to the point that Rachel was making and certainly to the formation of these districts. And they have not only assisted, I think, the business districts and the general neighborhoods with the activities that are positive ones that are getting intended, and again, this is, I'll make the point, my, my view, that is supplemental, that is additive and, and, you know, and whether a party sees any direct benefit, there are certainly benefits that do accrue. And I think in the, in areas, and, you know, we're going to get to it before the morning session's over, is to hear from other districts and to hear the activities that go on. And again, it may not be specific to any particular one property, but there is, is there is benefit that accrues and that's, you know, obviously part of the determination here and for folks to consider if they want to renew on a, you know, on whatever basis, five or 10 years that they choose to do that. But, you know, I see, I see value, I know others have spoken to it, but there is value in improvement districts and some folks may not want to pay the annual costs, but I think they've proven their worth. but I think they've proven their worth for better than part of 20 years or if not more in this county. And again, we, we as a county can't do it all. We do our best, but this is a way for you, property owners to come together and assess themselves and then to have a board that can have, reflect their membership and their, the people that, you know, own properties and are business people in those, in those areas to, you know, provide supplemental services. And whether it's security or it's cleanup or it's marketing or economic development or any other number of activities, I do think there is a benefit that accrues and, and recognize, obviously, the, the processes before us here today. So, thanks.
Thank you Supervisor Natoli. Okay. We are.
Excuse me, let me ask, I'm sorry, this is out of order. Can we at least be able to respond or let you ask us a couple more questions? Just as you asked the C I D.
Sure, you, you may, do you mind Supervisor Desmond if, if they?
Thank you. Appreciate that. Rachel is very good. When we met with her, one of the key pieces that we were complaining about was the fact that we got no service. Secondly, is we asked to be removed because we are the wart out on the end. It made a great deal of sense from our perspective that it would not have impacted their effort whatsoever, nor would have made any major shift in what they were requiring. It was just a question of how do we approach this? We made the assumption, well, I made the assumption at that time, that we would be understood, we'd be heard, and when there was a process put in place, we would be able to assess it or access it and make it work. Anyway.
We didn't have a discussion on this after we had that meeting. We specifically said, we provide our own security, we do our own marketing, we're a private company, we're a private entity. We're, we're a half mile literally off of what they showed you on the map. I'm a half mile off the map of their business district. The church across the street has a seven-foot fence, a wrought iron fence. The police respond whenever the alarm goes off, the police respond to us. And I realize security is not the only thing that the C I D does. But there, as I said, there's no benefit for us because we're the ones that can respond to the variety of different things and that the security doesn't do. We do with the trespassers, the fence jumpers, the car sleepers, the coach creepers, burglars and thieves that come regularly through the week, the partiers that jump in our yard. We never get any response at all, no matter how big they get, no matter how much funding, we're onsite. We handle our eight acres and we pay for the services. So with reference.
And it is, again, it gets back to we're the, we're the wart out on the end. And that's why I was, I was happy to hear Supervisor Desmond ask the specific question of if we are dropped from there, how does it impact it? It's a small impact because ultimately we are a nonprofit and will be assessed at the lowest possible rate. The second part of that is that we don't need it. And we don't need to chew up their services. Let them focus on the areas that they can.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is, let me ask, is there going to be in the future to hear about the services accountability oversight on these rates? Because we pay $7,033 a year. We have approximately eight acres. Across the street is a church that pays $1,700 a year with a seven-foot wrought iron fence all the way around it. You can't get in it. They pay $1,700 for four acres. So we're paying roughly three and a half times more than they are for only twice the space. So I don't know how this rate, this arbitrary, I understand, commercial, nonprofit, I understand.
It's my understanding that we can know by this afternoon how that can work out. So I'm assuming we're going to, I'm not sure whether to close the public hearing or leave it open, Supervisor Desmond. You know, I, I think we, we have more information coming in the afternoon that's going to inform our decision. So.
Would you like us to come back?
Let's, let's ask staff what they recommend as how we proceed with. You can sit down, sir. We're, we're good.
Thank you. We would recommend that at the close of the public hearing and we will return at 2:00 with a recommendation regarding that and also with the ballot tabulation. So at this time, that's what we would, we would recommend.
Okay. And Supervisor Desmond, you're, you concur. It's your district.
Yes, no, I, I, yes, I would agree to close the public hearing. What I, what I would ask, I guess, I'm prepared to make a motion to move forward so we can do the tabulation process, because we'll also have to have that done by this afternoon, correct?
Correct, yes.
So I guess, you know, we're making a slight tweak here. We're asking for some additional information. What would the motion be to move this forward on to the afternoon session then?
I think if we just close the public hearing, we automatically move forward and count the ballots at the, at the afternoon session and then discuss options at that time?
Correct.
Okay. So at this time, I'm going to close the public hearing. And we're good for now.
Yes, I'd just like to state that the ballot tabulation is open to the public. It will be held in room 304 of the adjacent county administration building. And so any interested parties who would like to attend the ballot tabulation can follow Mr. Mike Middleton of our staff to the location. Or there is the opportunity to participate virtually via Zoom. So, thank you. And we'll see you at 2:00.
Okay, and our County Council wanted to make a comment.
If necessary, we can always reopen the hearing.
Oh, thank you. I was afraid if I closed it, I don't know, it was permanent. I thought it was. Okay. Supervisor Serna.
I just want to point out that 2:00 has been referenced liberally here in the last five minutes. I don't think we're actually going to be hearing this at 2:00. It's probably going to be later in the afternoon because we have a number of other items in front of us still in the morning session.
Yeah, and I think we may have to make some adjustments, but thank you very much.
Afternoon session.
We move, we move forward.
Okay, thank you very much.
Much appreciated. And thank you, everyone, for your comments and your participation. At this time, we have a public comment. If they're still on the line, they're the most wonderful supporter of probation that ever was.
Yes, staff has been in communication with them. And please go ahead and transfer the caller. Hi caller, thank you for waiting. I do apologize for overlooking your call initially. And thank you so much for your patience. Please start with your comments.
Yes, thank you. I really was hoping to avoid having to listen to that pro tact discussion, but it really feeds into my comment because honestly, I was calling to say Fuck Probation Supervision Week as an empty symbolic gesture that only seeks to enable probation to position itself as a leader in alternatives when in reality, their practice hugely expand the net of who can be surveilled as a cane and are actually probation agencies are a major driver of mass reincarceration, considering the fact that they are law enforcement agencies where 83% of probation-led pretrial funds go to staff. And here in Sacramento, they're particularly harmful. And probation departments as a whole are harmful by design. Their job is to criminalize surveillance, set us up to fail. When you're on probation, simple mistakes and structural barriers can easily land you in jail. A battery problem with an ankle monitor, a missed appointment due to transportation or childcare, even health issues, just technical violations that have nothing to do with actual public safety, even though you want to continue to honor them as stewards of public safety. But really, I mean, these people, probation has failed to deliver on its basic promise, particularly when it comes to working with community-based organizations with the funding that they're given, which many of our community-based organizations have never seen funding coming from probation departments. At least not the ones that actually are in the community doing the work. But most importantly too, they're also failing even to follow state laws such as AB 1950, where probation is blatantly choosing not to implement this new law in Sacramento County that would allow over 10,000 people to get off probation. It went into effect in January and shortened probation terms, which would impact and help, like there are 20,000 people on probation in Sacramento County and over half qualify under this new law. And probation is just ignoring it in order to keep over 10,000 people on probation when they are legally eligible to be free. And it's really, all has to do with money. And that's what you've all been, kind of been talking about and entertaining the interest of for the last better part of an hour with the P bid. Imagine if you spent half as much time scrutinizing probation's performance data that comes out of it and how they spend their funds versus the outcomes that actually come from the community as you do. And P bid, and P bid notion to scrutinize this. Like I, it really is frustrating when we continue to see this and see you enable the institutions that continue to oppress and harm members of the community. Imagine just.
Can you please wrap up your comments, please?
Yes. Fuck probation supervision week and really do better. Especially you, Sue. You suck. Staff.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for accepting that public comment.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to keep pressing forward. Maybe the next few items will go a little faster and we'll get through some things. So, next item, please.
Item 55 is the County Service Area Number 10 Benefit Zone Number 3. This is a public hearing on the written report of service charges for fiscal year 2021-22. And you're confirming the report and fixing charges.
Good morning, Bob, it's still morning. So, good morning, Bob Davison. I'll try to make this as brief as I can. CSA 10 was formed in 2003 to provide trip reduction services for new growth areas of, in the county of Sacramento. The current only active zone is Zone 3, which is in the North Vineyard Station, Florin Vineyard and the Wildhawk North Development areas. In May, the board received a written report of operating requirements and service charges and set this public hearing. So the written, the written report summarizes the recommended fiscal year 21-22 service charges and the use of those charges. The written report shows that staff is recommending not increasing the service charge for this year, mainly based on the reduced services provided due to the pandemic. With that, I'm going to give you some of the, just quick highlights from the report. Vanpool, the Vanpool program ceased during the COVID pandemic. The, the hope is that the van program will restart and the 50-quarter TMA intends to restart the program and explore using electric vehicles. The 50-quarter TMA has applied for mobility grants through the California Air Resources Board, which would provide two shared electric vehicles for residents to use. The, the county, the 50-quarter TMA in Sacramento Regional Transit collaborated to expand the Smart Ride service to a, a good portion of the County Service Area Number 10, where most of the residents in County Service Area Number 10 are. And also, a study that we've been talking about since 2017 predicts that when we have 3,000 to 4,000 dwelling unit equivalents achieved, that minimal, minimum peak hour shuttle service to regional transit could be implemented. And it's, it's assumed that that could be implemented as early as 2024. So with that, I recommend that your board open the public hearing, consider any testimony or comments, close the hearing and then adopt the resolution confirming the written report of, the written report and fixing service charges for fiscal year 21-22.
Thank you, Mr. Davidson. Supervisor Natoli.
I know this is a public hearing. Very quickly, I just wanted to note that the Smart Ride service actually was initiated just less than two weeks ago. And the 50, 50 TMA Transportation Management Entity has been a real strong partner. I appreciate their work. I know I had a chance to visit with some of, some of their board and their executive director here a few months ago. And they are seeking to get the electric vehicles, as you, as you pointed out. I, I wanted to note, I think it's important that since we've embarked upon the Smart Ride service, it doesn't necessarily take away from what might be a dedicated commuter service to connect to light rail. But I would hope there be some analysis around that to determine, I think in concert with regional transit, certainly the TMA and county staff, whether or not expanding Smart Ride at some future juncture would be an appropriate procedure going forward or dish going forward versus, you know, just having a dedicated, you know, commuter connection. So, you know, again, at the time that that study was done a few years ago, Smart Ride was, you know, just in a formative stage. And regional transit, obviously, has proven pretty beneficial and, and well-used in areas throughout the county. So Bob, I think it would be important for some analysis going forward. Not that we wouldn't necessarily do dedicated, you know, shuttle connection. But the Smart Ride, I think for areas, and bringing actually RT services into the area is really, really important. And I would hope that, you know, before we spend money, you know, with regards to shuttle at some future date, that we've done the analysis regarding Smart Ride, its effectiveness and whether that, you know, and the expenditure of that would be the, the best route versus just having, you know, a, a evening and, and morning shuttle connection to, to light rail. Because Smart Ride can connect you to lots of folks, to bus, to other service providers and certainly to destinations as well as to light rail connectivity. And where this is positioned, just lastly, I would say that, you know, you're almost equidistant now between the Casuma's River College Station and the Watt Avenue Station, Watt Avenue being direct to Watt Manlove Station being, you know, a direct connection north. But to the, to the west, you have a fairly close connection as well. So, anyway, I, I think it's a good, you know, you know, a, a good place to be. And I hope you give this board informed of a Smart Ride activities and, you know, how that's being utilized, how it's being marketed to make sure that people are aware that they can now pick up the phone and get a Smart Ride.
Absolutely.
Okay, thanks. That's all I have, Madam Chair.
Thank you Supervisor Natoli. Okay, at this time, I'm going to open the public hearing. I do not have any paper comments.
I'm just confirming with staff that we don't have any comments for this item.
Oh.
Okay, we do not have any callers for item 55. So I'm going to close the public comments for the phone line.
And I'm going to close the public hearing. Supervisor Serna.
There's no further discussion and obviously no public comments. I'm going to move the item.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Supervisor Serna, a second by Supervisor Natoli. Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you. Next item, please.
56 is the Sacramento County Landscape Maintenance District, Zone 4, Public Hearing on Proposed Assessment for the Fiscal Year 2021-22. You're also confirming the assessment diagram and levying assessments.
Good afternoon, Kamal.
Yeah, good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the board. Kamal Atwell with the County Department of Transportation, O and M Division. I'll be presenting the Sacramento County Landscape Maintenance District, Zone 4, for the proposed assessment for the upcoming fiscal year 21-22. So on May 18th, the engineer's report was filed with the board, board's clerk, and the resolution of an intention was approved to assess the levy and collect the assessment for the fiscal year 21-22. So the district provides the landscape maintenance services for this, the map shown on the attachment one. And it maintains 2.1 million square feet of area within that district. So the assessment rates are fixed for past 27 years and the residential rate is $42.50. And commercial rates are $66.51 per acre. And the revenue collected from this assessment is around approximately $515,000. And road fund arguments, about $495,000 to cover the expenditures of $1 million for this budget. Action items are basically opening the public hearing, consider public testimony and objections regarding this matter, and close public hearing and adopt the attached resolution confirming the assessment diagram and levy assessment for LMD Zone 4 for fiscal year 21-22.
Thank you, Mr. Atway. At this time, I do not see any board members queued up to speak, so I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing. I do not have any papers, comments.
And we do not have any phone comments.
And so I will bring it back to the board for deliberation.
I move a staff recommendation.
We have a motion by Supervisor Natoli, a second by Supervisor Serna. Please vote.
Thank you.
And just want to clarify, was the second by Supervisor Serna or Desmond?
Desmond.
Serna.
Desmond.
Oh.
Desmond.
It was Desmond, okay.
Oh, I'm doing it again. I thought three weeks off would help me. Sorry about that Supervisor Desmond.
And that's a unanimous vote.
Okay, thank you.
Item 57 is to approve the 2020 annual reports for the Antelope, Carmichael, Florin Road, Fulton Avenue and Watt Avenue Property and Business Improvement Districts and provide for the levy of assessments for fiscal year 2021-22.
Oh, I guess at this point, good afternoon, members of the board. Dorothy Codani again with the County Engineering Division. And as we previously stated, property and business improvement districts, which are also known as P bids, are required to submit written reports for each year of operation in accordance with the Street and Highways Code. These reports summarize the prior year's activities, accomplishments and financial positions. positions, along with providing the same information for the upcoming year. As previously mentioned, the county administers five P-bids, and this item before you requests that the board approve five annual reports and adopt four resolutions, which authorize the upcoming levy of assessments for the four of the five P-bids. We have in the audience today, ready to present to you the following executive directors and supporting staff, and that would be Cory Duru with the Florin P-Bid, Melinda Epler with the Fulton Avenue P-Bid, Chris Evans with Antelope, Rebecca Evans with Watt, and for Carmichael, Rachel, Rachel Taylor. And I forgot to answer Supervisor Desmond's question as far as the, um, expansion area. There are 41 new property owners in that, and so that was in the board letter. And so, unless there are any questions from the board specifically for county staff, and prior to proceeding with the recommended actions, I'm more than happy to hand over the podium to the, um, P-Bid directors.
Thank you very much, Dorothy. We have no speakers, so we will press on.
Okay, thank you. I think Cory Duru is first.
Morning Cory.
Only four, five foot four. Good morning. Should I hand these to you?
Oh, yeah, I'll take them.
Thank you so much.
I should say, good afternoon.
You know, we're getting close. My stomach says it's lunchtime. So, I wanted to say hello and good morning, good afternoon almost, to the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors. My name is Cory Duru, and I am the Executive Director of the Florin Road Partnership. On behalf of our dedicated Board of Directors and myself, we wish to thank you for having us today. A heartfelt thank you, before I get started, to Supervisor Kennedy for your unwavering support and dedication to the health of our community, to our district, and to our health services. Because of you, we have fully vaccinated thousands of vulnerable community members at pop-up events such as at South Gate Plaza and Florin Square in our district. 2020 was a year none of us will ever forget. In addition to our regular core programming of clean and safe, it's been mentioned a little bit today, um, such as street maintenance and private security, it's been also a year full of advocacy. Alongside our community partners, Florin Road Partnership implemented new programs and services aimed at helping our business community stay open, operate safely, and remain healthy. A few highlights I'd like to point out, our one-on-one business assistants, industry-specific webinars, specifically for nail salons and hair salons who were very hard-hit, and also multilingual business navigators, which helped us reach our Little Saigon community. Furthermore, I'm proud to share these tangible ways we supported businesses. $80,000 direct grants to businesses, and I want to say this again, free money. We love free money for our district. 21,000 pairs of gloves, 18,000 masks, 1,700 bottles of sanitizer, 32 clear scan, temperature scanners, and 50 cases of commercial-grade soaps, cleaners, and 20 cases of wipes. At one point, my office looked like a warehouse. Our dedication to the Florin Road business community is unfaltering. The annual report in front of you goes into further detail about our successes. New elements that I'd like to point out include the Economic Impact Report, as well as our COVID-19 recovery stats. I am thrilled to be here today. I'm happy to see everybody in person again. It's been a very long time, and I want to say thank you again for your time and your service to our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Your annual report is beautifully presented.
Thank you very much.
I want to congratulate you on that.
Thank you.
Supervisor Kennedy.
Just, just two things. One is I'm highly disappointed in no video. Enjoy those every year?
You know, Rebecca's got a video this year, so I deferred.
Okay, all right. But I would, I do want to thank, you know, the Florin Road Partnership. You know, Florin Road is, is a challenged business district. We all have them in our areas, um, and, yeah, as we've had the discussion all morning about P-bids, um, we could not, um, see the successes that we've seen on Florin without the P-bid, so thank you for your efforts, and also, please pass that on to the board.
Thank you very much. It's a 24/7 job. I worked on Saturday this last weekend.
There you go.
Thank you.
Thank you. Everybody knows how dedicated you are.
Thank you.
You do a great job.
Thank you very much.
Okay, uh, our next person at the podium is the staff, Staff of Florin Road P-Bid?
That was Cory.
Oh, no. That was included, okay. Melinda Epler?
Good afternoon.
Hi, Melinda.
Good afternoon. I am Melinda Michael Epler, representing the Fulton Avenue Business District today. Oh, I see. Okay, thank you. Better. Old school. I, I have my notes here, um, and I, I do somewhat apologize for the light nature of my annual report that I submitted in writing. Quite frankly, it was a light year. It was a heavy year in so many ways, but there, we were so limited in what we could actually do, and, and a lot of what we do is events. Um, we, we have grown over the years. Our partnerships have grown over the years, and as a result of that, we've been able to do some really wonderful free events for the community. We're only as strong as our partnerships, and, um, the beauty, the value, the strength, the necessity of partnership is just prevailing, not just in our district, but in my peers' districts. For a long time, it was really just Florin and Fulton, and now we're, we're ingratiated, the county is ingratiated with many more districts, and it was very interesting this morning to listen to some of the feedback about Carmichael. Carmichael is truly blessed to have the P-Bid in place, and I wish them every success today in their renewal. We could not do what we do without county staff, everyone from, oftentimes, the, the executives' office to our supervisors' office, District 3, um, that Chief of Staff, and every director at every level we work with during the year, and are, are very grateful for that. The partnership that we have, we call it a partnership with our independent contractors. Hillary Gould of District Maintenance Incorporated, it used to just be Hillary, and his, his cart going up and down Fulton Avenue, and he has really built, uh, an amazing business that services, uh, more than just a few P-bids in the county and the city, and we're really proud of him, and we certainly appreciate the work that he does and, and his ground crew on Fulton Avenue every day. Our, our security company was in transition this year. Uh, we, we had a shared contract for a bit. We're very happy to employ the Watchmen today, and they're doing a terrific job. They are the men and sometimes women on the ground, dealing with some difficult folks that we, um, welcome into our community, uh, or don't welcome into our community, and their work, uh, is, is relevant, and it is, it's imperative to, to our ability to, um, service and, and cater to our customers and our property and business owners. Lawnman could not do, uh, the beautification in our corner monuments and some of our landscaped areas without Bernie Leno, and he also very nicely, over the past year, has checked in on our 50-foot Aptos Sequoia that we planted in front of the Department of Human Assistance Building at 2700 Fulton. And we did that because we felt it was time to stop cutting down a 50-year-old tree up in Forest Hill and bringing it down, part, putting it in a parking lot, cutting it up and hauling it off to burn. So, um, we made the investment. It was a significant, a significant investment in November of 2019 to purchase this large tree, have it trucked down from Southern California and planted in the ground, but it did, it did have a tenuous year, was getting used to its new climate, and, um, it's doing beautifully. We're in our 10th year, actually 11, but since we had to skip last year, our partnership with the California Auto Museum, which is located downtown on Front Street, is one of Sacramento's greatest gems in, in our opinion, and we will be hosting the 10th Annual Cruise Fest October 2nd, and we're very, very excited about that. Last year, there were so many car enthusiasts, not just on our avenue, but in Sacramento and in the region and beyond, actually. They were so disappointed that we weren't going to be able to host Cruise Fest last year, that we invented Motor Tour, Cap City Motor Tour, which was actually a very special event last year, and we, we replicated it again this year. I am, I need to mention how particularly proud I am, um, and, and absolutely in amazement over our local heart group, the Homeless Assistance Resource Team. We have one in Arden Arcade. We are about three years now into it, and there are several other heart groups all over, um, as you're well aware, in Citrus Heights and Elk Grove and, um, other, like Carmichael, and, and many of those heart groups are very strong. Ours is getting stronger and more and more visible, and the work that they do in our business districts and surrounding communities is invaluable. We must have compassion and some element of tolerance for those experiencing homelessness. Um, we do, we just ask that there is mutual respect, and that's something that we're working on with our homeless population on Fulton Avenue. I, I will close by saying that there's, this is a little crazy, there's this Burger Shack on the north shore of Oahu. It's called Seven Brothers, and when you go place your order, if you can handle waiting in line for 20 or 30 minutes to place your order, you do not get a number, you get a word. And instead of talking about, um, the addresses of some of our more, um, wonderful businesses in the district, I wanted to just name them and then offer a word for each of them. I think that this, this unique business model of, of, instead of treating someone like a number or an address and actually, um, giving them a heartfelt word is, is, is very lovely. La Rosa Blanca, familia. Heart Zones, strength. Capital Confections, ingenuity. Assistance League of Sacramento, enduring. Nilo Company, legendary. The Clock Shop, chime. Basha Taste of Jerusalem, perseverance. Honey Baked Ham, forgiveness. And then there's one word I'd like to use, uh, as, as a wraparound for each and every one of the businesses in my business district, and that is survivor. And this year has shown that they are survivors, and we are all survivors. Um, I, I really truly want to thank our Board of Directors. Um, they've, they've been stalwarts for us for years. Many of them have fallen off the board, but they're still very interested in what we're doing, and, um, I appreciate everybody's support every day.
Thank you. Any questions?
Very well, uh, delivered, and I think it's really wonderful, the heart that you put into that with all those special, um, words. I mean, it gives, it gives a different meaning to, to every one of the businesses. That was great. Supervisor Desmond.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to thank you, Melinda, for, for all of your work and, and your friendship. I mean, I, I attended the, the Cruise Fest and the Motor Tour.
Yes, you did.
Great events, and I'm, and I'm really glad you, you mentioned your involvement in the Arden Arcade Heart, because, I mean, what that really illustrates is that these P-bids that are formed to help improve these commercial districts, and, you know, a lot of the money is spent on security, but it also involves a lot of interaction and collaboration with service providers to, to first get help for people who need it. So, I appreciate, uh, you mentioning that and just really applaud you for it, and please pass along my thanks to, to your board as well.
I will do, and thank you so much for your report, uh, support. We look forward to working with you in your next term. And, um, I wanted to just also say, congratulations on your impending retirement, Supervisor Natoli. I've been coming to these yearly for many years, but I met you before that, so, uh, it'll be very different coming to the board chambers after you retire, because you've been here a long time.
Thanks, Melinda. I get to hear one more report, so I'll be, I'll be around to the, to the end of next year, so I'm looking forward to it.
One more, okay.
Yeah.
It goes fast, so I didn't want to be remiss.
No, I know. Thank you, Melinda, and appreciate all your efforts, uh, through the years. It's made a big difference out there. Thanks.
And so it begins.
Yeah. Oh, that's gonna be hard. Okay, our next, uh, individual CEO is Chris Evans, uh, with the Antelope P-Bid. Close to my heart.
Good morning, good afternoon.
Hi, Chris.
Supervisor Natoli, you're retiring, so, uh, Melinda's trying to make you do it
early, I think. You've got another whole year, right?
I do, yes.
We'll be back here again. I'll pick on you next year. First of all, to the Board of Supervisors, on behalf of my board, we want to say thank you, because we wouldn't have a P-Bid if you guys hadn't approved it. And some of the things we do on a daily basis right now, we're the smallest P-Bid, so I don't have any fancy videos or any big reports. They sent me down here to dazzle you with my words. So, um, I'll try. 78% of our budget goes into security. We just completed our second year. My board established for the first two years, we were gonna work on security and maintenance, which is primarily our budget. So, for the second year, what we did last year was we worked on SEPT-ing the entire district. We went through the entire district, and we looked at everything to see what we could do to make it better, and we've eliminated of four high-traffic areas where we were having problems, homeless problems, three of them are gone. We didn't have to move anybody, we just had to change the environment. So, the board has taken a, a careful study of the district, and we've got a five-year plan, which ultimately ends in renewal, but all the way along the way, we handle about 240 calls. Our security team handles about 240 calls a month. That's 240 calls that the sheriff would be receiving if our security team, which is Watchmen Sacramento Protective Services and Watchmen combined, um, if they weren't handling those calls. Many of those calls, when they come across somebody in need, they call out one of us. That's me personally, or if we can get somebody to come over from the ripple effect, and we meet those people, and we implement our policy of compassionate compliance. The very first thing we do whenever we find somebody in need is we find out what they need. We find out what we can do to help them. I'm telling you, unfortunately, about 98% of the time, what they want is drugs. It's just a reality of my existence that every single day, I deal with a steady flow of drug addicts in my district. We do everything we can to help them, but they're not homeless, they're drug addicts. They're homeless because they're drug addicts. They're not drug addicts because they're homeless. That's my reality. We sit there and we work with that every single day, and when we find people in our districts that need help, we do everything we can, but as you well know, one of the last bastions of hope we have is the Chronic Nuisance Offender Program. We need that desperately to keep the P-bids operational. On a positive note, we are gonna start an open-air market this year. We do want to build some more community relations, and we have the OSH parking lot, which is generously looking at helping us implement that, and we do have a program called 602 Reports, which we're going across the various P-bids, and now we're able to identify people who traditionally need help. I will tell you this, um, of my $180,000 I spend in security, 25% of it is spent on the same four to six people. We get consistent calls on the same four to six people, and we try desperately to get them help, but you know as well as I do, there's just not much we can do right now. And until we can do something to get them to help, I'm gonna continue spending 25% of my $180,000 budget on chasing the same four to six people around. In closing, let me just say, we have a lot of good people helping us. Obviously, county staff, we use Citywide for our maintenance, we talked about Security Company, and we also use for homeless outreach, the Ripple Effect. Now, the Ripple Effect, for those of you who don't know, is a very small organization run out of the 80 Watt District, and frankly, the nicest way I can put it is it's a whole bunch of old people trying to do a lot of good work. And some days they're there at 10:00, and some days they're there at noon, and some days they're there too, but they're always gonna be there to help, and that's what we use, and we shovel a lot of people over to the Ripple Effect, they do the analysis, and we get them into the system, and get them as much help as we need. But so, in closing, let me just say that our, our strategy as a P-Bid is to help the businesses grow, to help the business owners, but the reason our business property owners are investing the money is to help people and help the community, and that's what we focus on every single day. We appreciate your support. We've got three more years before we have to worry about renewal or think about renewal, and we're just gonna keep doing what we do, and hopefully it's gonna get better. Questions?
Thank you, Chris. Supervisor Serna.
Thank you for the, for the report, um, and I appreciate, um, and sense clearly the, the frustration, um, when it comes to drug addiction and the impacts that has in the, the area that you're responsible for. Um, I was wondering, is there any data that, that you collect or you, or-
I was wondering, is there any data that, that you collect, or perhaps from your, your partners in, in terms of the services you provide, on the types of addiction in terms of the, the particular substances that are, are being most abused?
Sure. Well, through 602 Reports, we actually do capture information and notes on what's going on with each individual. I will say to you that the vast, I mean vast, huge number, it's meth and heroin. And a lot of people are moving meth into heroin, because the heroin's become a little bit cheaper now. So it's all meth and heroin, and of course, mental illness is a huge problem. But one thing that I really don't hear mentioned too often is, much of the mental problems we deal with on a daily basis have been brought in by drug addiction. You take normal people, and I mean, I could name a couple of them, you all know them, and you look at who they were two or three years ago and who they are today, and it's like, we're just letting them run around the streets every single, these people need help. I can think of one guy who used to be like a regular, robust human being, and now you look at him, he can barely stand up. And we all shake our heads and go like, man, I wish there was something we could do.
Well, the, my question was a bit leading. The reason I asked it is because I, I kind of guessed ahead of time what your response is going to be. I think we all are very well aware of the impacts that, especially methamphetamine has, as it contributes to the circumstance of homelessness. I want to make sure, and this is really a pointed comment to our county CEO, that, and this goes for all of our P-Bids, we've recently, the, the board has recently invested in some new programming that I think we all hope is going to be very effective, especially as it relates to methamphetamine addiction. And there'll be, you know, several different types of interventions, I think, that are going to become much more robust and available. But I think there is an obvious intersection with the, the jobs that all of our P-Bids are doing, trying to get people the help they need, at the same time reducing the impacts that drug addiction has on, on those areas that they're responsible for. So I want to make sure, Ms. Edwards, that, that, you know, as we begin to develop those interventions and, and we have space and availability for, for people that are addicted to receive services, that we're, we're working first and foremost with our P-Bid community so that, you know, we can direct them appropriately. I think...
Well, thank you. We use...
No, I think when, you know, I think one of the things that we need to be responsive to is making sure that we listen and hear you very correctly, and especially when it comes to hard data that you may have, that's why I asked the question, when it comes to meth. Because I'm a big believer, and have been a broken record for years now, that if I had to pick one outstanding contributing factor, and I know that, that, you know, homelessness is a very complex thing, but if I had to pick one contributing factor to homelessness in our region, it's methamphetamine addiction, because unlike the other substances, alcohol and, and heroin and others, meth has permanent effects on people's psychology. And as you rightfully pointed out, you have people that were once healthy individuals that in very little time morph into something unrecognizable in terms of their physical condition and health, but also, and most importantly, their, their mental faculties. So I think it's incumbent on us to make sure that, that we're working in conjunction and in partnership with one another to make sure those people are getting the help they need.
Absolutely. Thank you for that.
Thank you, Supervisor Serna. Supervisor Natoli.
Yeah, just while Chris is there, but I think to echo just a bit of what Supervisor Serna said, that I know that it was two, two budget cycles ago that we added hundreds of treatment slots in this county. I don't know whether those are all being utilized. I trust that there's probably more demand than there is ability to, to meet it when it comes to addiction services. But, and I think it's, and I talked to our county executive for just for a moment, I think it's important, if not imperative, that as a part of the strategy, certainly we, when we encounter folks, you know, experiencing homelessness, we, we have social workers who are skilled, have skill sets in a variety of disciplines, but that, you know, to the point being made here, that if, you know, there are folks who, obviously addiction has, you know, gotten a firm hold on them, in some cases, they're, they're wasting away, and, and, you know, their fate obviously is uncertain any, any given day. But I, but I would suggest that maybe as a part, if we aren't already doing it, that when we go out and, and as we see recovery in the, in general community, that not just offer somebody, you know, a, a, you know, a housing opportunity, whatever that may look like, but I think to actually have some on, on-demand availability, that if, if you can catch folks at the right moment in time, that they can get, you know, you can get them a treatment, and you can provide some, you know, wraparound service that, you know, if they have pets or other significant others, but that would allow them, if they made that moment, in that instant, or with ongoing work, that they could, you could get them into, to treatment that very, that very moment. You could transport them to that. And, you know, it may be a lot to ask, and the county is big, that you could have this instantaneous ability, but, you know, otherwise, you know, you're going to continue to chase this with some folks, you will, though, you know, and whatever the fog is, or the addiction, is, they're not going to get that clarity in, in, in the moment that you encounter them. But in the event that we do that, that we could actually, you know, say, you know, if you come with me right this very moment, we can get you enrolled in a program, we can provide services, and whether it's methamphetamine or heroin, that's a long climb back, but that they're, the, the ability to deal with that. And so I would just suggest, as we're talking about, you know, what we're going to, to do to, you know, come to grips with this, I think to, again, echo what Phil has said, that you're not going to be able to achieve that in every case, but I think having immediate availability, not to say, well, we'll be able to, you know, work with you in a couple of weeks, maybe we get you in and so forth, there needs to be the ability, I, I believe anyway, to say to that point, on the spot, you know, you can come with us right this moment, and we can begin that help, and, you know, we're going to do everything we can right now. It's not, it's not just about housing. I know there's been this whole approach on housing first, that has merit in some regards, but, you know, to me, with, with addiction, and certainly with mental illness, the ability to, to help folks on the spot, I think is, is, is key and critical to, if we're going to succeed in, in some of the areas that we're really focused on in this community, to help folks. And again, it's not just about business improvement, it's, it's about, you know, helping the humanity of Sacramento County, so.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Supervisor Natoli. Supervisor Desmond.
And I, I want to echo everything that my, my colleague said, and I agree with him 100%. I think this is what the beauty is of the P-Bids. Instead of a business, each individual business having to try to understand this themselves, they can go through this entity to leverage these county resources. And now, you know, we obviously have more work to do, and, and I look forward to working with my colleagues on these things, and our, our interim county exec. But some things coming down the pipe right now, with our crisis response system, with our encampment team being, being expanded, navigator program being expanded, I mean, start interacting with the P-Bid leadership right away to, to leverage these resources and have a strategy for how you're going to approach these, these, these individuals that are, you know, the service-resistant ones, the ones that you're dealing with again and again.
We know who they are.
Right.
I mean, we know them all by first-name basis, so...
But that's what's so great about, that's what's so great about the P-Bids, is, is I think it allows us really to maximize the effectiveness of these kinds of programs, so.
You're right.
Thank you.
Thank you. I totally agree, and you can't get away without me saying something, since you're the only one in my district, but I, I wanted to...
I won by default, is that what you're saying?
No. You're, you're, you're in my district, and we're so glad you're there, and I'm hoping there'll be another one in Orangeville one of these days, we're working on it, but I wanted...
North Watt.
And North Watt? Oh, good, yeah, that would be good, too. I wanted to say that I, I wanted to acknowledge your leadership and your, just your raw intelligence, and I know that, I, I'm pretty sure all of you directors work together and help each other, because every time I talk to you, you say how you're all working together, and there's so many good ideas. And I think it's really, really wonderful that, that all of you collaborate and work together. But I also wanted to say that the way you found a way to actually understand the data on, you know, chronic, these, you know, number of times, these, you're actually collecting and keeping track of how many offenses, and you're able to help the sheriff and the DA in helping you, which I think is genius. You know, it's just really great. And I also think it's really wonderful, the way you have that phone app that, you know, gives people a heads up when someone's getting robbed here, you know, you give everyone a heads up that, that, that things are happening. And the fact that you're bringing some community development to Antelope, because there are people who, who want to do that, but they don't know, in my community meetings, they want to do it, but they're not quite sure where to start. So I'm thrilled to hear that you're beginning to go down that path. And lastly, I want to say that I really appreciate the landscaping solutions and the way you have tried to help the businesses with, you know, I know we've muddled through and tried to help, it's, it doesn't always go as fast as we wish, but I think everything you do makes a difference, and I really appreciate your leadership. So thanks, Chris.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you saying that. Have a good day.
Thank you. All right, next up is the other half of that household, who is also managing a P-Bid, and that is Rebecca Evans. Must be fun to have dinner with that, you know, you, you have, at least you know you have something to talk about.
When I make it.
I get the better half of this deal in my district, I just want you to know that.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, gosh, thank you so much for, first of all, staying this late. Oh, thank you for coming up.
She asked me to come up.
Yes.
Oh, good.
My name is Rebecca Evans. I'm the executive director for the 80 Watt District. And there's a lot of things, I'm going to let David talk as well, but first of all, thank you from the bottom of our hearts. We couldn't do what we do, we call it partnership as well, to have our representatives be right there by us. One of the things that I'm extremely proud of is, over the last year, we actually created such a partnership between our P-Bids, our executives, and the CHP, the Sheriff's Department, that when all the craziness was happening, we were able to just get together and, you know, just collaborate. And actually, one of our businesses that got on the line with us was able to help us, the, the sheriff, to understand where the rioting was happening. And I even hate to say it out loud, but that did happen this last year. So there's just a lot of partnerships that have been created. With that also, I'm going to let David speak, but we've had a lot of loss in business, but we've also had a lot of gain in business. And so that economic impact is constantly turning around. We have Chula's, which makes the best hamburgers you ever had, so you've got to come there. And these African-infused delights, I mean, they really are. So if you're feeling bad, go get us hibiscus tea. We have CARD, which is a Center for Autism and Related Disorders. Elica Health Center. There's just different things that have come to the, to the community that has been changing up the, the dilapidated buildings. So we only have one, and I need to help, get your help with one. Oh, Mercy Housing is there. We haven't been able to even go and visit it because of COVID, but the amount of extraordinary things that they're doing, just that I have somebody to rely on to say, does a house fix all the problems? And they say, mm, maybe not, so let's figure out some more steps. So bless you, bless you, bless you, for looking at the bigger picture for us. We are, we will get out there and do the, the hard work. Wear my tennis shoes and go. So with that, I, I'm so proud to work with David Kuhn, and you know him from long ago, but he's our chair, and he stepped in again when 2020 hit, so I'll let him speak.
I won't say too much. Thank you, folks, members of the board. The, the P-Bid's been a, when we first moved in 2010, we just knew that area needed it. And I remember Supervisor Serna helping us, and Supervisor Frost, and then the districts got all realigned and everything, but it's been, it's been transformational to see what's happened up there, and, and the great developments that have happened, and all the good things that we've done, reduce crime. 2020's kind of gone us a little backward, and I just want to echo what Chris Evans said, that it's, it's being widely broadcasted by our law enforcement and the DA, if we can get that Chronic Nuisance Offender Program back, which I don't know to what extent you would influence that. This is a judge's decision that put that in place, but to the extent we could work together to get that back, I think we could really clean up a lot of areas with just helping 10 or 15 people, because all of our problems are rooted in, frankly, about 10 or 15 people that are in the issues that you're bringing up, Supervisor Serna, that we just got to be able to do something. So with that, thank you again. We're here for the long run, and we just got approved for another 10 years, and we'll hope we can continue this partnership with you and help augment the, the burden that you folks are placed with, and, and that's what we're here to do, is to provide those services that unfortunately get left undone. And, and we're willing to assess ourselves and pay for that, and that's what we're doing. So thank you.
Thank you, Rebecca and David. And I think now that we're coming out of COVID a little, hopefully the Chronic Nuisance Offender Program can get back up and running. Supervisor Desmond.
So I, the way we're going, I guess I'll make a comment, since the 80 Watt is primarily in my district, and just thank you, you know, Rebecca, thank you for your passion, and I don't know if you heard it when you walked up, but I think I, I got the better end of the deal with the Chris Evans-Rebecca Evans partnership. But I know that, that 80 Watt District is probably one of the most challenged P-Bids in, in this county, and certainly needs a lot of attention and support from the county, and you certainly have my commitment to continue doing that with you, working with you in, in partnership, and helping, you know, bring some county resources to bear to assist you in your efforts, because you are doing wonderful things up there, and I look forward to all the, all the additional positive things to come. So thank you.
Can I just say, thank you, Officer Desmond, I almost said. Supervisor Desmond, for being, when we needed you to come in and check out some of the issues that we're having in the community, didn't hesitate. You got right out there with your chief of staff and walked right along with us and saw what we were seeing. So on behalf of the P-Bid, thank you for, you know, standing right next to us. Again, that is a hard thing to do, especially when you're getting hit from all different areas. We are your guard. So we stand tall next to you, and thank you for all you guys do, truly.
Thank you, Rebecca and David.
Bless you.
Madam Chair, there's a video with this P-Bid. Can I have Metro run that video?
I have a video. She has a video, and she forgot to tell us.
It's never as good as Corey's.
About that, Chris.
Whatever.
That's awesome.
How do I do it? What do you do? Oh, is I don't have to dance?
They'll do it for you.
Yeah, there you go. Yeah, there you go.
One street at a time. Absolutely. Thank you. Very nicely done. Thank you. You clap when you do a video, I guess. Okay, and last but not least is Rachel Taylor with Carmichael P bid.
I'm short. Hi again. It's been a while. My name is Rachel Taylor. I'm the executive director of the Carmichael Improvement District. You heard from me earlier, I have been the executive director for over two years now, since May of 2019. And before I became who I was, I actually ran another district similar to this in Oklahoma City. I'll tell you the difference between the two cities and the two districts is night and day. This job has challenged me in ways that I did not expect, and really, truly feel that I have grown as a person and as a director from this wonderful organization. And I would like to really thank the wonderful board that I have in place, because, you know, nothing against Oklahoma City, but I did not have that kind of support system. And I did not have it from my local jurisdiction as well. So I appreciate the county and all of the agencies, the law enforcement that we work with on a daily basis for supporting our organization and working with us to really make Carmichael a truly great community and greater than it was before we arrived. So 2020, as we all know, was a really rough year. And we're lucky in that we actually did not lose too many businesses in Carmichael. So we didn't see a huge reduction, thankfully. What we did see, though, in the first couple of months was a community that went very dark and very quiet, and it was scary in those first couple of months. A lot of businesses, you know, closed their doors, and a lot of workers, you know, were not present. And that resulted in a lot less foot traffic and a lot less eyes on the street. And I think that that's an important thing to bring up about those early months of the pandemic, in that we saw the potential for a lot of crime and vandalism happening in Carmichael. And that didn't occur because we had our security team on the ground. They didn't stop working. They were essential. And I followed orders and worked from home for a couple of months, and I was not out there every single day, but my security team was, and they kept in constant contact with me, letting me know about issues that they were seeing out there that needed help and assistance. And our sheriff's departments, our CHP POP officers were out there communicating with me constantly, and we were able to make sure that our businesses stayed safe. And we continued our maintenance services through the pandemic. And we continued to promote all of the businesses that were suffering through such a dramatic and unique time in our history. And we were just really grateful that we've made it through, and there's a lot of work left to be done, which is, as you heard earlier, part of what we're looking to do today with our renewal. We want to see the district around. We want to be able to increase our budget so that we can increase how much we help out in the community and what we're able to do for all of those small business owners. I started in this career path as a small business owner in Oklahoma City, in a unique district, arts district in Oklahoma City. I lost that business. I wasn't able to keep it afloat with my business partners. And at the age of, I think, like 31, I think I was, it was really heartbreaking. And I had put a lot into that business, and that was my life. And I didn't want to see that happen to anyone else. And that's, you know, when the opportunity was presented to me to run a business district and be the person that makes sure that businesses get everything, get all the help they need as much as possible from their community, I jumped at that chance to be that person. And that's really what keeps me going on a daily basis. I don't like the thought of a small business, or really any business, closing because of any circumstance. And if there's one small thing I can do to help make sure that that doesn't happen, then that's what keeps me in this job. So we have a lot on the horizon, obviously, with the renewal. And I'm happy to report, we have an install date for street pole banners that are going up. We have 23 of them going up along Fair Oaks Boulevard, Manzanita, Marconi, I believe one on Cypress and a little bit around in that area. We have to be a little delicate because of various construction projects that are happening. And so look for those after Wednesday, the 21st. We're going to be adding some really nice color and some great marketing to Carmichael, because we do believe that Carmichael is a great place where folks can thrive and live, build homes, build families, build futures. And we want to be able to continue to be a part of that narrative. I believe I have a video too, but if anybody has any questions, or we can play the video.
I would like to quickly highlight how our security team has done some amazing work. On the 21st of June, we had an incident in Carmichael that was incredibly frightening. And honestly, it kind of tears me up a little bit, because it's my community. And we had our security officer saw it happen, called it in first to the sheriff's department, which resulted in a very quick response from the sheriff. He also took heroic actions and saved the life of one of the individuals that was being assaulted during this terrible event. And of course, you know, we're very thankful for his bravery and for his service to the Carmichael community. Just last week, I received video from a business owner of a man kidnapping a woman and bringing her into his car. And I took that video and I sent it forward to my security team, and they identified him immediately as somebody that they had taken pictures of his vehicle license plate and had taken pictures of him and gotten a name just a few days before that. I sent that forward to, this was on a Saturday, mind you, before the holiday. I sent that forward to our sheriff's POP officers that Saturday. By Tuesday morning, they had found the individual and arrested him, and he is now in jail. So that kind of instant, I mean, those are just, you know, very clear and concise examples of what we, as a P bid, can do for the community related to crime and the things that, you know, are scary out there. And I never pictured myself in, you know, kind of playing a daily phone game with law enforcement and really placing myself into the conversation, but I'm glad that that's where we're at, because it's really obvious that, you know, our security and more eyes on the community is helpful and needed, so.
Was the woman okay?
I believe so. I still don't, there's a lot that is not known to us about that incident, because it is an active investigation, so, and there's a lot that I can't share.
Supervisor Desmond.
Thank you, Rachel. And I mean, you do such a wonderful job, and I appreciate you coming up, bringing up those two illustrations. I mean, what that shows is the relationships that you establish through the P bid with these other government agencies. And the work on that incident on June 21st, which everybody's aware of, the hit and run, and someone was killed, and there was a shooting. And I believe your security officer was actually at the Elks Lodge, helping someone there.
Yes, that's correct. That entire incident occurred at the Elks Lodge, and our security, you know, was present for that.
And just one more thing is, you know, I live so close to this P bid that if I was a business, I'd be getting assessed myself. So I'm obviously very familiar with what you do and the great work that you all do. And I know that the president of your board, I think, is in the audience, so thank you as well, Nick. But you also have a big involvement with Carmichael Heart, or you involve Carmichael Heart and the faith community in the P bid. And I think, just like with Melinda, that is so hugely important. Because I tell you, having them involved, you have as much influence on the law enforcement officers that you interact with as they do on the P bid, believe me, because of that, because of that perspective that you bring. And to allude back to what we talked about with Supervisor Serna and Supervisor Nattoli, we got to figure out a way to roll in DHA and DHS, you know, representatives in the county even more with the P bids too, because there's a lot more we can do and take advantage of new programs we have. But thank you for everything you do, Rachel.
Thank you. I do sit on the Board of Sacramento Self-Help Housing, the executive board, so that's helpful to have a foot on each side.
Thank you, Rachel. I just want to say, I think it's funny how God works. Sometimes in our darkest hours, we take a turn in the road and something really exciting opens up. So that's really neat to hear about, how your life went. And I also want to say, it's really great that, one of the things I love about the P bids is that place-making, you know, they create this situation where you have arrived in their community, which is like an anchor for economic, community and economic development. So we appreciate everything you all do, and thank you very much for that beautiful presentation. We do have some public comment on this item, and so I'll go ahead, if you are finished with your presentation, I'll go ahead and move forward with our public comment. And I wanted to make a notation, there's something getting caught on that podium, and I don't.
I see it, thank you.
Be careful you don't hurt yourself. Yep, you got it. Thank you. All right, so for our public comment, we have Michael Hansen, followed by Marilyn, oh, I'm going to say this wrong. I have you for 57?
59.
Oh, you wrote 59 here. Okay, I'll put you in 59, I'm sorry. And Bill Kors.
We heard from them earlier, did we?
He, I.
They were the Elks representatives.
Is he gone? He's not here.
I think they're coming back at 2:00. That was the Elks representatives.
Is Michael Hansen, okay, so.
They were together.
These say 57, so I'll hold them for afternoon, since they're not here. So with that, I believe, with that was just a presentation. And I want to thank everyone for being here to give us an update that we always look forward to it every year.
Good job.
Wish you all the best in the coming year.
Yep, good job.
Do we need a motion to approve? We don't need a motion to approve?
Do we need, yes, yes, we do. Sorry.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Supervisor Desmond and a second by Supervisor Kennedy. Please vote.
Unanimous vote. And just for the record, there were no public comments in the phone queue as well for that item.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, next item, please.
For item 58, I do need a motion to drop this item. This is the presentation of the upcoming Ansel Hoffman Restoration Project.
Okay, Chair will move.
Second.
Second by Supervisor Kennedy. Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
All right. Thank you. And our next item, please. And our last item of the morning.
Yeah, your last item is item 59, and that is the report on COVID-19.
Good afternoon, Board. Shivon Katari, Department of Health Services, and I'm here with Dr. Olivia Caserier, our county health officer. So I wanted to just say a few opening remarks, and then I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Caserier. It's okay. Can you hear me okay?
Thanks, no problem.
Yeah, so a few opening remarks. I just wanted to, first of all, acknowledge Dr. Caserier, who was recognized for an award, the Mort Friedman Legacy Award that the city of Sacramento gave her for her outstanding commitment to public service and outstanding leadership throughout the pandemic. So wanted to acknowledge her for that. I also wanted to just let you know that the rates of COVID-19, as we expected after June 15th, began to rise a little bit statewide and in Sacramento County. So we're also continuing our efforts to remain vigilant, to do whatever we can to put our mitigation efforts into effect and to increase the vaccination rates. And we do urge the community and the public to get vaccinated, because this really is our number-one tool that we have to continue to fight the pandemic. I also wanted to say that the CDC and CDPH have recently released school masking guidance. And what this means is the schools will reopen in the fall, and there will be universal masking requirements for students and teachers. And this is with the understanding that kids ages under 12 are not able to get vaccinated yet, so trying to keep them safe, and that schools can't actually conform to all the social distancing standards like you can in other settings. So schools will be required to mask when they go back. And so with that, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Caserier. Thanks.
Good afternoon.
Congratulations, doctor, on your award. That's wonderful.
Thank you.
And you look different today. You look, it looks nice.
Changed it up a little bit.
Yeah.
Since we're open now. Good afternoon, members of the board. So we're going to keep our comments really brief, but I just wanted to highlight a few things. As the Director has mentioned, we are seeing an increase in cases, and actually, from the update this morning, our case rate has increased to 900,000. And we have had, people ask what is going on, so I just wanted to show you some of the numbers from the data so that you could understand which areas we are seeing that are most affected. I don't have this in a PowerPoint, so I'm going to show it on the overhead, so probably we can switch places. So just a few. Okay, I have to turn that upside down.
The other way, Doc. The other way, Doc.
That's right. Okay, awesome. Thank you. So we do analyze the data, of course, to find out who's being most affected.
We can't hear you, I'm sorry.
Okay, sorry about that. So we do analyze the data to see who's most affected, especially compared to the trends that we've been seeing in the last 30 days. So this slide shows you by race, ethnicity, and this column just shows you the total cases over the period of time from last year and 2020. And then this column shows you for the last 30 days. And what I wanted to point out to you is that if you look at the African-American/Black, you'll see that in the previous months, it was, they were representing about 11.9% of our cases, whereas in the last 30 days, it's 22.1%. So that's where we are seeing the most concerning increase in cases. And when you add up for African-Americans and the Hispanic, it accounts for about 50% of our cases in the last 30 days. So that's where we are focusing, one of the areas that we're focusing our efforts on. Also want to show you, and my apologies that there's some writing on there to remind me of what I need to say. Okay, so on this one shows you by age, and what you see is age group 18 to 49 accounts for about 61.8% of the cases in the last 30 days. So again, this is where we are seeing our increase in cases with the young adults. And by ZIP code, the main ZIP codes where we're seeing cases is 95821. social distancing standards like you can in other settings. So schools will be required to mask when they go back. And so with that, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Caserier. Thanks.
Congratulations, Doctor, on your award. That's wonderful.
Thank you.
And you look different today. You look you're you look it looks nice.
Changed it up a little bit.
Yeah.
Since we're open now. Good afternoon, members of the Board. So we're going to keep our comments really brief, but I just wanted to highlight a few things. As the Director has mentioned, we are seeing an increase in cases. And actually, from the update this morning, our case rate has increased to 900,000. And we have had people ask what is going on. So I just wanted to show you some of the numbers from the data so that you could understand which areas we are seeing that are most affected. I don't have this in a PowerPoint, so I'm going to show it on the overhead. So probably we can switch places. So just a few. Okay, I have to turn that upside down.
The other way, Doc. The other way, Doc.
Okay, awesome. Thank you. So we do analyze the data, of course, to find out who's being most affected.
We can't hear you. I'm sorry.
Okay, sorry about that. So we do analyze the data to see who's most affected, especially compared to the trends that we've been seeing and the last 30 days. So this slide shows you by race, ethnicity, and this column just shows you the total cases over the period of time from last year in 2020. And then this column shows you for the last 30 days. And what I wanted to point out to you is that if you look at the African American slash black, you'll see that in in the previous months, it was they were representing about 11.9% of our cases, whereas in the last 30 days, it's 22.1%. So that's where we are seeing the most concerning increase in in cases. And when you add up for African Americans and the Hispanic, it accounts for about 50% of our cases in the last 30 days. So that's where we are focusing, one of the areas that we're focusing our efforts on. Also want to show you, and my apologies that there's some writing on there to remind me of what I need to say. Okay, so on this one shows you by age, and what you see is 18 to age group 18 to 49 accounts for about 60.1, 61.8% of the cases in the last 30 days. So again, this is where we are seeing our increase in cases with the young adults. And by zip code, the main zip codes where we're seeing cases is 95821, 95826, 95828, and 95823. And that, in terms of areas, it's South SAC, South Natomas, North Highlands, and Arden Arcade. I also wanted to show you this, and we will email this to you so that you're able to look at it more closely, because I know it's a little bit difficult to see here. But what we did was look at the seven-day rolling average of COVID cases by vaccination status. And the red line shows those that are not fully vaccinated. The green dotted line shows the total. And then the blue line at the bottom shows those that are fully vaccinated. And what you see is for those that are fully vaccinated, the case rate is about 200,000. Whereas for those that are not vaccinated, it's over 12. So one of the questions we've been asked is, what are we doing now that we're seeing the numbers? And when you see this kind of information, you can see that what we really need to do is continue with our vaccination efforts, especially, as I mentioned, for those communities of color that are contributing the largest percentage to our cases, and also especially in the underserved communities. And so.
Excuse me. Are those case rates just people that are have tested positive or deaths?
No, these are cases, not deaths.
Just cases. Okay. And Supervisor Serna had a question.
Thank you. So I had a similar question before you leave that slide. And hopefully, I'm not beating you to the punch. And with regard to your next slide, perhaps, but do we have a way to overlap the severity, known severity, whether it's measured in hospitalizations? You just answered the deaths question, but we all know that the vaccine is intended to ameliorate the the severity of the of the illness. So that that seems like an important data point.
Yes, the vaccination, all the vaccines that we have are very effective, especially for reducing severity of disease and reducing death. So our death count has not started increasing again, but that's because usually you see a time lag between the time that you start seeing case increase to the time about two weeks before you start seeing an increase in hospitalizations, which we're seeing right now, and then another two weeks before you start seeing an increase in deaths. But we do know that those that are vaccinated have much lower incidence of cases, of deaths, and also of hospitalizations.
So I understand the lag issue. When would we actually have an amended chart that would tell us, that would actually show, for instance, those that aren't vaccinated as the case rates hopefully go down, but if they continue to go up of those that are not vaccinated, those that are hospitalized, and hopefully, again, those that, you know, we don't want anyone to pass away here, but, you know, there is the possibility that those that are not vaccinated, especially with the new variant, are going to be, you know, are more subject to the possibility of succumbing to death. So at what point would we have that overlaid on top of this?
It takes a while for us to get the data from the hospitalized hospitalized cases, because we have to actually request every single report from the hospitals. And it usually takes a while before we get them. And that's the same case with the deaths, especially if the deaths occurred in the hospitals. If it's from the coroners, sometimes it also there's a delay before we're able to get those records. So right now, we have the counts, but that more in-depth data will take a while before we're able to get information about the vaccinations. But right now, what I can tell you is that. For the what we call breakout cases, which are cases that do occur in people that are fully vaccinated in Sacramento County, and this is for the entire year, we have a total of 208 cases that have had COVID-19, 19 hospitalizations, and three deaths.
Of those that are vaccinated?
Yes, these are among vaccinated.
And you have you don't have the similar data for the same time period for those that are not vaccinated?
Not at this point, but we can create that as well.
I think that's incredibly important, especially as it relates to how we continue to message the importance of vaccination. If you were to just take what you said, that that may actually have the contrary effect that we're looking for in terms of underscoring the importance of vaccination.
And and it's important, again, to to note, yes, the vaccines are very effective. For Moderna and Pfizer, it's over 95% effective. And then for Johnson &amp; Johnson, it's in the 80s. But of course, it's not 100%. So some people had asked, why are we seeing these breakthrough cases? But that's the reason why, is that because it is not 100%. But we know that they are effective. And one way that I know that they are really effective is we're not, even with this increase in numbers, we are not seeing outbreaks in the long-term care facilities and in prior surges. This was where we started seeing increase in the long-term care facilities with outbreaks and deaths.
So of those that that have been vaccinated and been hospitalized and or died, do we know what age cohort they belong to?
I do not have all of that detail, but we can definitely get that for you.
That's all very important, at least to me, because right now, that tells a very, very partial story.
Absolutely. And part of the reason, of course, is that, as I mentioned, it takes a while to get the hospital records, but we'll definitely provide you with what we have right now.
And if I can just add Supervisor Serna, some of this is in the Board report that was submitted. So of the total cases in Sacramento County, we've had 109,393. Of those, it's 200 of those are folks who have been vaccinated. So if that gives you a sense. And the death, total deaths have been 1,748 total deaths of those three are folks who have been vaccinated.
I understand that. I just can't compare it to those that aren't. That's the problem.
Got it. Thanks.
I think it's interesting to note, I'd be curious to know if we could get a report on the vaccine-related injuries so that we can understand the vaccine-related injuries as compared to our youth who are getting the vaccine, who who don't have a high incidence, who have almost zero incidence of symptoms with COVID, even if they get it. I think it would be interesting to have that data. I think we should be looking at that as well.
So what happens is if there if somebody has an adverse event after getting vaccinated, whether it's related to the vaccine or not, it is reported into a system called the VAERS Report, which is a Vaccine Adverse Event Report System. And it's important to note that that VAERS Report is open to the public. So it has information, people who are impacted can enter information into that, as well as doctors. That is the system that is used by the CDC and the FDA, that they then review and verify the information, request records, and then are able to determine whether this was related to the vaccine, or it just happened to occur right after the vaccine. Maybe someone had something else that was related. So that's some of the reports that you are hearing. And that's what happened with the Johnson &amp; Johnson when they decided to pause. And it's also what is going on with the review that's happening with the heart inflammation or myocarditis that has been reported in a few cases. I think it's important to note, though, that right now, the experts are still recommending that the vaccines should be given, because they save a lot more lives. And in Sacramento County, we have not had any of those reports to date.
Okay, thank you.
And just one last thing, I just wanted to, because one of the questions that we are asked, if you could. Thank you. One of the questions that we are asked is, what are we doing about the numbers? And just wanted to show you the activity that is going on in the community. And with the Board reports that we send you, I try to send you also a list of of all the clinics that we have. And want to give credit to both Sierra Health Foundation, that has been helping us with, especially being able to get money to the community-based agencies that we're working with, and also, of course, credit to the community-based agencies that have been helping us. And just to understand how much work goes into it, in many of these clinics, the CBOs actually have people going door to door to get people to come to the clinics. These clinics are smaller. They're not as large as the drive-through clinics where we had thousands coming in every day. These are maybe 30 to 50, or 100 to 400 people. But it is that kind of level of outreach that needs to be done in order for us to be able to get, especially to the underserved communities, and work to remove the barriers so that the people in these communities can also get vaccinated. Because once the vaccination rates goes goes up, then that will protect the entire community as well.
So the, in your opinion, is the Delta variant, there's people talking about how the Delta variant will stall the herd immunity. And is this vaccine effective for the Delta variant? And do you, in your opinion, feel the Delta variant will stall herd immunity?
So the Delta variant is more contagious. And from the samples that we're able to send to the state for sequencing, we know that it is representing a larger and larger percentage of our cases. And as you've heard on the news, it is becoming the predominant variant that is circulating. I do believe that it's it is contributing to the increase in cases we're seeing. But the good news is that the vaccine has been shown to be effective for the Delta variant as well. And so that is why our biggest push is to continue with the vaccination, especially for those communities that have lower vaccination rates.
Supervisor Desmond.
Thank you. And thank you, Dr. K. I appreciate this chart. And some of these clinics or vaccination efforts are one time, and some are, I think, ongoing. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And the other thing, are you seeing anything, as we've, and you alluded to this, these are no longer the large vaccination, all the large vaccination sites, we've drilled down more. Are you seeing some efforts or maybe kind of programs that are more effective than others in terms of of getting more, making more inroads into these these communities that are that are that are more hesitant to to get vaccinated?
I think, and actually, not just think, but what we have seen is that being able to use the service providers that already provide services in these communities, or people from the communities, it makes a huge difference. And also going to where the people are, and I'll just give an anecdotal story. We one time had some extra doses of vaccine. And so I went with one of our nurses to some of the homeless people that are around our building to offer them the vaccine. And at least four people did take the vaccine. But one story that stuck with me was this young gentleman who said that he had seen the vaccine clinics that we had at the building, but he did not feel comfortable. He didn't think he would be welcomed if he came in to where we were doing the vaccinations. And so he thanked us a lot that we actually took the time to go out and vaccinate. So we do have people who are actually also going to the homeless shelters and also to the those that are in the encampments for that very reason, because we know that for many of them, they don't feel safe going outside of the the area that they usually live in. And so we need to go to them. But it is hard work. Sometimes they go out and they get maybe four or five people. But it is important that we vaccinate, because these are still people that are vulnerable.
Absolutely. No, thank you very much. And that's just helpful for me, because as we look for other ways to get involved with community-based organizations, I think it helps to know what's most effective in terms of reaching more people. So thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Desmond. Supervisor Natoli.
And just a quick follow on Dr. Caserier. Earlier on the agenda, we had the receipt of the CDC grant. Again, thank you to all the staff involved with that. Is there anything you could elaborate on briefly? But as it relates to, that funding is available from this past June through June of 2023, and it was, or magnitude of $7 plus million. How would that supplement, particularly as you've talked about, you know, some of the not just harder to reach populations, but what we're seeing in some of the trends? And any idea how you'll put not just the money to use, but how you'll help deploy those resources to hopefully, you know, help address some of the, both the numbers that are trending, but also the vaccination rates?
Sure. So that CDC funding is partly for COVID, but it's actually broader. And what the aim of it is, is one is to build the infrastructure for public health, to actually be able to work on health disparities and health equity issues. And so part of that will be for our staffing to be able to have dedicated staff that can work. One of the things that has helped us with both the CARES funding and the ELC funding that we received, is that we were able to get dedicated staff that are out there with the CBOs, working with the CBOs, developing those relationships, both with the CBOs and the communities. The other also is because it's important that we have resources that we can provide to the CBOs, because many of them have been doing this work voluntarily, not being paid. But they can't sustain that. They also have bills that need to be paid. So being able to provide resources to them as well. It's also money that we use for things like interpreters. You're all aware of the community forum that we've had going on every two weeks. And we try to provide as many languages as possible. So being able to pay for that, being able to pay for interpreters to go out and be at our vaccination sites, and also assist, being able to pay two-in-one so that we have people who are available to help. So a lot of different areas that we're working on. And also, again, as a reminder of the proclamation that you had not too long ago, where you made the statement that racism is a public health crisis. We are also in public health, still working on that. So some of the money that we're receiving through that grant will be for us to be able to start working on some of the issues and working on some of the infrastructure. So our hope is that we will definitely be able to get back with, once we have developed our plan, to show you what we're doing.
I think that's giving that detail will be important, because that wasn't, it might have been alluded to in the staff report that accompanied the receipt of the grant, but you've just, you know, I think delineated and provided greater detail behind that, one, how it relates to COVID-related efforts, but also other public health elements and efforts. And so I think I would say I look forward to having, you know, further information to share with folks about how we intend to use those monies over the course of the next couple of years. Thanks.
Thank you, Supervisor Natoli. Supervisor Serna.
Yeah, just to follow up from what you just mentioned about the the resolution that the Board adopted, declaring racism a public health crisis. We all remember that one of the action items of that resolution was the establishment of a permanent racial equity cabinet. Will some of those grant proceeds be used specifically for startup of that?
I can maybe answer and then turn it over to CEO Edwards. I will just mention that one of the things that we are doing is participating with the countywide efforts on the racial equity policy cabinet. And to the extent that we can actually leverage these dollars for things like joint trainings and those types of things that can be done countywide. and those types of things that can be done countywide, we intend to do that.
And we might also have a budget request in September.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Serna. Please proceed.
That concludes our comments.
Oh.
Thank you.
Okay. I do not have any, I'm shocked that there's not more questions. I did have one question, because there was some news that came out around the schools. And what you said about the schools was a little bit different, I think, than the news that I had maybe, maybe I misunderstood. But I thought the message from the state was that they would defer to the local school districts to determine how they would manage the masking for children in the schools. And I wondered if that happens, then, at the local district level, or if that will be through the county, or how that, how that, because, do you know what I'm referring to? Okay.
So, yes, the state did release their guidance yesterday, and it called for continuing universal masking in schools. The enforcement will be at the local level, and we're going to be working very closely with SCOWI in terms of determining what that would look like, and also, for each district, what that's going to look like.
So it won't be at the, the districts will, it will be the county that's, coming down from the county, basically?
I think it would be better if we have it at the county level, so each district is not trying to decide how they're going to do it. But as I mentioned, we've had ongoing discussions with SCOWI, and we're going to determine how that is going to play out. And we've, of course, I think it's going to be very similar to what we've seen with the schools that were able to open during the last school year. So, but we'll work out those details with the schools. One main difference is that there will be no requirement for social distancing. So that's why there was the requirement that we continue with the masking as we try to get our numbers down.
So just to clarify, the masking requirement will be there for all schools in the state? The enforcement part of it, how school districts choose to enforce that, and what they'll do as consequences and whatnot, that will be left up to the school district, if that makes sense?
Oh, okay. Thank you. Because I misunderstood, I was trying to figure out why did that seem so different than what you said? So maybe that's where I misunderstood.
Apologies for the confusion. But the masking requirement will be required for all schools.
Okay. Thank you. Well, we do have some public comments. So I think, at this time, it's appropriate to move right into the public comments. And I will start with Marilyn Truex, followed by Nicholas White, followed by Mary Pat Polly, MD. And there's, for those of you that weren't here this morning, if you're called first, as you're, I'm going to call three at a time, and you can just kind of see that we have some markers up there. I'm just telling people, be ready as soon as this one's done. It's just to try to expedite, if you know what I mean. I don't know if I explained that very well. Hi Marilyn.
Hi. Thank you for your time today.
You have two minutes.
Thank you. I am here today to ask that the county take the step to make the choice for masks to be a choice for children in schools. Recently, the Orange County Board of Education did vote to allow children to come back to school with mask choice, based on the following criteria. K through children, K through 12 children represent the lowest-risk cohort for COVID-19. The clearest evidence of this is the COVID update that was given to us by the Public Health on June 15th. That shows here that zero to nine, we have two deaths, which is 1% of the children. From 10 to 19, we have one death, which is half a percent. So we are, they are just not the highest-risk group for the worst possible outcome. Social distancing is difficult in the classrooms, and it's not necessary and not recommended. Requiring children to wear masks during school is very difficult and may be harmful. Children play a very minor role in the spread of COVID-19. The teachers and staff are in a greater danger of infection and from other adults, including parents. Participation in any reopening of public education should be voluntary. These guidelines are not laws. They also did implement temperature checks, and asked them to frequently wash their hands and have good hygiene. California Department of Health also agrees that masks are not a one-size-fits-all, and does have exceptions to the rule. Under current guidance, that will not be recognized when we return to school next month. California has indicated, as recently as yesterday, that they will still require all K through 12 students to return wearing masks indoors. Even more alarming is the study coming out of Florida that was done by a group of parents. Of the six masks-
You have 10 seconds.
Five were contaminated with bacteria, parasites, fungi, including three with pathogenic and pneumonia-causing bacteria. Half of the masks were contaminated with one or more strains of pneumonia, one-third with meningitis-causing bacteria, and one-third with antibiotic-resistant bacterial pathogens. Less dangerous pathogens also included things that cause fever, ulcers, acne, yeast infections, strep throat, periodontal disease-
Can you please wrap up your comments?
And more. Thank you for your time.
Nicholas White.
Hi. How are you doing today?
Good. How are you Nicholas?
Not too happy, since I had to pay multiple dollars for parking, and waited until now for four and a half hours to be heard.
Thank you for your patience.
Sacramento County is 48% fully vaccinated, per the New York Times, and the state is 51% fully vaccinated. In five and a half hours, on the 13th of, let's see, when did my email go out? 13th, or 19th of June, we vaccinated 30 people at MLK Tech. And I don't understand why the county isn't taking in advertising a lot more, and isn't out knocking on doors to get people to the vaccination sites. We are taking in an emergency situation. We're in a pandemic. We have been for a year and a half, and the county seems to sit on its hands and wait for public health to take and give it reports on where vaccinations are happening, but the public doesn't know. And the public should be, should be known, should be known to the public of where it's happening and when it's happening. And the county needs to pay for, if they can't get the volunteers to go out to the communities, knock on doors and say, hey, have you been vaccinated? If not, here's a place where you can get vaccinated. And put a lot more money into vaccinations and make an emergency effort, instead of taking in hearing reports once a month about increases in cases due to non-vaccinations. Thank you.
Thank you. And we have Mary Pat Polly, MD, followed by Robert Meeger, followed by, I'm sorry, Gruna Trochet, MD. I'm sorry, I am, I'm sorry.
Glenna.
Oh, Glenna. Glenna Trochet, MD. I apologize for my misunderstanding of the writing. Hello.
My name's Mary Pat Polly. I'm a member of the Sacramento Sierra Valley Medical Society, and also a member of the Public Health and Environment Committee. I'm a physician, I'm also a wife, a mother, a grandmother, and all of these me's agrees with the gentleman ahead of me in supporting the public health efforts to stop the spread of COVID-19. First of all, the masking and mitigation efforts that we all do all the time. And secondly, most importantly, vaccinations. We're fortunate to have been able to access advanced technology that's been developed over the years to formulate very effective vaccines with a stellar safety record. My husband, my children, and I are totally vaccinated. As a physician, I've participated in multiple controlled clinical trials, and I've reviewed the data on the current vaccines. These are safe, they are effective. There have been some very rare complications that unfortunately have been emphasized a lot in the news. But we need to remember that the fate of the severe infection is far worse and much more frequent. And I don't think that that's emphasized enough in the community. I've seen the devastating effects of COVID, the progressive respiratory failure, the multi-organ failure, especially in children, the systemic diseases, the life-threatening blood clots, and in too many prolonged painful illness, the results in death are long-term sequelae. I see this virus as a virus that's been mutating largely because it can. There are too many unvaccinated-at-risk hosts.
You have 15 seconds.
I see each mutation as potentially more virulent than the next. And I ask, will this virus continue to mutate until it's something we can't control? I urge you to fully support the Sacramento County Public Health staff, the physicians and nurses, who are tirelessly working to get this message across, and to make vaccination a reality for every resident. And thank you for allowing me to comment.
Thank you. Next, we have Robert Meeger. Did I say that right?
No, it's Maher. It's Irish, so it doesn't make sense in English.
That's a beautiful name. And everyone loves the Irish people.
I'm a retired Sacramento pediatrician, and also a member of the Sierra Sacramento County Medical Society Public and Environmental Health Committee. After I finished med school, I began my pediatric residency at the Sacramento County Hospital, which later became the UC Davis Medical Center in about 1975. When I arrived, there were still rows of ironed lungs parked in the basement of the hospital from previous polio epidemics in Sacramento. In 1952, 60,000 children got polio in the United States. In 1955, first polio vaccine was licensed, and I was one of the first to try the experimental vaccine. By 1960, we'd dropped from 60,000 cases to 1,000 cases of polio per year. And by 1979, polio was gone. There was none, due to the vaccine. When I started my 30-year career of pediatrics with Kaiser in Sacramento in 1975, I would often see stillbirths and birth defects due to congenital Rovella infections. Other common childhood problems were hemophilia, pneumococcus, meningococcus, and measles infections. All of these came on very rapidly, and were hard to diagnose unless we had to do spinal taps and sepsis workups to figure out which kids needed intensive care and immediate antibiotics. In those days, I was doing spinal taps one or two times a week, and had one or two patients in the hospital every month. Residents today have hardly done any spinal taps in their three-year career, because those diseases have disappeared. And most of them have never seen the diseases I saw in the 1980s, 1990s. This dramatic reduction in serious childhood illnesses was all due to vaccines. And it's the same story with COVID. We strongly support use of vaccines and preventive measures to prevent spread of COVID until the rest of the population is immunized. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay. And Glenna Trochet?
Trochet, right.
Thank you.
Hello. I am a physician also, and I'm the current chair of the Public and Environmental Health Committee of the Sierra Sacramento Valley Medical Society. Currently, 99% of those who are hospitalized or dying from COVID-19 are not vaccinated. The raw data in the VAERS database that will trigger investigations of rare adverse events related to COVID-19 vaccines are no different than what goes on with all vaccines. But because of the pandemic, the public is seeing how science and medicine work in real time. It is not perfect. It can be messy. Sometimes the experts recommend one thing, and when they learn better, they change course. That is how science works, and why there is ongoing monitoring of all vaccines. Contrary to what many have said in these meetings, vaccines against COVID-19 are safe and effective. Although there are risks of any medical intervention, the risks of permanent disability and death from the disease are much higher than any risk from getting vaccinated. Most residents of Sacramento agree, and the evidence is, 64% of the population of Sacramento has had at least one dose of the vaccine. Until enough of our population is vaccinated, we will need to continue common sense practices, such as wearing masks in public, to protect ourselves and others who, although they may be vaccinated, may not have mounted a robust immune response because of age or underlying health conditions. I urge you to continue supporting the Health Department in its efforts to reach everyone with the offer of a vaccine, and to educate those who may have been confused by the misinformation they hear. We need to make sure that everyone is able to make an informed choice about their health and that of their family. And we receive, and-
You have 15 seconds.
And that they receive the vaccine that they want to have it. Thank you.
Thank you, doctor. Okay. Brenda Pandos, followed by Scott Kellerman, followed by Linda Dusick.
Linda.
Pardon me?
Linda Left.
Oh, Linda Left. Okay. Thank you.
Hello, board.
Sorry it was such a long wait.
It's okay. I'm in District 3, Rich. Oh, I need my glasses. Hold on.
Forgot your glasses?
I'm just reading glasses.
Familiar, familiar.
All right.
You have two minutes.
Okay. All I'm hearing about it is how safe the vaccines are from a disease that's 99.8 survivable. Are you getting different data than what's being put out on VAERS? Because the VAERS data is showing that this is the most dangerous vaccine we've ever had. Can you explain how the CDC and all the news headlines are saying it's all safe and effective? Safe in compared to what standards? If you have to coerce people to get the vaccine by bribing them with gift cards or lottery options, it seems like it's a hard sell, at the point that they have to be incentivized to get the vaccine. It sounds like there's more to this than what's being told. For any of us who've had surgeries, we have to sign informed consent, and you have to be told everything that might be happening to you. Are they doing this with the COVID shot? The Vaccine Adverse Event Reporting System, VAERS, is a national early warning system to detect possible safety problems in U.S.-licensed vaccines. VAERS is co-managed by CDC and the FDA. The VAERS accepts and analyzes reports of adverse events, possible side effects, after a person has received the vaccination. So I went to go download the data, and it's broken into years. In 2017, it had seven megabytes of data. In 2018, it was 10 megabytes of data. In 2020, it was 11 megabytes of data. But for 2021, which is halfway over, it's 87 megabytes of data. So I'm going to tell you, the latest release of the VAERS data includes 438,441 adverse events, including 9,048 deaths that occur after receiving the vaccine. So there's more deaths than any other federally recommended vaccine ever. I don't know about you, but that scares me. The true test will be this fall, when we have another resurgence. And I pray this vaccine is effective as promised. Thank you.
Thank you. And now we have Dr. Scott Kellerman. I know you're a doctor, because you have the white coat on.
Yeah, there's some docs back up in there, too. Thanks, my colleagues over there. Thanks for giving me the opportunity to speak. I'm Scott Kellerman. I'm a practicing physician, also professor of medicine at the University of San Francisco in California North State College of Medicine nearby Elk Grove. For the last two decades, I've been working with Abatwa Pygmies of southwestern Uganda, adjacent to the border of the Democratic Republic of the Congo. Now, I've always appreciated the United States has always bonded together to address any concern, respond to any threat, or share any joy. When immunizations were offered, I thought, great, no more problem with COVID-19. We have a vaccine that's incredibly effective, minimal side effects- We have a vaccine that's incredibly effective, minimal side effects, readily available. Some of the challenges I faced as a physician have been alternative science that has no basis in reality. One of the complaints I hear as a physician is, "This is a new vaccine. I'm not going to be a guinea pig." When I lived in Uganda, working with Abatwa Pygmies, there was an Ebola outbreak in nearby Congo. Ebola was killing 2/3 of the people who became infected. Now, the first gene-based vaccine was not for COVID-19, but is for Ebola. Now, despite the Congo being a war-torn region facing no paved roads, lack of transportation, no running water, no electricity, the vaccine was administered to people eager not to be infected with Ebola. Due to immunization six months ago, the Ebola epidemic was declared over. Similarly, the only way out of this pandemic is through immunizations. Immunizations have been called an act of charity. Not only does it prevent you from contracting COVID-19...
You have 15 seconds.
With a rare chance you become infected after immunizations, you're unlikely to transmit the virus to family and friends. Who among us does not want to protect our family and friends? Now, the Abatwa have an expression, "A gari hamae nigo agata goofa," which means, "It takes all the teeth to break the bone." Asked the Abatwa what it really means, and they said, "Perhaps in America, you have a similar expression. It means, 'United we stand.'" Sacramento, we can do better than this. Let's cease the bickering, and stand together in support of public health.
Can you please wrap up your comments?
Let's support our public health officer, Dr. Olivia Cassiri. Let's support immunizations in the process defeat a virus that knows no political affiliation and knows no boundaries. We'll come a same way. God bless.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that's the last of our public comments and the end of our morning session.
Oh, wait, Madam Chair, we have comments on the phone as well.
Oh.
Just a couple.
Okay, thank you.
Please transfer the first caller.
Sorry about that.
Hi, caller, please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
I am a citizen of District 1. You also swore an oath to uphold both the United States Constitution and the California Constitution. The preamble of the United States Constitution states, "It was formed to, quote, 'promote the general welfare and secure the blessings of liberty to ourselves and our prosperity.' The California Constitution states, 'All people are by nature free and independent and have inalienable rights. Among these are enjoying and defending life and liberty, acquiring, possessing, and protecting property, and pursuing and obtaining safety, happiness, and privacy.'" As a collective board, you have failed to uphold our constitutional oaths. First, there is no emergency pursuant to Government Code Section 8558 Subsection C, and as such, you all should have terminated it long ago, as required by Government Code Section 8630D. Ms. Cassiri focuses her presentation on the positivity rate and not the deaths of COVID, which should be the focal point. Additionally, she mentioned that unvaccinated individuals are more susceptible to COVID. So I have the right to choose to increase my morbidity by drinking alcohol, not exercising, smoking pot, and not getting a flu vaccine. So why is Dr. Cassiri and all the other physicians testifying today promoting an experimental shot for COVID where people have a 99.5% chance of survival? How is this different than the flu or people's decisions to take risks in other areas of their life? You all have an obligation to protect us and our children and to fight back against anyone that threatens our safety, including the CDC, Dr. Cassiri, and all of the testifying physicians today. You have the duty to hold them accountable...
You have 15 seconds.
...not to continue a non-emergency for money and power. According to VAERS, there have been almost 500,000 injuries, including myocarditis in children. There have been almost 10,000 deaths. Please end the emergency and stop pushing the COVID restrictions. They are completely unnecessary. Thank you.
Thank you.
Please send the next caller. Hi, caller, please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
Let's talk about the CDC Code 120140, where the Health Department, under set parameters, has authority to, quote, "Take possession or control of the body of any living person or the corpse of any deceased person." I understand the vast quantity of legislative actions that are piling down on the head of this board, the vast amount of information that you need to review before a meeting, how sick the agenda package is. You have a big job. That does not remove the responsibility, research what is being served to you as fact, whether from the public, county employees, doctors, and even the state. That does not mean that you have an excuse for not paying attention to things that are contrary to the Constitution of the United States. What we, the people, see as the value of human freedoms being stripped as we are marched towards a medically apartheid state. Any doubt that is true, at the start of this meeting, cross-right instructions that those not vaccinated must wear a mask to be included. Those that cannot wear a mask do not have a reason to wear it. What medical status requires that not vaccinated be deemed... It doesn't matter if an individual does not believe in it. You have to wait for the ingredient list to be published. What's to wait until three years of research has occurred to grasp a possible side effect? Do they have PTSD complaints and concerns covering? This is a human rights restriction that one can currently only be resolved by waiting for and accepting the latest好消息. That right thing is a condition whether a rule to attend an in-person meeting, not have to wear a mask at work, or to take your child to the local place. We therefore are witnessing violations of the Nuremberg Code of 1947. The code our health officers are operating under applies as safer rules to government. Nowhere in the Constitution do people authorize government to do this thing. The role of government is to uphold and preserve the Constitution. Again, we may disagree 100% on whether COVID-19 is as virulent as we are told, whether the Greek Alfa Vahid variant is wild type or vaccine-simplication, whether masks work or that...
You have 15 seconds.
...that nobody benefits whatsoever concerning government. I saw this quote, "People parroting the platitudes of the state do not realize it, but they drive them towards the most unsafe conditions that humankind has ever experienced. When you become fearful, you challenge the tyrannical supervisors, either you are for liberty or you are against it."
Can you please wrap up your comments?
All done.
Thank you.
Okay, and that concludes the public comments from the phone queue.
Okay, that was a long morning. We have about 45 minutes for closed session and 15 minutes for lunch. This meeting is in recess till 3:00 PM. Everyone, welcome back to the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors' afternoon session. Today's date is July 13, and this session is hereby called to order, and I'll ask our clerk if she'll please call the rule and establish quorum.
Yes, good afternoon, Supervisors Desmond Frost...
Here.
Kennedy...
Here.
Natoli...
Here.
Serna...
Here.
And you have a quorum.
Thank you. And just to, I just want to thank those, there were several people. I think just about everybody had to wait way too long this morning, and I want to thank everyone for their patience. We're rearranging our afternoon session just a little bit, and we'll be taking Item 61, followed by 60, and then we'll go back to Item 54. Excuse me. Sorry about that. So, if the clerk would please read Item 61.
Yes, Item 61 is the resolution to rename the Bark Park in honor of Roy Markham.
Good afternoon, Mr. Dickinson.
Good afternoon, Chair Frost and members of the board. I want to thank you for hearing the resolution I'm about to plead for. I'd like to thank Anna Edwards, too, for her go-ahead, so to speak, to put this on the agenda today. What we're trying to do is, of course, name the dog park that's situated in front of the animal control shelter right now in honor of one of our previous employees, Roy Markham, who tragically lost his life in the line of duty back in November of 2012. Roy was a 14-year veteran of the county employment, a 12-year animal control officer. He was well-liked by everybody in the department. He had a very, very large sense of humor. He knew how to talk with people in any given situation. He not only served the community, but previously to animal care and regulation, he served his country in the United States Air Force as well. So he gave a lot of himself to the communities that he lived in. He paid the ultimate sacrifice on that day in November 2012. He was more than just a colleague to many of us. He was a friend. We waited a long time. His family and friends have long awaited this day to have the park named in his honor, and I'm here today to ask the board members to vote on that and make it happen, please. Thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
Thanks, Dave.
What a beautiful tribute to a precious soul, to not only the family and his colleagues, but to the community. Thank you, Dave. I know that Supervisor Natoli wanted to say a few words.
Yeah, certainly don't want to delay voting on the resolution in appropriate time. Certainly would intend to make the motion that we approve the resolution. I want to thank Dave Dickinson certainly for his presentation today, and I know Tina and the family is here and that have waited a long time, and unfortunately, this got bottled up in the system, so to speak, but certainly Tina, on behalf of the Markham family and friends, has been persistent, and so was Dave as well. So I want to thank Dave for hanging in there, because I know you've been very supportive and certainly I've indicated my support for this some time ago. I want to just say, too, I had the opportunity during the time that Roy was a field officer to do a ride-along many years ago, in fact, probably 20-plus years ago now. And I'll never forget, because it was a, I don't know if it was a Thursday or Friday evening, and we went from, it was summertime, probably, July, August, and we went from call to call to call. We were on the north side of the river, and we were out in the Alberta area, and then we headed out towards Rancho Marietta, and we got called off, and we ended up in South Sacramento. And of course, traffic during rush hour isn't any better if you're in a county vehicle than not, but Roy had a really good understanding certainly of what his role was, and I remember going to, after dark, we had a couple of calls in South Sacramento, and I went to a house where folks had just walked away. They were tenants or renters and had left and left the animal there. Roy was familiar with the neighborhood, and I remember he had this gentle approach. Certainly, he had a sense of duty, but he also had a real good approach, and we went into the backyard, and there was a dog that obviously had been neglected, was scared. That was the only home that the dog knew, but I remember Roy was able to coax it into his grasp and obviously bought it back to the shelter, and hopefully it found him a good home. But I know he was a very caring person, certainly, as Dave said, with a lot of emotion, and I know that's in this room as well, with the family. You know, was killed in the line of duty, and that actually occurred in the city of Cal, who we have had a contract with, as Dave well knows, and so has the Markham family, and responded to a call there that otherwise would have been fairly routine and ended very tragically. And I know that the community certainly turned out in droves following Roy's death to honor him, and in fact, I think at the time, he was one of only three animal care, animal control officers in the state of California had died in the line of duty. And again, I know that there's certainly sadness, even as we're approaching nine years since that time, but I think this is an appropriate honor and recognition. The Bark Park is a place for community enjoyment, certainly our Bradshaw Shelter location, and again, I think it will be not only very fitting, as outlined in the resolution, again, thank you, Anna and Dave, for moving this forward, but I think will be a constant reminder certainly to the Markham family and to the friends and to his fellow colleagues who either have continued to serve with animal care or will serve in the future or have retired, but also to the community about, you know, to tell us a story about someone who really cared about his work and cared for the people and the animals of this community, and obviously tragically died in the line of duty, but I think it's a very fitting tribute, one that is long overdue. I know Tina and I have talked on the phone a couple of times over the years, and again, didn't take very long for Ms. Edwards to make sure this got advanced to the board. Again, thank you, Dave. Dave had to come out of retirement just to come do this presentation, so I don't know how long it took, but, and I don't, and again, Madam Chair, I don't know if the family wishes to say anything, but certainly I wanted to just add those comments. Again, it's very fitting, very appropriate, and I'm very supportive of the resolution.
Thank you, Supervisor Natoli. And I do have Supervisor Serna in the queue to speak, but I also will be inviting the family, if you'd like to come up and say a couple of words. We'll start with Supervisor Serna.
I'll keep my comments brief, Madam Chair. Certainly want to echo the words of my colleague, Supervisor Natoli. I won't ever forget that day in 2012 as a relatively new member of this board, and the memory that strikes me most about that day was how sobering it was to realize not just the breadth and depth of this organization in terms of the number of people that are in public service to the community of Sacramento County, but for those aspects of county service delivery that literally can amount to life and death. And it really gave me pause at the time to think carefully about the responsibility that we have as a board to make sure that, you know, our employees are as safe as possible, given their line of profession. But I do share all the sentiments that Supervisor Natoli has reflected upon. I want to also extend my gratitude to Dave and certainly share his emotions today about this appropriate naming, and I also want to thank our CEO, Anna Edwards, for the work that they've put into this. And I don't know if it's the spirit of Roy or not, but I couldn't help but notice that there is a canine, I believe, in the audience that just ran into the aisle here as soon as the item was introduced. So I don't know if that's Roy in chambers with us to some degree, letting us know that his spirit is still lingering and his memory still is part of that of the county family, but just want to reflect on what he meant to me and to this large organization. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Serna. And I thought I would just add a little bit about Roy Markham. He was a Sacramento native. He grew up in North Highlands and Citrus Heights. He served his country in the United States Air Force and later returned to serve his hometown community as an animal care officer for 12 years. And on November 28, 2012, Roy Markham was killed in the line of duty. And so I'm excited to support the renaming of the park. I think it's a wonderful tribute to a friend, and at this time, I will invite public comment. We have a couple of people that have signed up. Tina Markham and Diane Harris. Is it Ryan Harris? So this must be Tina.
This is Tina.
Hi, Tina.
Good afternoon, board members.
Hi, Tina.
Thank you to the people who came today to support this for the family. One thing I need to ask of the board before I thank you is, my family and I would like to donate a bench in that park, so if you could kind of scribble that in, so we don't have to go through the process, again, I'd really appreciate it. Roy was a good man, and I think he deserves this. My family, his friends, and his coworkers are very appreciative. It's been a long road to get here, but we're here, and we're appreciative of what you're doing in his memory. I think it's important that communities remember people, and Roy was a great guy to remember. So I want to thank you for your time and everything that you're doing today for me and my family.
You're very welcome, and thank you for being here, and thank you for your patience for waiting so... for waiting so long. And Ryan Harris. Oh, I'm sorry, Ryan, I had number 61 written on here, but that's not 61, so, I'm sorry, we'll get you in just a second, Ryan.
Madam Chair, if I could just ask, again, I think that, and hopefully, the county executive general service was presumptuous, assuming we were going to do this unanimously in just a few seconds, have we ordered a sign, and we can order a bench right along with it, and when all that's ready to be unveiled, certainly maybe do a dedication out there at the site, I think it would be very appropriate.
That's a great idea.
Allow Tina to invite family and other friends to join for a reception, I think it would be entirely appropriate, so.
Agreed.
Okay, so, okay, we'll work with the family on that.
Thank you Supervisor Natoli. So I guess we need a vote on this one.
Well, could I suggest that this is a very extraordinary consideration, so we haven't done this probably in years, but maybe have a unanimous motion and second of the board, and just.
Can you do that?
Well, council says yes, there you go.
Oh, my goodness, that's exciting.
So I would say that, so the motion made by all five, second by all five, and then allow the clerk to see if there's any dissent.
That's wonderful.
Did we all say so moved at the same time?
Yeah, one, two, three. So moved. Seconded.
Aye.
You going to call for a vote, or you want to punch it up, or you want to?
Let me punch it up, I think it might be easier, and visible would be nice.
Okay, all right.
And then I'll call it. And that's a unanimous vote. Thank you.
Very good.
Okay, next item, please, we'll move to item 60 next. Okay. Item 60 is the presentation of resolution recognizing Dave Dickinson upon the occasion of his retirement after 20 years of service with Sacramento County.
Thank you. Dave, at this time, I guess I would like to invite you to approach the podium. I'm going to say a couple of words. I think they say, these are, it's hard to say goodbye when someone's retiring, but in your case, it gives me great honor to pay tribute to your dedication and your service to the county. And I'm going to read the resolution recognizing Dave Dickinson upon the occasion of his retirement after 20 years of service with the county, whereas Dave began his career with Sacramento County on December 3, 2000, and whereas Dave became the Senior Animal Control Officer on February 23, 2003. In July of 2010, Dave was appointed interim director of animal services and permanently became the department head of animal care and regulation on April 22, 2012. Whereas, under Dave's leadership and direction, animal care and regulation has prospered, and accomplishments are many, including improving animal life release, live release rates from 41.2% in 2011 to 86.2% in 2020, as well as continuing to change animals' lives for the better. And Dave also dedicates his personal time as a board member for Team Bradshaw, the shelter's nonprofit affiliate, whereas Dave's unforgettable leadership, wisdom, and dedication will be remembered and missed by staff and volunteers and the shelter community. Dave's unforgettable leadership, wisdom, and dedication will be remembered and missed by staff and volunteers. Dave will now have time to enjoy his hobbies, including fixing old cars, fishing, camping, hiking, gardening with his wife of 26 years, Linda, and their children, sons Eric and Spencer and daughter Darlene. Now therefore, be it resolved that the members of the Board of Supervisors of the County of Sacramento, State of California, do hereby recognize and congratulate Dave Dickinson on the occasion of his retirement after 20 years.
Dave, I'm going to invite you to say a couple of words to the audience.
Just a few words. It's been an honor to be a member of the employment of Sacramento County, been very good to me over the years, allowed me to raise a family, put kids through college. I really didn't know what I was getting into with animal control and care, had very little experience, except for personal experience with animals when I first started, had 4-H and had animals of my own, but it was an eye-opening experience, to say the least, learned a lot about animals, I learned a lot about people who are dedicated to taking care of animals. It's a different, if I could say, it's a different breed of people who are very compassionate and devoted to the animals in all those communities that we serve. I thank the board for all the support that you've given us over the years. Our department has grown quite a bit since I started in 2000, from the old Kiefer Shelter. Things changed dramatically when we moved into, in 2009, into the current, what was then a state-of-the-art facility that we're in now at Bradshaw. I think it still is state-of-the-art, I haven't seen any shelters built since then that are any better. Typically, they're all, you know, patterned after ours, so to speak. I had a good long run there, I'm proud of the things that I've done, and I'm proud of the success that the shelter has had over the past number of years. Again, I just want to thank you for the opportunity, and I'm looking forward to enjoying retirement. So, thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
I just want to say that I can't, I haven't been here very long, only about five years, but I do know that it seems like just about every year, there's one supervisor who is fighting for animal shelter and advocating for more funding, and I know that you got a lot done, considering you didn't have this, you know, as many resources as you hoped at times, so that's a tribute to your leadership, and we want to thank you for your commitment to the county, it means a lot to those of us that serve on the board.
Thank you.
Chair Frost, I'd like to make just a brief comment, I'd like to make a brief comment as well. So, I have only known Dave for a short period of time in this role, but known him for a while as a colleague when I was a department head, and Dave's emotion today around Mr. Markham and his retirement reminds me of emotion that he displayed many, many years ago, when talking about his care and love for the animals under his care. So, I just want to thank you for your service to the county, and wish you really wonderful time in retirement.
Thank you.
And we also have Supervisor Natoli, who'd like to say a couple of words.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for your kind words, Supervisor Frost, and certainly Ann, for your comments regarding Dave, and I've had a chance to know him throughout his career in Sacramento County, certainly in different roles, you know, in different roles that he held out the shelter, but I think that, as you said, Ann, he's a man of great compassion and empathy, obviously, it's not easy when you're not only serving people, but you have a very vulnerable population as relates to the animals that come in, you know, beaten, broken, afraid, a lot of different situations, where either carelessness and/or, you know, just other circumstances of people's lives, they'll lend themselves to, at times, our shelter being, you know, filled, but also all the support they receive, hundreds and hundreds of animals being in the care and custody of the county of Sacramento, and I think as Dave recited, certainly during his tenure with the county, we've seen some remarkable changes, and again, I certainly want to thank, you know, this board in its current makeup, but previous boards, because again, even through thick and thin, and there were some thin times, Dave certainly recalls, as do others, when the recession hit, we were, you know, slicing very deeply into budgets and personnel, and certainly to services and programs for the people, and certainly for the animals of our community, but I think, again, it really is a tribute to his work and his ongoing care and consideration, obviously, and overseeing, you know, a staff of several dozen, but also all that community interface. And, you know, I can say in all honesty that I know that, you know, Dave certainly took to heart his care and the concern for animals, even at times under some pretty overwhelming circumstances, and, you know, he could tell you, as I'm sure others could, you know, when you're faced with, you know, this inflow of animals on a daily basis, and responding to the myriad of calls in the community of, you know, and people like Roy and others who are responding to those calls, and you don't control by any means the, not only the flow of animals, but then you're dependent upon all your support teams, your fosters and your adopters, and your support organizations, or rescue organizations to help you, along with the general public, to get animals out of the shelter alive, and to get them healed, and, you know, find good homes for them, and it's a never-ending effort, but one obviously that he took very seriously, and I know I had a chance to visit with him and Linda a week or two ago at the reception they had for him at the shelter, and I want to just publicly express my thanks to you, Dave, for your good work. Again, I know you're a very good and decent man, and someone who's cared deeply, and put up with, I'm sure, some bothersome calls from me, because as much as I may have advocated, along with other colleagues in this board, for, you know, support for the shelter, I certainly have taken a keen interest in it, and have never hesitated to call Dave in his role as director about issues that may have cropped up, and/or, you know, concerns that either have been expressed to me, or that I may have held as a representative on this board relative to animals, or to some interface with the public, but all that being said, I want to wish you an enjoyable and long and happy retirement, and I know that we had a chance to visit, that, you know, you've got plans as a family to do some things together, but thank you for your service, you've made a big difference, and I think you can, just as others have said, you know, take great pride in the accomplishments, and again, it was been part of a bigger team, but you were the leader for the past nine years, or actually going on 11 years in the interim capacity, and I thank you for your service to this county, to its people, and certainly to its animals, and again, all that good will continue to ripple throughout this community for generations to come, so thank you so much, Dave, and congratulations on your retirement.
Thanks, Don.
One more. Why not? Hope you enjoy every minute of retirement. Oh, Supervisor Kennedy.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I can't top what Supervisor Serna said, I just wanted to personally say that I think I've known Dave more as a customer than I have as a supervisor, and, you know, the ethic that is out there, and the processes and the facility, I will put that up against any facility in any city or county in the United States, and I give you tremendous amount of credit for that. Just the environment out there that you have established, you know, you've done a tremendous service to not only animals, and I don't know how you do it, I mean, my wife always told me, you know, she didn't want me going to law enforcement because it was dangerous, and she wouldn't let me do your job because I have 30 cats and dogs. But, you know, you have saved countless four-legged lives in this county, probably as many as anyone ever will, so thank you for your service, I appreciate it, and enjoy your retirement.
Thank you.
Okay, we do have one off-agenda this afternoon, do you want to take it now? And I do want to make a comment regarding the comments in the morning, because there's a note here to me that says that this person notices that there were others given multiple times to speak, and I wanted to ask our clerk if she would mind clarifying that I understand this correctly, but if you sign up for an item to speak, and I always read this when I first start the meeting, if you sign up for an item, you're speaking to that item. And this morning, we did have one person who spoke over multiple items, and I think in my, I was perceiving that she was touching on those items, but I will be watching in the future to make sure that we're doing, you know, people understand, it's, you know, the public comment is if you have a comment regarding that agenda item, that's what you're speaking to, and really, we, you're not allowed, you're not supposed to speak to more than that item in your allotted time, so if there was an impression that I gave someone some more time than I gave others, I did not do that purposefully, and I will watch more carefully in the future, but please know, if you're giving public comment, you, on an item, you're speaking to that item, unless you're, you know, just giving off-agenda comments, which is, Mr. Harris, you have signed up to speak, so you may approach, and you will have two minutes.
Quickly, I was also signed up to speak for the Bark Park, but now the family's gone, and I'm curious as to why I was not allowed to do that, again, with me and me only. I believe it's on there.
I have.
You did say my name, too.
I have that you were signed up for item number 63, which is not the park's item, so I think there, and you have a sheet here that's signed up for several items on one sheet, and the clerk had indicated, you know, I don't know, it's crossed out, so I think there was confusion about what you were signing up for.
There was no confusion. I signed up for everything, the clerk told me to change it, because I won't be able to address morning ones, I said leave everything on there as is, so if there's anything changed, it wasn't for me.
Okay, my recommendation is.
Take a picture of it before I submit it?
No, if you have an item that you wish to speak to, write that item down, and write a new card for every single item.
Can you hand it to the lady, so I could see where that item was overlooked at? Because I could show her on there where I put that document number.
I think what we'll do is have you go ahead and do your public comment.
Well, the family's gone now.
Yeah, I mean, I think, do you have a public off-agenda comment?
I have an off-agenda comment, yes.
Okay.
And I had an on-agenda comment, you even called my name for it.
Okay, why don't you speak on the on-agenda comment first?
That's what I'm saying, the family is now gone, so it's not going to hold as significant a value as if they were here, so I don't know why you didn't initially say my name.
I think there was a misunderstanding.
The two you had interrupted it.
I think it was a misunderstanding.
There's a lot of misunderstandings when it comes to me, that's part of why I'm here.
Hey, do you want to make a comment regarding item 11?
I would love to make a comment, thank you.
Okay, you have two minutes.
All right. My off-agenda comment is going to be a letter that I said I'd read.
Excuse me, are you speaking to item 11? Are you speaking to item 61?
Yeah, we can speak to item 11. I'll use item 11.
Item 11? Well, item 11 was this morning, let me see where we're at here. Just, please proceed.
Which would you like me to proceed with?
Go ahead.
Madam Chair, may I just clarify for the record?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Mr. Ryan, I'm sorry, I don't have your last name in front of me, but the... Mr. Ryan, I'm sorry, I don't have your last name in front of me, but the consent matters, the public comments for consent matters has been closed. Also, for off-agenda, we close those as well. We don't typically reopen them in the afternoon.
Can you?
But she's doing that for you. And then I also wanted to put on the record that if there was a misunderstanding when we were handling your speaker slip this afternoon or this morning, it is not the chairperson's fault. We probably just had a miscommunication because I am working with staff to help me to coordinate all of that. And so, I apologize. So, for item 11, that's already closed, and you could submit a written comment, and we'll get it into the record. For the item that we just missed for 61, because this is being recorded, I would encourage you to go ahead and do your 61 comment for two minutes and then move on to your off-agenda, which she is graciously allowing you to make a second off-agenda comment.
And item 61 is the dog park.
Correct.
The renaming of the-
The Bark Park.
Yeah.
Do you have something that you want to show for the dog park?
No, I do not.
Is that something different?
No, I just wanted to, to the family, but I'll skip over it now. It's fine. I will just, it was an encounter, I had known the officer. My father is a retired law enforcement officer well, as well, or my adopted father is a retired law enforcement officer as well.
Okay, sweetie, go ahead. Why don't we go ahead and take your comment about that?
You know, I'm getting emotional about it right now, just given everything that's going on. And a lot of people that are in attendance, I don't want to confuse them. So, I'll just move on to the off-agenda topic.
Okay. I'm sorry if there was a misunderstanding, and I thank you for clarifying that, Flo. Okay, please proceed.
All right. Do I move to this one? Because I was told that's where I put my papers to put on display.
Flo, he wanted, yes.
And then can I get that shot clock reset when I do start?
Yes, you can.
All right.
Of course. Happy to.
I'll be showing a few items right here.
Okay, just, I'll help you.
Okay.
Let me, let me get it set up.
That's the order that they go into. Okay.
Let me know when you're ready to start.
Do I read up this one or do I read up this one?
Read here and just tell me when to-
When to go, okay. All right. So, yeah, it's off-agenda. However, the man is on-agenda, number 11 on the docket. I just wanted to give some more information on who he really is and how he treats people. This is a letter that he wrote about me personally. And it says, "The department required Ryan Harris to submit a fitness for duty evaluation because it is reasonably believed that he possesses a threat. As I am sure you can appreciate, the county is trying to protect the safety of the employees at East Commerce Facility, including employees represented by UPE. The county's course of action in regards was reasonably given the seriousness of the situation. Indeed, Mr. Harris' own healthcare provider, Kaiser, was so alarmed that by his actions 814, they made a decision to breach his patient confidentiality and contract law enforcement authorities on what is known as a tear-off, tear-off warning." If you look right here, you'll see Kaiser did not make a tear-off warning. So, yeah, that's that first slide. We're going to go to the next one. Says, "During the phone calls reported that Mr. Harris had a weapon and intended to kill someone due to the severity of his past, he, department was on scene and neutralized the situation. It's my understanding that Mr. Harris was placed on 5150 hold by Kaiser." Sorry, that last one, that previous one on it, there'll be another one. It said that, I've never been on no 5150 hold as well. In response to the incident, Sacramento County constructed a threat assessment of Mr. Harris, determined that he is a high violence. Well, I'll just explain those since I'm running out of time. In here, he says that I was involuntarily hospitalized. You could clearly see that I wasn't. We'll go to the next one. Never been involuntarily hospitalized, said I tried to escape it. He said, "The doctor's letters I submitted were too vague." This is a letter from the program manager, one of his employees, where it says, "We are requesting pretty much a vague letter, a letter stating he is or is not able to return to work." And in here, it says, "He submitted a vague letter that says he is able to return to work." It wasn't vague, it was exactly what was requested of me. Here's another one stating that, "I've never been on 5150 nor been evaluated, and I see my time is up. As I mentioned in the morning, I'll be back every time until this gets cleared. Even if I lose my job, I'm still coming back to help the next person." Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. And then, I don't know if we could give you guys copies, but I bought copies for all you guys as well. One, two, four, there's five. All right, I'm going to give you a fifth one.
And I'll have to make a copy for my records for the-
I've got a copy for you, too.
Okay, great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do you have one extra copy?
I've got plenty of extra copies. If you guys want extra copies, too, I've got extra copies.
Oh, yeah, no, it'll, the pub will have to get another one.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. And at this time, we're moving to number 54.
Okay. Item 54, Carmichael Property and Business Improvement District. This is the public hearing to renew the district and levy assessments, or, excuse me, the public hearing to renew the district and levy assessments was scheduled at 9:45 a.m. today, and this item was continued to 2 p.m. to tabulate assessment ballots and take final actions to renew the district and levy assessments for fiscal year 2021-22. Again, the environmental determination is exempt.
Good afternoon again, members of the board. Dorothy Codani with County Engineering Division. And to first follow up on these Elks Lodge property that we discussed this morning. So, we evaluated this property and found that a re-categorization of the property would be valid. And so, therefore, placing it instead of in the commercial category, the multifamily, private, tax-exempt category, that would, as Mr. Davidson said in the morning, decrease their annual assessment by a third. And so, with a $2,100 reduction, it would then have their annual assessment be a little bit over $4,200. And that is the recommendation that staff would be, is making, and there would be no additional action needed by the board to follow through on that. So, therefore, unless there's any other questions from the board, we would ask that the board take action on the two resolutions. The first resolution does have some fill-ins that I would need to read in for the record. And the renewal was approved with a majority, majority vote.
Thank you, Dorothy. We do have two people signed up for public comment that left over from this morning, but we also have Supervisor Desmond in the queue. Please.
Really quick, would you mind, thank you, Dorothy. And I really appreciate you making that calculation and including that in your staff recommendation. That's very helpful. What was the percentage of approval? Can you give me a little more specifics?
Yes, no, absolutely. And actually, that'll be in the resolution, but it was 66% in favor of the renewal and 34% obviously in opposition. And so, we had 120 ballots that were returned, and that's about 46% of the assessments or of the properties in there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see anyone else in the queue, so I'm going to go ahead and move to public comment. We have not closed our public hearing from this morning.
You want to reopen the public hearing?
Oh, we want to reopen the public hearing. Okay, public hearing is now reopened, and I'll call Michael Hansen and Bill, of course.
My call first. Thank you.
I'm calling you both because I don't know which one wants to speak first.
I'll go ahead. As I stated, we handle and we are already paying for onsite security. We pay our sheriffs for security, and now we're being forced once again to pay. We've already invested $35,000 in this program that we haven't received any benefit since its inception. It's not helping us move any, it's not helping us move forward. It doesn't provide what we need at our lodge or in our community or in our area. And so, anyway, that's enough of that. Do we have the right to go back and appeal and ask to sit down, review these? Because we hadn't prepared for, say, can we sit down with Supervisor Desmond? Or where do we go from here? Because we're, this is a-
As near, looking at, as near as I can tell, there are two things, three things. One was reduction in the rate. However, it's still a rate, and it's still doing a slow drain of lodge resources. Second is the removal, excising the wart on the end there. And the third is to reduce the timeline on this so that we're looking not at 10 years, but it's something significantly shorter. I believe each of those options are available to the board for this particular effort. And that will allow us, having learned the process, more than we intended to.
Right, right.
And we've learned the process, and we can address that going forward.
I did have one other thing. Is there, outside of the CID dysfunctioning, is there supervisor audit oversight of how their other programs or this program as well as the other programs are handled, as well assessed every six months, or is it every two years? Because, you know, so that's a question. I don't know where we go for that answer. How we, you know, we'll be a part of that because, you know, we deal with this all the time. But how is this CID assessed as far as their progress? We've invested five years and hasn't benefited us, you know, and other people. But is there anything that the board does with this?
Well, I can tell you, this morning, we had our annual report. Each of the P-bids report annually. And when they report, they bring statistics on their activities. So, that's a, generally, that's our way of looking at it. Supervisor Desmond, did you have something?
Well, thank you, Madam Chair. And I was going to add, I mean, obviously, your P-bid, they hold open public meetings, regular meetings, so you have an opportunity to participate in that way. And then, as Chair Frost said, every year, you have the opportunity to participate in the meeting where they present their annual report, if you have issues. So, I think there are avenues for you to articulate your concerns about how a P-bid is being run or the services you're receiving.
Right. So, they just presented this audit today. So, we never got a chance to see it before? Comment, review, analyze it, and give our experience within the Carmichael community before today? We haven't seen the audit or the review or the analysis. Is that fair?
I guess what we're really saying is, is their feedback to the community that they are quote, "serving" unquote. Because had we received a copy of this, we would have been better prepared for today's effort as well, which is something that I'm looking at. While, as I said earlier, I'm a director at one of the local parks, we don't send out the annual report, so to speak, but we do very much look for community input in the way in which we operate, as well as the way in which we hold meetings out and about. So, I'm just, I just find it somewhat-
Well, I can-
This has been enlightening, is the bottom line.
Before it gets to you, is there a way the community can give their input, take a look at the analysis two months before, say, here's where we were a year ago, and 12 months, here's where we're at, here's the improvements, here's what we're working on, here's what we've invested in, and here's the results.
Yeah, I think, I think maybe at this time is a good time to ask Rachel to maybe come down and talk about their board. I don't know, or maybe one of the board members. I know the Sunrise Marketplace is a P-bid in my district. They have, the P-bid has a board. They have regular meetings, and they report to the property owners regarding those meetings and updates. So, I'm, if, you've been in this P-bid, so I'm shocked that you don't have any knowledge of-
We only met a year ago. That was the first time out of the five years.
Okay. So, I think maybe, maybe Nick Bloys, who's the chairman of their board, can give an overview of, I think they probably have monthly meetings, maybe. Do you want to share with us your protocol on, I just, I don't want to get too far into this, but you're, what you're saying is you don't have any knowledge of what's going on in the P-bid, and I'm shocked if you're in the P-bid that you don't have knowledge of that. But-
We meet on the Zoom once every month on the security side. Outside of that, we have no idea.
Okay.
The other side of this is, having dug into it for the renewal, because I was surprised, one, that we were not excised, or a meeting related to that. Digging into it, I did, that's when I discovered special district. Since the park is a special district, I know a little bit about how the process works. And digging in and around and through, I learned a whole lot more. But it still is getting back to how do we address ourselves and how do we extricate ourselves as comfortably as possible without impacting the PID.
Okay.
Really, yeah. And I appreciate your time and effort.
And yes, thank you very much for hearing us out. Appreciate the time, and we'll follow up with-
Maybe after the, you know, outside this meeting, you can follow up with Nick and, is it Rachel?
We'll be making, yeah, we'll make a whole review for them.
And that'll help you also.
Great. Thank you so much for listening to us and hearing us.
Okay, there was, I defer to you.
Well, I was going to say, no, that's okay. I mean, what I can tell you is, depending on the decision that this body makes here today, if you end up still being in the P-bid, certainly my office is involved in the P-bid as well. So, not only do you have, I think, an opportunity to appear and be heard and influence things at the P-bid, including when they select members of their board from among the property owners, you know, I can also give you my commitment that my office will stay, you know, involved and engaged in this issue as well. But beyond that, I don't know if you're going to give Nick, I mean, Nick Bloys, if you want to respond to anything, but-
We'll save your, or save the supervisor's time on that. We'll go afterwards. Like you said, we just needed to kind of figure out a path, and today was our first step in looking at how this process works, and so we'll work from here. But again, thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Okay. I have no further, do we have anyone on the phone?
No, and I will go ahead and close the phone queue right now.
All right. And I don't have any further speakers, so at this time, I'm going to close the public hearing. And Dorothy, you're back in the hot seat.
I am. And so, therefore, at this time, I ask that the board adopt the two resolutions that are attached to the staff report if there are no further discussions at this time.
Okay. Supervisor Desmond?
Supposed to be my, just a couple of comments, and then I'll be making a motion. I'm very sensitive to the comments from both the representatives from the Elks and also from Mr. Fishbine, who called in earlier today. I really appreciate, staff, your efforts in lowering the assessed value. And I think that was, I also thank Supervisor Natoli for bringing that up as a possible way forward. I think that is a good solution, may not make you 100% happy. But what I do think, and what I have seen firsthand, is, you know, this P-bid law was put in place, it doesn't require 100% support of the businesses. And there's a reason for that, because if these, if these improvement districts are formed, if businesses are part of that district, they are going to receive benefits from being in that district, whether they support it or not. And I think that's what we see here. I have seen that firsthand. I mean, I frankly think that, that incident that was mentioned from June 21st, and an actual P-bid security officer happened to be, I believe, on the Elks property. I mean, that was, that was, I mean, to me, that seems like a benefit. But I also think, you know, you talk about the relationship with the Sheriff's Department, and a lot of those relationships are forged through the efforts of the P-bid. So, you may not see what you think is a direct, immediate benefit every day, but I think the benefits are absolutely there in that entire district. And I think those benefits do help the Elks Lodge and certainly help Mr. Fishbine's properties and all the properties in this district. So, I'm happy we were able to lower the assessment. I don't support pulling either of the properties out of this P-bid. I think that jeopardizes the P-bid, and it may cause a situation where these things could unravel. We don't have the opportunity to delay this any further, to do any more due diligence. But what I will tell you, I'll just reiterate what I mentioned a few moments earlier, is that my office will certainly be engaged and have an expectation that the P-bid leadership will continue to work with you- and have an expectation that the P bid leadership will continue to work with you to ensure you are, you and all the property owners are getting the most bang for your buck being a part of this improvement district. And I think the improvement district does a great job, can always do better, and certainly will do better, and will continue improving this corridor in Carmichael. So those are, those are my comments. And I'll be making a motion to support this with that new assessed amount for the Elks. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Supervisor Desmond. Should I just go ahead and, I will read into the record, the fill-ins for resolution, the first resolution is the resolution to renew the Carmichael Property and Business Improvement District. In section two, states at the close of the public hearing, the board had received one written protest, which the board finds and determines to not constitute a majority protest. Section three, at the close of the public hearing, the board had received 120 assessment ballots totaling 46.65% of the total assessment to be levied, of which 66% was in favor of the assessment and 34% was in opposition to the assessment. That concludes, includes my presentation.
Okay. So we have a motion for approval, subject to the adjustment of the assessment on Elks. And do we have a second?
Second.
A second from Supervisor Serna. Please vote.
And that's a unanimous vote?
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Now, let me find my place to our real.
Thank you, everyone. I'm hoping this, after this, maybe you can work together to make sure the Elks Club feels really great about being a part of that P bid.
We'll pull you back some statistics.
We're working with Supervisor Desmond.
Yep. Thank you, gentlemen. Okay, our next item is?
62.
62.
So for item 62, you're acting as the Sacramento County Water Agency. This is a public hearing to proceed with projects and levy assessments in Zone 13 of the Sacramento County Water Agency for fiscal year 2021-22.
Good afternoon.
My name is Carrie Schmitz, and I'm the Water Supply Division Chief for the Department of Water Resources, here today to introduce the public hearing for the fiscal year 21-22 Zone 13 Assessment. In 1987, the board approved the formation of Zone 13 and the levying of assessments in the zone. The purpose of the zone is to fund long-range planning studies related to water supply, drainage, and flood control, which benefit the properties in the zone. Assessments are levied per parcel based on land use, and the assessment methodology hasn't changed in over 20 years. If approved, the 21-22 assessment will generate approximately $2.3 million. So the zone currently funds programs such as the Delta Communities Flood Protection Grant, the Waterform Successor Effort, and Habitat Management Element, Sustainable Groundwater Management Act compliance efforts, and currently administers two grants on behalf of the Casumnas Grantwater Basin. This morning, I asked that your board take the following actions: Open the public hearing regarding the projects proposed for Zone 13 and the levy of assessments in the zone. Consider any public testimony. Close the public hearing. And adopt the resolution for instituting projects and levying assessments in Zone 13 for fiscal year 21-22. Thank you.
Thank you, Carrie. At this time, Supervisor Natoli would like to speak.
Yeah, just a quick question. Carrie, if my recollection serves me correct, a couple of years ago, and even I think last year, there was discussion about our contribution to the Waterform and the Habitat Mitigation Plan, which totaled close to $1 million. Not that we aren't a party to that, but about what other contributors were putting in. And we've been doing this now for, you know, well over 20 years, in one form or the other. So could you just very quickly tell us what the status of that is? Again, maybe this is the right amount. But I know we've had some discussion, and I think you've been party to some of that work that's been going on, so.
Absolutely. It's a, it's a great question, and it's time for an update on that. The Waterform Successor Effort, for the past, I think, year and a half, has been going through kind of a Waterform Two process, which is kind of a reevaluation of the Waterform. And part of that process is looking at the amount of money that the county pays. And that's something that I've put on the table and have been very clear, Michael and I have been very clear, that that's a priority for us. That process is still continuing. We've had some kind of setbacks in that process. The drought has been pretty consuming recently and COVID. And then we've got a new executive director for the Waterform now. So it is continuing, and I'm, you know, it's still on the table that we will be looking at how much the county is contributing. The Waterform is certainly important. There's no doubt about that. But we will be reevaluating that.
Well, again, a very worthy endeavor, one this board has been, you know, party to, as I said, going well over two, two and a half decades now. And I think it has served us, certainly in some of the work that's being done in the groundwater sustainability area, certainly with our, the items that we talked about this morning. But just in general, I think it, you know, gave us a good foundation as a county and certainly as a communities in this county to, you know, put forth, you know, work that we had done that I think provides a strong premise for where we go going forward. It's just, you know, those that contribute versus those who benefit. And again, you know, we've done this, and it's been, I think it's been, again, worthy, worthy and worthwhile. But as we continue to move forward with some of the other work on groundwater efforts, being sustainability plans, and monitoring, and then all the considerations that go into what other charges beyond Zone 13 might be proposed to be put forth for 218 vote to folks, I think that that comes into play, recognizing kind of where we are, certain some limitations on our financing. And I know this has helped provide some good seed funding for the grants that have helped us in the, in the other basins. So I trust to keep us, keep us informed of this.
Absolutely.
And again, it may not result in any changes or it might, but I know.
I think it will.
It will. Yeah, because this time next year, we're likely going to be in a mode where we're going to be looking at 218 vote for areas that are outside Central and groundwater agency. And this might be able to be helpful in that regard, as far as Zone 13's, some contribution from that source. Okay.
Yeah. I'll get back to you on that.
I appreciate it. Thanks, Carrie. Okay, I move the item, ma'am. Chair, if you don't have any?
Second.
Thank you. Supervisor Natoli moved the item, and second by Supervisor Serna. Please vote.
We don't have any public speakers?
Oh. I do not have any public comments.
We don't have any public comments.
And I need to close the public hearing. Public hearing's closed. Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
All right. Thank you very much, Carrie.
Okay. And for item 63, you're back as the Board of Supervisors. This is to authorize the Department of General Services to hire a retired annuitant electrician to a critically needed position before 180 days has passed from date of retirement.
Good afternoon.
Oh, Mr. Cassaway.
Thank you.
We have a motion by Supervisor Kennedy and a second by Supervisor Desmond. Supervisor Natoli would like to speak.
No, that was the last item.
Oh. See, I'm, I think it's been a long morning. Okay. We have a motion and a second. Please vote. How easy was that?
Unanimous vote.
Thank you.
Thank you for that wonderful presentation.
And then we're on to your nominations. That's item 64. I'll get to your notes while I get to my notes. Okay, so you're continuing to July 27th, the In-Home Supportive Services Advisory Committee. You're continuing to August 10th, the Public Financing Authority of the County of Sacramento Metro Air Park Enhanced Infrastructure Financing District. I'd like to ask the board if I could just refer to that as the EIFD going forward. That's a long one.
Yes.
And then we have the, you're continuing to August 24th, several, Area for Agency on Aging Advisory Council, Civil Service Commission, Lock Management Association, Maternal-Child and Adolescent Health Advisory Board, Mission Oaks Recreation and Park District, North Highlands Foothill Farms Community Planning Advisory Council, Public Health Advisory Board, Sacramento County Employees Retirement Board, Sheriff's Outreach Community Advisory Board, South Sacramento Area Community Planning Advisory Council, and the Sunrise Recreation and Park District. And four-year matters today. Our first item is Adult and Aging Commission.
Chiefs recommend continue to August 10.
Okay. Antelope Community Planning Advisory Council.
Please reappoint Jody Wilhelm.
Arden Arcade Community Planning Advisory Council.
Please continue to August 24th.
Carmichael Old Foothill Farms Community Planning Advisory Council, Supervisor Desmond.
Please continue to the 24th, August 24th.
And Supervisor Frost.
Please continue to August 24th.
Got it. Carmichael Recreation and Park District.
Please reappoint Brooke Judd and continue the remainder to August 24th.
Human Services Coordinating Council.
Chiefs recommend to continue to August 10.
Okay. Rio Linda Alberta Community Planning Advisory Council, Supervisor Serna.
Please continue to August 24th.
And Supervisor Frost.
Please reappoint Kristen McCandless.
Now we're on to Sacramento County Behavioral Health Youth Advisory Board. Let's start with Supervisor Serna.
Please close applications for District One vacancies and continue the item until August 10th.
Okay. And now Supervisor Kennedy.
Continue the item till July 27th.
Supervisor Desmond?
Continue to August 10th.
And Supervisor Frost?
Please continue to August 10th.
And Supervisor Natoli?
Yes, I'd like to close the application period. I have 15 applicants to consider and put this over to August 10th, please.
And continue, okay, continue to August 10th.
Yeah, close nominate, close the application period.
Yes. And so just want to be sure for Supervisor Kennedy and Supervisor Desmond and Supervisor Frost, we are not closing the application.
I have no indication of closing.
Okay, thank you. Sacramento County Bicycle Advisory Committee.
Chiefs recommend continue to August 10.
Okay. Sacramento County Commission on the Status of Women and Girls. Supervisor Desmond?
Please continue to the, July 27th.
Sacramento County Mental Health Board, Supervisor Kennedy.
Please continue to July 27th.
And Supervisor Natoli?
Please continue July 27th.
Okay.
I have to do interviews.
And last is Vineyard Area Community Planning Advisory Council, Supervisor Kennedy.
Appoint Francesca Lewis and reappoint Emily Brantley.
Okay. And that concludes your nominations. And I think your next item is the County Executive Comments.
No comments today. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Board Supervisor Comments, Reports, and Announcements.
Thank you. Supervisor Serna?
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to make a brief comment this afternoon about what has been a very busy, oh, two or three weeks since the last, well, since the last meeting we had. And there's been some large amount of media on the subject, and that is certainly the impact of homelessness on the American River Parkway, given the acute fire season. And I know this is something that's not new to any of us. But I just want to direct my comments to our CEO to just underscore the fact that I'm received, our office is receiving an extraordinary amount of requests for assistance. I mean, there is certainly a lot of frustration being communicated to me by my constituents that live in places like River Park or Woodlake. And they're, they're expressing a heightened level of concern as it relates to fire safety. And I know that, you know, this board, with the recommended budget that we just concluded, is adding Rangers to our Ranger Force. But I just think this is something that really needs the attention of the administration as a very, very high priority. And I know that that is the case. But I would be remiss if I didn't make mention of it. That, in addition to the fact, not, not just the fire risk on the Parkway, is something that is being expressed in my office. But even more recently, it's the fact that we have, I think, in every single one of our districts, the growing challenge and problem of RVs, abandoned RVs, or RVs that are being temporarily used as habitation in substandard conditions relative to public health and safety. Recently had a communication from a constituent in the west of Watt part of North Highlands, who explained in great detail the fact that a motorhome just went up in flames a few days ago and threatened his property. And he actually had a very well-articulated letter that he sent. And while he was certainly very frustrated, it concluded with what they can, what he and his neighbors can do to help our office, which I thought was pretty extraordinary. Usually we get the love notes that tend to use choice, choice expletives on occasion. But this one really kind of touched me in a different way because it was a constituent reaching out to me to help the situation and not just being critical of it. So I really want to emphasize that today and ask the CEO's help in the coming days and weeks, to the extent that we can apply some more resources, not just for District One, but across all five districts. Because I know that this isn't just unique to, to one part of the county.
Yes. I concur completely. I know that it is a huge problem. I know that Mr. Wagstaff and members of his team are, of course, working on the encampment, expanded encampment strategy, but also working on a Parkway strategy. So we'll be having more conversations about that in the coming weeks.
That's very good to hear. Thank you. And I would hope that we could extend that conversation into final budget as well. I don't have any preconceived notion right at this moment about additional resources that we may want to consider as a board or that you may want to recommend. And, but I think that would be the appropriate time that if, in the course of what Bruce and others are working on, you find that we do need additional resources, I would hope that that gets reflected in whatever is recommended from your office in terms of a final budget for, for fiscal year 21-22.
Understood.
Thank you, Supervisor Serna. Supervisor Desmond?
I just want to thank Supervisor Serna for bringing that up. I couldn't agree more with everything he said. Also, a major priority of mine, and I think that, you know, I'm really excited about the steps we are taking, some really great things. But as you and I have discussed, it's also about more capacity for shelter capacity, transitional housing, permanent supportive housing. And I think if we, if we have more of this, it gives us much more opportunities to get people on the road to recovery while also being able to give us some relief in these areas that are really hurting, these business areas and residential communities. But until we have the capacity, our hands are tied kind of legally and frankly morally as well. So, so I just want to echo Supervisor Serna's comments as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Desmond. Supervisor Natoli?
Yeah. I want to follow on because, again, thinking about this, as I, I too have received, probably not the number that Supervisor Serna's received them, or maybe others on this board, relative to a growing number of recreational vehicles, campers, you know, motorized vehicles, a lot of them that can move on their own. And it occurred to me, again, that maybe an opportunity here, because again, throughout this country, you know, whether one is homeless or not, we have accommodations for recreational vehicles, you know, as living units, for those that want to travel, for those who may make that their home permanently and such. And we talk so many times about, you know, a permanent housing and housing situations. And if folks actually have ownership of, you know, older recreational vehicles, but certainly they oftentimes come equipped, albeit maybe older, with kitchen facilities, with, you know, bathroom facilities, and, you know, maybe they're not large accommodations. But again, as I've thought about this, it seemed to me that, you know, an opportunity to actually construct an RV park. Now, again, you know, we're not talking about aesthetics here as much as we are about having a situation where you could offer water and sewer hookups, maybe even at a nominal charge. But we're paying to house folks in hotels and motels and vaunting in a variety of situations. and vaunting in a variety of situations. Because appropriately, they're not made to be just parked on the side of the road or in a park and ride or somewhere on the Parkway or in, you know, it's, because again, they're, they're maybe self-contained, but only to a degree. And if they aren't connected to other utilities, then your folks are having to, you know, make do in other ways. And so I guess I'd like us to explore. Again, you know, I know we have zoning that allows for that. Again, it would need to be done right, obviously with some management. But, you know, RV parks accommodate folks with this, you know, another vehicle, you know, a car or a truck and allow folks to live in a situation that, you know, is respectful and certainly can be accommodating with, you know, the proper hookups. And if you provide electricity, water, and sewer at nominal charges or no charge, I think you, you know, you might have a formula. I don't know. I'm not talking about just telling people to go find a parking lot and park your vehicle there, but you need to actually have the facilities. So, and I like to take it, you know, we, obviously we made the appointment this morning through you for Emily, Emily Halcon. But it seems to me that might be for at least a segment of folks who have, actually have ownership of a vehicle and it may be out of registration. I don't know. Maybe in some cases it's not. But rather than have them just bubble through this community and then there are other issues that can be associated. But if you have an area where folks could appropriately park and cite their vehicle and then, you know, at least you've stabilized that situation, then I think you've got other work to do relative to supportive services and things we've talked about and other items today. So I'd like to have us take a look at that, because, you know, I, they're popping up all over the place. And as we've worked to deal with some of the situations, public safety situations as we're coming out of COVID, I took a call Friday and from someone who saw the vehicle and the parties, a location that was dealt with a relative safety and cleanup and ended up in her neighborhood. And, and it showed up in the middle of the night. And at any rate, I, again, to me, it's worthwhile to look at that, you know, and even mobile home parks, but those, that's a much bigger undertaking. But if folks have these vehicles, assuming they can meet a certain minimum standard of for livability.
And that they're somewhat operational.
Yeah, oh, no, no, I would agree, operational. They don't just come in there, just so you'd be able to, you know, so. But I mean, some, some pretty low thresholds as it relates to, you know, the vehicle. But I think we might be able to stabilize the situation and help us in other areas where we're trying to work to find some solution sets and as a piece of it. So I'd like to have, I agree with you, Phil, though, they need to be operational, so. Yep. So anyway, I just wanted to offer that as a thought here, not to add to your plate of full things already, but.
Thank you Supervisor Natoli. Supervisor Kennedy.
Thank you, Chair. First of all, I think it's a great idea. So thank you for that Supervisor Natoli. I just wanted to add to your work. And that's, and that's, you know, we recently got the Office of Inspector General's annual report. And I want to make sure that these things aren't something that we get, we read through, we look at the nice pictures and then it gets on a shelf somewhere. And that we actually, I'd like somebody in the, you know, in your team to actually analyze any recommendations that are made in here that we have some kind of control over or authority over and identify where there's areas in which we as a board can adopt, promote policies that are consistent with the recommendations being made. Now, we know that we're limited to what we can do with the Sheriff's Office. We all know that. But there's probably some areas in here that are within the realm of public policy that we can address. So I'd like to have somebody take a look at that and identify those and bring a report back to the board.
So we will absolutely do that. And then this will be a normal ongoing function of the new chief, the new deputy CEO.
Okay, great. Thank you.
But we'll, a couple, we're gonna get a presentation, right? I mean, that's, the annual report has been delayed. But I would trust along with the analysis that the IG would be here to actually make a public presentation.
We can certainly do that if you, if you would like.
I like that idea.
Okay.
Thank you Supervisor Kennedy and Natoli. I do not see anyone else in the queue. There being no further business, this meeting is adjourned.